...you that joined us for this. And agenda item number one, we're going to have the updates from Dr. Mackey regarding the TQ2.
TQ2.
Say that real fast.
Thank you, Ms. Seigler. So this first, this first item is pretty quick, though it may lead to more conversation later. And then we'll get into the, we'll talk, have a presentation and discussion on the recovery plan. But the first thing you have is this Teacher Quantity and Quality Roundtable Report. And so they really, I know we just sent it to you, I think, on Monday. I don't expect you to have read it and digested it. But I want to point out just two pages. One is who all was on it and kind of the end result of what the recommendations are. I had those two pages marked, but I lost my markers. Page 23. So if you go to page 23 with me, I will show you who was on this roundtable and kind of how it was set up. So we discussed this briefly early on. At the end of the process, where we had the Teacher Shortage Task Force, which was all local superintendents. And, you know, they brought recommendations, most of which we've either said, you know, it was just something so pie in the sky, it couldn't be done, or they have been, those recommendations have been acted on. We came right behind that, and we had requests from some higher ed folks and legislators about looking at it from the higher ed viewpoint. So you'll see that this is a very higher ed-heavy committee. We had Mr. Mark Dixon. Mark is with us somewhere, he's here with us. Jeff Langham, Jane Meyer, and Javon Cummings represented me on the committee, on this commission. Dr. Langham was there for pretty much all the meetings, I think. Dr. Meyer and Ms. Cummings were in and out to provide resources. Dr. Stridzik, who's with us now, originally was on there representing Gina Ross at early childhood, and then made the change over to Bonnie Sullivan. Two people from ADEA, I won't read all the names, but, well, I guess I could. Amy Marlowe and Ashley McLean, Rick Wilson from CLASS, Ryan Hansworth from SSA, Sally Smith from School Boards. And so those were all the folks that were non-higher ed. And then I think everyone else was higher ed, so Dr. Robin McGill and Dr. Michael Walker-Jones from ADE. Then, well, Nick Moore and Jay Keaster from the Governor's Office, Representative Collins, Dr. Chris Cox from the Community College System, three deans. Two of them are not deans anymore, but Dr. Lethia Hapton from Alabama State, Dr. Andrea Kent from South Alabama, who's a provost now, I think. And then Dr. Anna McEwen at Samford. And then there were three people that work mostly in higher ed at SREB, and Stephen Pruitt, who is the director of SREB. So Stephen was not engaged in most of the meetings. I was on, in like the last two meetings, as they got really close on the final report, and we worked through some things. But essentially, what they have proposed is a pilot program that would be a kind of a teacher-leader project. So it proposes some differentiated pay and options, so that, on one end, looking at how we can bring teachers into the profession through kind of apprenticeship, looking at it differently, can people maybe start earlier, like in junior college, doing things to get ready to be teachers if they want to? And then on the other end, where they really focused, though, was if a teacher's in the classroom, and say, he has his master's degree, and he's been teaching for some time, and his next step up may be becoming an assistant principal, or to go to school and get a curriculum degree and try to move to the central office, how do we convince those people to stay in the classroom? And so a career pathway where they could do professional development and coursework, they could prove themselves as teacher leaders and earn significantly more money to stay in the classroom as a teacher leader. Ideally, those teacher leaders then would do things like, they would have a lighter teaching load, and then they would, so they would take those extra hours. So that's one of the examples we had. Let's say, in a school, you normally have seven periods, and a teacher teaches six of those seven. Well, they might be back down to only teaching four periods, and then they would use, they'd still have a period to plan, and they would have those other two periods to mentor young, newer, not young necessarily, but newer teachers along the way. And they would be, they would get lower, lesser teaching load, and also earn more money. Now, this takes, it does take considerable investment from the legislature, obviously, and you'll see, there's a budget page in here, and I also have Mark somewhere, but I may have lost it. I think you'll have to go back to the other direction. Okay, on page 13. So the proposed budget is about $3.3 million, but this is for, this would all be for outside consultants to come in and help us develop it. So in addition to that, they would have to decide what the stipends look like and how the stipends would be paid. I will tell you this, there was some controversy. There's always controversy. So North Carolina is the first state that did this. No state has done it statewide. So if we did a statewide pilot, we would be the only state to ever do that. But there are districts that have done it all across the southeast, with North Carolina starting. And I think there are three districts in North Carolina that piloted something. And they essentially, they, what they do is take, say, if you've got seven first-grade units, then they go back, everybody takes a few more kids, and they go to only six first-grade teachers. And they use the money from that seventh teacher's salary to boost the lead teacher's salary. So you get, and we talked about that, and I just wanted to lay that out. We didn't necessarily, we did not endorse that. We talked about it. Our concerns with that were that the lead teacher's already getting lesser of a teaching load. And so that means that now you have five teachers who are doing mostly the work that seven teachers were doing as far, so they're going to have, you know, they may have three or four more students in each of their classrooms. Now, you still get the teacher leader part, but here's how we got through that. When Representative Collins was very involved and went to every meeting, we said, if we do this, we would rather go to the legislature, and we don't, we don't want to lose that seventh teacher. We just want that teacher to get a supplement on top of what she or he has already getting. But we don't want to have to say, we're going to have one less teacher and use that person's salary to spread it out over other people. So I just want you to know that, because I don't know how much of you might have talked to some of the people and heard the discussion. But I mean, this was, there were some, I use the term vigorous discussions over this, and great dialogue. And I think everybody understands that two things I think most everybody agreed to is, one, this idea of having teacher leaders who can mentor newer teachers is good. And the idea of them being able to get paid more to stay in the classroom, rather than feeling like they have to become a school administrator or, you know, something else to get more money later in their career, that's good. It's just hammering out the details. So where we are now is that this would take a legislative approval and appropriation for a pilot. And Representative Collins has taken that to, she's having conversations with Mr. Cool and Senator Orr and all those folks to see what they might want to do. If we did a pilot, what we would be looking at is money in the FY22 budget, so that starts August, so October 1 of this year. And there would be kind of a planning nine months, and we would not have our first pilot group until the fall of '22. And that's what I want y'all to understand, is that this, we're looking at not even doing a pilot until the fall of '22, '22-'23 school year, which gets us time to get kind of beyond this pandemic, to have adequate planning time. And that would, of course, even that would mean the legislature have to appropriate something. Now, all this $3 million doesn't come in one year. You see, that's over three years. So there is, I mean, there is about $1.2 million that has to come the first year. That probably is all that would have to come the first year, because if you think, in the first year, you're not paying any teacher stipends at all. It's just a planning year. And then, the second year, you would have that 1.2 plus whatever teacher stipends that were paid. And then the third year, it would keep going. So, and this is for a pilot in, I think we said four districts, but I'm not, there may be more than one, up to two.
Says two.
Yeah, up to two in the low income, up to two more. So there's, there's several things in there. So it could be one, two, three, four.
Four.
Or it could be, you could do more, I guess, but it costs more to do more. So I don't know. I mean, I welcome, I welcome your questions. I will tell you that I have about exhausted my knowledge of it, other than having read the report. But it was, it was a really good committee that got deep into some of the problems of keep not recruiting people in. They really didn't spend a lot of time on the recruiting end. This was on how we keep people in the classroom from, especially mid-career, how do we keep them in the classroom and develop them as teachers? So that, I think that's pretty good, and with your permission, I'm going to put Mark Dixon on the spot, because he went to all the meetings. Mark, is that kind of, is there more you want to add? I mean, obviously, I'm trying to do, you know, 12 months of meetings in 15 minutes, so.
No, I think you covered it. I think just, it's all right, I don't know if y'all can hear beyond this, but.
Yeah, come up, if you don't mind, just to make sure everybody else can hear. And I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I see you out there, so.
No, I think you covered it pretty effectively. The goal here is to expand the reach of our most effective teachers while also incentivizing them to stay in the classroom. And so that, you know, we talked a lot about recruitment and getting more teachers into the classroom, there's been some work done on that. But we have a big hole in the bottom of the teacher bucket, and if we don't, if we don't put a, you know, stop the bottom and, you know, continue to fill up, then we're just going to continue just to burn through teachers. And right now, with everything the teachers are undergoing in the classroom, especially during COVID, trying to find ways to reward our most effective teachers while also providing additional support to all our teachers, I think is a, is a great step in the right direction. So A+ is very excited about this pilot, and we hope to see it in the future.
And I think that those discussions are going over there, obviously, the report official came out in January, I think. We kind of worked the last, you know, the pandemic got us too, because all the meetings had to go remote. And so we, they had wanted to get the final report out in November. We had some more dialogue to make sure everybody was good with it. So, so it came out way after your budget request, you know, right before the legislature convenes. And so it's, that's one of the reasons I wanted to make sure to put it on the top of the agenda today, because if it comes back next month and you hear about a pilot, and you'd like to say, where did that pilot come from? Well, it came from this committee, but the last time the board has really discussed this committee was the time when it was appointed, I think. And so, but they did great work, and we'll see where it goes. If the pilot goes forward, again, that would be in the '22-'23 school year. But then if it went, went well, hopefully, we'd build out really fast after that.
Before we go on to number two, can we sort of do a voice check to make sure that we, so board members that are out there in cyber world, we need you to do a check-in, like I can see Dr. Reynolds' face, and I can see beautiful doctor, I'm sorry, you're not beautiful Dr. Reynolds, but beautiful Dr. Richardson. Would you just do a voice check so we can be sure that you can hear us and we can hear you, please?
Hello?
Dr. Richardson, you go first.
Hello?
Okay, good. Thank you, Dr. Richardson. Mrs. Bell?
Yes, this is Stephanie Bell.
Can you hear us all right?
Yes, I can hear you all, and I'm watching live streaming on the government website. A little delayed, but I can.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Chestnut?
Yes, I can hear you very well.
All right, thank you kindly. And Dr. Reynolds?
I'm not beautiful, but I can hear you.
Okay, thank you very much. I didn't mean to ruin.
No, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. So are we?
I've got a question.
For some questions, yes?
Couple of things on recruiting, you know, I know we talked about this, and I'm not sure who to look at here, so chime in if you need to. But I know we talked before in this room about out-of-state recruiting, and we know that many states right now, because of COVID tax deductions or tax reductions in many states, you know, that teachers are not getting renewed. And so there are some states that have teachers that are looking for a job. Are we doing active out-of-state recruiting? And several years ago, we said that state-to-state reciprocity would be enforced, and that teachers who were credentialed in other states could easily come in.
Dr. Jane, would you like to move it forward?
Raise her hand, so we'll let her come up.
Come forward to our new microphones, please.
Any teacher who has a valid renewable certificate from another state can easily move to Alabama. There are very few restrictions on that. The problem is, there's not really an oversupply of teachers in any state. That was made clear by SREB and other folks who have worked with us from outside Alabama. There's this idea that there's a mass of teachers wanting to move and come, but there really aren't many of them who are moving. But we do everything we can to facilitate reciprocity with teachers who have earned a credential in another state. And we do, we have a recruitment office, Deborah Goshay handles that for us. Teachers can apply from around the country, register their availability for employment, and we do everything we can to help them fill out the forms, keep their references current, and be available to Dr. Daria and other superintendents who are looking for teachers.
Okay, thank you. And also, the UAB Teach Program, we know that that has been very successful in bringing in those students who have declared a major in math and science, and then asking them to consider a double major. And many, we graduate about 20 a year, that then has a double major, and that go then into teaching. Have we explored trying that at other universities? Because right now, UAB's the only one.
It's a great program.
It is a great program. That's why I'd love to spread the love. You know? If it's good at one, why, you know, it'd be great to spread it at others. And I'm sure there are cost considerations to be considered, but it's, I mean, I love pilots, don't get me wrong. And I would love to try things and collect data. But at the same time, when we have a program that's already proven to work, could we not explore expanding something that we know works? And especially in those high-demand fields of math and science in high schools. And so that's just a thought perhaps we could pursue. And then last, I got the Alabama Department of Labor, you know, they publish their 25 fastest-growing career fields, and they've got their demand occupations, that sort of thing. And they do it by percentages and by job growth. And teaching was not on there. And that, you know, we know, right, that we need many more teachers, and that we have many that are retiring or leaving the profession every year. And so it surprised me a bit that the Labor Department didn't have it on there as one of the top 25 occupations with, with high growth in it. And I'm not sure, perhaps that's, we just need to talk to our Labor Department and find out why that is. And then last, I'm going to do one more push for that troops-to-teachers. I feel like we are a state with so many veterans, many that retired at a relatively young age, that are willing to pursue another career, but may need, you know, may need us to be, to share them the options and what we possibly could do. And so that's on the recruitment side. And then the retention, just if we could get more information on the reasons why some of our teachers leave the profession, especially those that leave, I think this report said many leave in the first three years. And so what can we do, you know, what can we do to address that as quickly as possible? So that, I'm just, I know I'm throwing out a lot of issues, but I thought I'd get them out all at once.
Those are good. I think, so ADE is working on, Dr. Byron, Dr. Langham are working with ADE on a, that last one you asked, trying to figure out people who are currently teachers, kind of what their plans are for retirement, and what would keep them in the classroom. Is that right? Y'all are working with Dr. Purcell on that? They plan on getting it out this year?
A survey planning to go out by April, no later than May, before closing school year.
To get data, so we'll know why these people do leave.
And can you report that to us, once it's done?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Yeah, and fortunately, ADE's taking that leadership on that own. I will tell you, the other troops-to-teachers, we're, we're kind of digging in on too, again. That is a, it's, it's been more difficult to get troops to become teachers than you would think. And, but, but we are kind of getting back into that. We spent some time since last month trying to figure out what is going on with that state office and the grant, and.
And I thank you.
Yeah, and I think.
I appreciate you digging into it. I just feel like it's an untapped resource.
It is. I think the biggest problem there is that the federal government is stepping away from troops-to-teachers, and they really de-emphasize it. And whereas they, so for instance, they used to have a state office in every state. Now, they're at regional offices, and ours is in New Orleans, I think. So they're still there, but it's, but they've indicated that they may begin to actually step down, step down, step down on it. Now, what that means is, and I appreciate you bringing it to us, Ms. West brought it to us too, husbands in the military, about, that means we, as a state, are going to have to pick up our own program, probably, to recruit people. Because if they're going to step away from it, it doesn't mean we just say, oh, well, we won't have any more retired military people becoming teachers. It's just how are we going to pick that up as a state to make it a state program? So that's the discussion we're having right now. I think, you know, we're going to, we'll obviously continue to struggle with getting enough teachers in the classroom, but there are a lot, there are a lot of things going on, it's just they're year in, year in, year out. And we've gotten, actually, this week have been brought into new conversations across the street, the legislature, where they're wanting to know what, in a very positive way, what can we do to support teachers staying in the class, you know, coming in to, but staying in the classroom a long time? Because our problem is, we, we have not enough coming in, but they're also starting to drop out really fast. And more and more are getting to retirement age. And we're worried, I mean, that the pandemic's going to really speed that up this summer. I'm hoping not. But that's one of the things we're talking about, is what can we do to try to entice people to stay longer? Particularly, obviously, in math and science, but special education, but all of our grad. And I will say one more, and I probably missed some, but I think the reason, I don't want to speak for the Department of Labor, is teaching is actually, in their mind, is a declining field. Because we actually, because our, the student population, the youth population state keeps going down, and so actually, the number of teacher units earned is lower now than it was 15 years ago. So when they do pure statistics, it looks like teaching's a declining field. For those of us on the inside, what we realize is, there may be fewer students, but there will always be students.
But it's the gap, you would think, between the demand and the supply, that they would be measuring. I mean, but maybe not, maybe. And they have different measurements, but I just, it just surprised me that it didn't make the, make the list.
I think it's just that, only because you said, I want to look at that, but high, I know when they look at like high growth, those are like those research jobs in, you know, in biochemistry and all. Because they, they may have had 10 jobs 10 years ago, and now they've got 300 jobs or 4,000 jobs. But, but we definitely, I've talked to Secretary Campbell multiple times, that they have to help us on recruiting teachers, because if we don't have teachers, we won't have a workforce period. That's great.
Ms. Seigler?
Yes, Ms. Bell?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Mackey, one of the things that I think would be helpful, and you know I've mentioned this before, in the past, the board was more involved, and I'm talking about the board, not one or two board members appointed to serve on a committee. The board took the lead in all of these various areas that we are now discussing again, because we obviously will need to change with certain times, and the cycles are there for retirement and so forth. But the fact that the board has not been involved, and yet you have someone who's actually a consultant, and is aided by the state, to be a consultant, who is speaking as a representative of the group, you know, that's fine. In the past, that has been the case. But we have actually had board, the board taking the lead on all of this, not just the department being involved, but the board. And it makes a big difference in being able to represent not only our constituents, but obviously, looking at trends and understanding what needs to be done. It helps tremendously in the legislature as well. There have been, as you mentioned, legislators represented on these groups, but board members, and I'm emphasizing as a whole, not just one board member, that does not denote the board being represented or participating. We need to be involved, we need to take the lead as a board. One of the things you mentioned, again, the legislature, one of the problems with this legislation dealing with the textbooks and the textbook committee, the board is completely left out of it. It mentions the state superintendent making decisions independently without the board's intervention. I know there will be some recommended amendments to that legislation, but that's a prime example, again, of how the board has been not only undercut, but completely cut out of a process. This is extremely important, as Dr. McCarty has emphasized, with the, the fact that it's not, teachers are not included on one of the high-demand lists, because it will be, and it is already, a need across this country. Other boards, and I, as you know, participate in meetings with other board members from many other states. And this is, what we discuss at our table is the same as what is being discussed at the other tables across the country. Teachers are in high demand, and they will continue to be for the next five years until we have the supply as such that we actually can fill all of the slots necessary, especially, as you know, in the areas of math. The board needs to be involved. It doesn't need to be discussed after the fact. And in the future, I hope that this will be changing. I hope that we will be taking the lead as a board, again, not individually, but as a board. If we can bring in people who are consultants to, to be the speaker for the group, then certainly, the board should be represented. We didn't hire these people, the legislature may have been responsible for that, or perhaps even a task force with the Governor's Office. The board needs to take the lead on these. And so these discussions would be preceding any kind of policy changes or recommendations or actions by the board instead of a follow-up and a report. We need to be making these decisions, and we need to be participating as a board. I understand these are unique times, but it has to change. This is unlike it has been in the past.
Ms. Seigler? Wayne Reynolds?
Yes, Dr. Reynolds, go ahead, please.
In the, in, as a veteran, I would like to suggest that we engage with Admiral Davis, Department of Veterans Affairs, because the Veterans Administration has an outreach program for education and other resources, which would certainly be very useful in the area that I live in with STEM and other things. We do engage with those people, and I think that statewide, you know, we have veterans coming in and out of military service in all of our counties and all of our districts. And the Department of Veterans Affairs replicates many of the issues we've discussed today. And I don't know if we're in close contact or have liaisons with Admiral Davis, but we need to.
Yes, and I, I talk to him every week, and I will, I will talk to him about this and see if we might even get them to, you know, or some of his staff to come over to meet himself. That's a very good, good point.
Said I'm available, I work with Dr. Davis on a number of issues, so in light of what Stephanie said and others, you know, I would be willing to engage with you.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds.
Are there any other questions from our board members?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Chestnut.
I see it has noted that there will be two districts selected from low or mid-income as well as two districts from the high income. What is that process beyond income of the students?
Would be. Mark, you want to, let me try, and then I'll let Mr. Dixon answer if I get it wrong. It's a good chance of that. So this would be purely voluntary, Dr. Chestnut. We would put, put it out for superintendents and kind of on a first come, first served, if they would be willing. We probably would target to some degree, because we've also talked about geographic representation, trying to make sure that we had, you know, districts from different parts of the state. I will tell you, we've, you know, of course, Vic Wilson with CLASS and Sally Smith with School Boards and Ryan Hollingsworth with SSA were on there. And their biggest concern, so they've talked to some of their constituents. We have two superintendents with us in the room, but, and they've said basically, they've got to see the money first. Like, to sign up for the pilot, they've got to know that the legislature is behind it and for more than one year. Like, they don't want to sign up for a pilot for one year, and then the legislature the next year say, oh, we're going to move on to something else. So that's why you see a three-year pilot. And we've, you know, we've made it clear, I think the committee, commission made it clear when Representative Collins was there, that they felt like there had to be a three-year commitment and, and a financial commitment over three years to entice school districts to apply. But when you look at that income, what we would be looking at are essentially, you just said it, high-income, as in wealthy school districts, mid-level school districts, and then some of our highest poverty school districts. And then we also want to look at, again, we want to look at other diversity issues. So for instance, you know, Birmingham is one of our most high-poverty districts by students. But as a school system, they have a lot of money because of the tax rate and the property is so expensive there. So we wouldn't want to say that, that they represented all of the poor students in the state. And your, I mean, in your area of the state, if we looked over to Perry County, the student income for Birmingham and Perry County would be very similar, but the amount of resources the districts have would be very different. So we, we've talked about that also.
Thank you. I have a question, Ms. Ziegler.
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Richardson.
And I'm sorry, I was having problems on my laptop. I couldn't hear, so now I'm on my phone. Dr. Mackey, I wanted to know, right now, we already have the mentoring program that many of our districts are taking a part of at this time. With the TQ2 program, will that impact the funding that we are already receiving as we're trying to maintain teachers through the mentoring?
Not, not any time in the short time, Dr. Richardson. So we, we talked about that too. Because this would be a pilot, we, we do not want it to interfere with the teacher mentoring program we have in place, which is, as you know, is in our ESA plan. So we could not just do away with that. Now, the thinking is that if the pilot goes well, and if districts, more districts wanted to sign up, that yes, eventually, that, they might be, one might subsume the other, and they could kind of be, be, you know, brought together. But we've also talked about the challenges in that. So if I give an example, you know, even when I was a school principal, I had 60 teachers. And every year, I would probably have 10 to 12 new teachers, just from people moving, people retiring, new people coming in. Well, if I had only three people that chose this pathway to become lead teachers, they would, I would not want those three having to mentor 12 new teachers. So it might be that we'd have to have a hybrid where we would have, you know, this program and have additional kind of mid-career mentor teachers. Now, ideally, I would have at least 12 lead teachers in a population of 60. I might have 20 lead teachers in a population of 60. But, but we have discussed that. And I think the short answer, I've made it too long, but the short answer is we would not let this pilot interfere with, with that. What's, I'm going.
Thank you. May I interrupt one more time? Ms. Bell, we need your voice for just a moment so we can cue in to put your name up on the screen, please.
Yes, thank you.
Hang on, keep, keep talking for just a moment, please.
All right, thank you.
She's.
Thank you. I appreciate you doing this, Jackie. I've had people tell me, send text messages telling me that I was not on the screen. So I appreciate that.
That hurt? We found you, thank you kindly.
And thank you so much, I appreciate it very much.
You're welcome. Ready for beep? All right, moving on, if no other questions, we're moving on to the state recovery plan update, please, Dr. Mackey.
So I've got two great assistants over there, they'll come to the table and.
Dr. Ledwell is gonna, she's gonna hand out stuff and help drive.
And then there's a microphone, well, not that, but there's a seat here, and whoever wants to mark and draw a beat has to sit over there.
So while they're handing things out, let me tell you, this is, of course, they're doing a marvelous job. We are, there's a lot going on, trying to get recovery plans out there. We sent yesterday a memo to superintendents. Of course, you get copied on all those, so you saw the distribution of money. But we also told them in the memo that we would not actually distribute their, their new S R 2 funds until they complete the application. That we anticipated getting the application out March 1st. We want the board to see it first, even though you don't have to approve it, but we wanted you to see it, love to have your input. We're still getting input from the field on it. And then, we, we're still on the, on the other end, probably, so superintendents listening, some of them are probably going to, now they want to start emailing or something, but probably try to get them in around May 1st, which is early. Most states are doing June 1st or July 1st. So we realize May 1st is rushing them. But we also know that, that like, that most of the other states, when I talk to the state chiefs, are saying that they want them back in by July 1st. But most of our schools are planning on starting them on August 10th. And we're worried about if the plans are not into July 1st, we're starting school August 10th, then is there even, is there really time to do that? Now, some of them are going to, they're going to turn this around, they're going to have it in by March 12th, because they're going to immediately turn it around. But we are a little worried that if we leave the window too open, that some districts may not get them in until, if they don't get them in until the last minute, and that's June 30th, and then we find out that there's actually lots of issues, we have to work with them through their plan, that we could still be working on some of these plans, you know, up till the start of August and schools starting back. So, so right now, we're looking at a March to May window, which we give them two months. And I can assure you, if there's, you know, we've got districts that can't get it done in two months, that that's actually what we want to know, because we want Dr. Davis and Mr. Roller then to be working with that superintendent and those teams and other people here at the department to get them a plan. And that's why we would, we're talking about an earlier timeline than any other state is talking about. So I just want you to be aware of that's, that's the thinking behind the timeline. As far as the actual work, these two, they're the masters. So I'm going to, just with your permission, Ms. Ziegler, turn it over to them.
Before we do, if you'd be so kind, because we have two brand-new board members, would you introduce yourself so that they can put a face to a handsome, you know, and a name, please?
Yeah, I'm.
No, you don't, it's one of those that they said. Oh, picked up.
Oh, fabulous, sorry.
I'm learning, okay.
Thank you.
Yes, please introduce.
I'm Elizabeth Davis, and I'm the Assistant State Superintendent for Student Learning and former superintendent, but I love this curriculum. And I also want to introduce Dr. Ledwell, who is the AMSI director, who is also part of this work and will be driving as we pull up a few things. And so I wanted to make sure I introduced Dr. Ledwell.
And Mr. Roller, thank you.
Good morning, Terry Roller, Assistant State Superintendent in what we're calling Support Services. So it's all things that support students and schools and administrators. Good morning.
And, and if I may, because that's, I really appreciate you doing that. So both of them were as assistant superintendents under Dr. Boyd, who's, of course, the deputy over instruction. So he's got.
Wave your hands.
There's others back there, but it does really help to start putting these names with faces at exactly where they plug into the whole, to the whole system. So, thank you.
And if you got to read the article this week, I get to say, that's my boss, that fabulous article about Dr. Boyd. So. First of all, let me say, thank you. I know this is, I told Dr. Mackey, this is part of the, of what I really, really enjoy because this is a robust plan. The two things that I heard over the past few months is the amount of money that, and as a former superintendent, trust me, I did not call and wait on the State Department much. But with the amount of money and with this impact of the pandemic, both you as state board members and legislators, my perception is that we, we are charged with developing something that not only helps the districts like the roadmap, but also helps guide them to fill the gaps with the unfinished learning, whether it be academic, whether it be the wellness of students, adults, communities. So we have an opportunity in, in working with several other states, and they're in the same, the same situation as we are with, you know, the funding that is there and helping, but not, you know, not overstepping, but also guiding, knowing what our state initiatives are, as well as what people have from the last year. They have great plans. But what they don't have as much of from our research is the needs assessment. Because our needs assessments are typically tailored to our reading scores, our math scores, our standardized or formative assessments. They don't ask, and Mr. Roller and I sat around for about five hours going through what he's going to share with you, but they don't ask about considering those lost 3,000 kindergarteners or the kids that didn't come, or first grade, or what do we do? So you'll see, I think, what is, what will help drive this plan is, is that component. And I do want to apologize to those that, those board members and others attending virtually because while you have the PowerPoint, we literally were making changes last night on these draft documents that are nowhere near ready to be done. But we, that's why Dr. Ledwell is going to pull them up and show you. Because the copy you have, I think we printed at 9:50 this morning, and it'll change before we leave tonight. So if you take it and share it, great, but it's not, it's not anywhere near done. So with that, Mr. Roller, have I, can we start?
You got it all.
Okay, thanks. So in the PowerPoint, we wanted to make sure that a plan, we have school improvement plans, we had a continuity plan, we had a reopening roadmap, so we're continuing with the reopening. But we wanted to really hit on, and all of this, these are different states. And the, the nice thing about this is like this, it was released July 2020. And so I'm trying, and we are trying to pull in what is relevant for reopening, using funding, and thinking with all of the funding pots they have, plus all of the challenges. And so looking at what we stand to face, and the case for urgency, as Jessica Sanders says, and Dr. Mackey reminded me the other night, Elizabeth Davis would jump off the roof every day. So I live in urgency. But, I mean, when I read this and thought about my two own kids, it kind of took me back, you know, when you think about your own children in the school system. So just the urgency that we know, of course, in learning gains. But then when you look on gaps, A, looking at what the gaps could be, and then B, looking at what the, the equity gap is. And equity doesn't mean what we have traditionally, only what we thought of with equity. What we will see in a lot of these, the funding, they have more money than they've ever had. I, I've already called my CSFO from my former system and was like, oh, I could spend all this money. But so they, there's that equity, but the gaps, depending on what they look at, may be wider. And so that's what we really want to hit on.
If I may, for a second, you know, we all have, all of our districts have needs. So you're familiar with the needs that you hear from your constituents, and they say, this is what we need to do. We all are dealing with very similar issues as a whole with the pandemic. But then there's some very detailed microscopic things that some new superintendents or some that have never dealt with them before need support on. So this is an attempt to give support on things that some have never seen. Some that have been very successful in the past, don't have a lot of experience in handling. And so we want to offer guidance and support for things that they may or may not have seen before, even though there are a lot that are common across the board for all school districts. Here are some things that are specific that we need to focus on to increase success. Not because you don't know what you're doing, but it's just nice to have. When Dr. Mackey says chiefs, that's what they refer to as state superintendents across the state. They call them chiefs. And so when you talk to the chiefs in some of the most accomplished states, these are the things that we're doing. So we're collecting these resources across the board, and we're saying, here are the industry standards, here are the best practices, let us outline this for you, these are the things that you need to do. Now, legislators and the Department of Ed work hand-in-hand seamlessly to try to provide opportunities for young people. But right now, we are really working well together because everybody understands what's going on. And so when they say, you guys need to make sure that you have a plan in place because you can't come back and ask for more money because you have so much money coming in already. So we're making sure that we're addressing issues, supporting them and outlining what we're supposed to do or what they're supposed to do so that we can be efficient and strategic in what we're purchasing and how we're supporting young people and their families between now, when we close out, what we do over the summer, and how we start up for next year. Dr. Davis?
And I think what Mr. Roller hit on is so important because we know that there are those out there that are going to dig. And so you'll see at the end of this, resources that aren't even finished that we're using and others. But what we're, what, when we finish this, they will have a manual, just like they had to complete their continuity plan. And that's what. Oh, that's what this pretty thing is that I have, Ms. Anna Morris will help me as we finish. But, so they'll have a manual, and in this manual, we, this, these ed research briefs, which will have the links in there because I know Dr. Daria will look at every one of these. But these are short briefs based on if they, you're, you're, with the pandemic specifically, what you need to do to help those that were homeless, immigrant families. This one is, this is my homework for this weekend, school practices to address student learning loss. And they give you easy strategies. And so we're trying to put those in there in a very condensed but specific format so they can look and say, yes, let's put this in our plan, because that's the other component. Or there's always the other that they can tell us and tell us why. Because the third component that's not in this today are rubrics. And we have, we're working hard on those rubrics that we have. I know the, the task force, literacy task force has started and used several that they've developed. And Sandy and Sean and Kristen Dillard are working to get those because there are some things out there that are already vetted, but there are some things that if they've got this innovative whatever that they want to spend their money on, great. Then tell us what it is. So, but I wanted you to know that that's what the manual will be, to be able to, to give them those short snippets of like, this one talks about week-long acceleration academies. And while we hear that and we know that, what does that mean? And how much approximately should you think about budgeting for? So that's, we have lots of homework.
So if you look at the third point, it says from March to May 2021, we're going to support and provide technical assistance to the school districts. So that doesn't necessarily mean that we have web conferences, we're logged in for four hours and we're just filling calls. But it might, you know, we may do that twice a month, or we may have time set up where we come out and do updates and support check-ins and take Q and A. But we're going to try to assemble the team here at the department. So one of the things that you hear a lot about during the COVID-19 modification to what we know as normal life is mental health, mental health. So what we would obviously do is we would pull in the prevention and support team, we'd pull in the counseling component, we'd have Marilyn Lewis and Shauna Lynn Elliott and Kate Warfield, who works directly with the mental health coordinators at all the LEAs. We have 102 of those. And they would bring in research-based best practices, industry standards, and say, here are some things that you need to consider as you're building your plan. So these people will be on standby along with the instructional team that Dr. Davis has already listed. But these people are on standby to provide technical assistance for the school districts as they're building the plan. Dr. Davis?
Yes, and so you'll see. Yes, and so, you'll see here on the preliminary timeline, sorry, that it says June 1st, and again, that is draft, and we're open to whatever as we hammer out, because the final will go out February 28th. So, as you see, everything is in very, very rough draft form. So, the next slide just shows you just some, the next slide just shows you just some of the collaborative work that we are all doing with, whether it's the chiefs or the deputies in other states, academic officers, just different components of this. What I also liked about the very last bullet is because it is, it looks at the global impact and what's happened from, I laughed at Ms. Martin several, several months ago when she was researching Ebola, but that's what we've been talking about because it took four years to fill some of those gaps in different places. And so, it's not a, a one-year shift for some, based on what we, you know, what we know from the global. But I think what's also critical about this plan is, this is a perfect example, and this says, strategies to avoid with student learning loss. And this is, it says, compressed content, grade retention, and enhanced RTI, response to intervention, show less evidence than, that they substantially shift learning outcomes for struggling students, and some have potential adverse long-term consequences. Now, as an educator, I would have jumped right into RTI with these kids that have been missing, or they come back, or they've been virtual, but that, those are the types of strategies we're going to point out. And if you look at page four of your manual, the first page four, the footer messed up, we have two page fours, so the first page four, it, it explains what additional time is, dedicated attention, and we take for granted sometimes that we know that everybody knows what these things are, and that, I got all of that in this, they don't have time to go through all of this. So, we're trying to be very succinct as we show examples. So, when you get to the actual recovery plan, and again, the manual will hopefully drive them to, through working on the plan, like a manual does, it'll help them. They can flip to a page if they need a certain section. But we have revolutionized, and I don't even know if Dr. Mackey knows this, but we have taken that Word template that I love, and Dr. Legwell and her magic, we use Louisiana's format in their Excel workbook, but it is, they have so much stuff embedded. But what you have on the long legal size paper are, these are snapshots and pictures from the actual plan. So, they will have an Excel workbook, and each tab, it'll be tabbed, and you'll see those in the manual, so that it adds things up for, I did none of this besides find what I like, and Dr. Legwell has worked hours, and we couldn't copy and paste either, so. But I wanted you to kinda know, those are the components. The manual aligns to the plan, and that's what, as you see, C2 on the first piece, I could flip to C2 in my manual, and that's what Mr. Roller's gonna explain in just a second. But we wanted you to know that we're not also straying from what we know our focus is as a state. We have our strategic plan, and we will have this in our manual, in the understand portion. We have the three fundamental questions that Dr. Mackey shared last week with our superintendents at SSA, because we know that as a state, while we have these extraordinary gaps, maybe from the pandemic, we also know that this is our focus regardless, prior to these gaps from the pandemic. And then, we go a little deeper with these pillars. We have three pillars. Again, when you do lots of research, these are things that we are moving to anyway and have been moving to, that you'll see these three pillars in the actual plan and how the design will work. So, those three pillars will work around in all that we're doing. And then, I will not go deep into the next slide, but to make-
Dr. Davis?
Yes?
If you go back one please?
Thank you, yes.
And so, she is so excited, she is on fire. Madam Chairman, School Board, if you look at high-quality professional development, and you think about what it is that we're doing and how we operate, all the work that we do is driven by the strategic plan. And so, as we're building professional development opportunities for LEAs and educators, you know, we focus on high-quality PD, so we can embed in our PD plans from now throughout the summer, work to support the building of the plan. So, if there's an area where there's a deficiency that we see across the board in school districts, we can tailor sessions, whether they're virtual or face-to-face, wherever we are at that time due to COVID. We can develop our professional development opportunities in the summer to meet the needs of developing and designing and implementing and carrying out different components of the plan. Because some will be for summertime, and some will be right before school starts, some will be when school starts, and some will be ongoing in additional hours outside of the traditional school day. So, with the high-quality PD, we can build and embed and design and support LEAs with the plan's construction along the way. Dr. Davis?
So, this will be the only thing that I quote, get into the weeds about, and I won't stay in them long, but this, we know regardless, is so important, and it comes from the High Reliability School and the work with Dr. Marzano, and the work that they support is actually Dr. Hattie, John Hattie. And whether we like it or not, they, I mean, his meta-analyses tell us what works, what is guaranteed and viable curriculum, and these are the six things, the six areas that when we look at those high-quality instructional materials, that high-quality PD, I mean, one of the things, that second, that scope and sequence. What we know and what we learned, that the literacy task force already knew, and is that that scope and sequence is critical in teaching kids how to read. Well, that's very important, and that's in the book, and it also ties to these 252, I carry this, or, you know, these are the, the effect sizes that moves student achievement. So, all of our rubrics will be aligned to this, to ask them, you know, does it have a scope and sequence? And that's, I use the words that the, that Marzano uses, and then I used easy words for me to look at. But I, I just say, this is part of our overall design, and while we not, we won't be saying, please prove this, 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 and this, there will be rubrics that are, have been built and are being built around this, to, to help the school systems use, use these. So, the next slide-
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
You go back one more?
This is my slide.
Little bullets on there, right? So, when you look at the last one for highly reliable schools, because we want to do what the best are doing across the country, right? So, when you look at highly reliable schools, look at the end, it says, practices to meet individual needs. Well, you're gonna say, what does that mean, individual needs? Individual needs can be behavioral needs, obviously, they can be instructional needs, gaps, learning loss. They could be mental health needs, they could be social and emotional leads, needs. They could be student learning time needs. We're finding as we look at what's going on currently, that, you know, what is the number of hours an elementary school child should be online remotely? What's appropriate? What's the number of hours for a middle school kid to be online? What about a high school kid with high-level rigorous academic courses? Are you gonna do one hour times seven classes every day? Is that appropriate? Good luck, try that. So, we're looking at best practices across the board to say, what is it that we're supposed to be doing to meet the individual needs? And all those needs change based on school district, based on school, and based on child. So, we're gonna say, here's some things that you need to think about. So, if you go one more, Sandy, I'll do this, and move it back to Dr. Davis. Here's an example of a need, mental health needs. Dr. Davis?
So, that, we, we talk about the three pillars, and they're wrapped into the, these two slides. So, when you go to the next slide, because we will have those components in there, these are the four components of their plan. To understand, and that is, the information that we give them to show the urgency, the different thing, and also understand the options that are out there, that are specific to the pandemic. And so, that will be in the first part of the manual, you'll see some of it, but again, we're not done. The assess is the second part, and that's where I feel like we really are getting there. As a matter of fact, we're going to meet with Dr. Hull and his team next week, because what we also want them to assess is, what are their needs in their middle grades? To help expand, because what do we know about CTE and STEM, all of those things? So, it's our job to have them think about those. So, that's why you have two documents, and Mr. Roller is the, has helped tremendously, because we just sat and talked, but you have C2, which is the first page of this assessment. But then, you also have the Word document that has all of the, the assessment components. Because we, again, my sweet Sandy Legwell is taking all of this in a lovely Word document and putting it so they will have multiple pages of this. But we wanted you to see the types of questions-
Okay.
And Terry can hit on this. I'll give you a question.
Madam Chair, yes, ma'am, thank you. Madam Chair, if you and the board would please refer to C2, and while you're looking at C2 and familiarizing yourself with that, I just want to share a couple of things with you. There's some literature out there that talks about in California, 6,000 fewer kindergarteners showed up. That can be drastic to this whole board. We feel that it is drastic. You miss kindergarten, you can miss certain milestones that you should hit, math, and then reading. Those that skip kindergarten, what are we gonna do with them? Will they be at a disadvantage in first grade? What does that mean for Alabama? We have the Literacy Act. That could be catastrophic. When you look at high-income families, how did they respond to this? Well, a lot of them found their own private school options, or Mother's Day out, or had family members that were in a place where they could take care of those kids. What about the other students? What about the ones who chose to try to put kindergartners on screens, all right? Have you tried to take a device from one of your grandchildren, or nieces or nephew, or your own children that are young in age? Good luck with that. Look at the equity gap. What does that mean for those that were already having a hard time to get into pre-K or Head Start? You know, we have a very successful pre-K program going on in Alabama. What about the ones that didn't get the opportunity for that? What we know is that the majority of your brain development happens at what age, by what age? The very age we're talking about right now. And so, what will that mean for us later? There was a recent study, or some research done, or some investigation by NPR, and they said enrollment down was 16% for kindergartners. What does that mean in Alabama? The impacts of early childhood learning come into focus in third grade for us. We're gonna have to make some very real decisions about the students that are affected by COVID right now. A study by the Annie Casey Foundation found that students who were not reading by third grade were found four times more likely to drop out of school. Wow, four times more likely. That's what we're talking about that we can't even see. We see it because our educators are dedicated and focused, and they've been thinking about this a long time. But what are we gonna do? How are we gonna help you? How are we gonna support you along the way? That's what this plan is for. Let me mention two pieces of legislation that's on the table right now. And it's important that we talk about this because we mentioned the partnership and the working together of the legislature and the State Department of Ed. Right now, House Bill 208 is talking about start times for five-year-olds and six-year-olds. Okay, because if you didn't have something in place that required you to come, and you didn't come, that puts you in a group that we're gonna have to focus on. You got a Senate Bill 92 that's talking about mental health. Those are two things that we're focusing on. What are we gonna do for mental health of students? How are we gonna support them? And now, what's even being put on the table is mental health of employees. Recently, at our state superintendent's conference, we had a local superintendent say, what about employee assistance programs for staff that are completely exhausted by the tremendous workload that you have with working with students in class and working with students remotely, and then the ones that chill up, and then someone gets sick and they go home, or the ones that have been dealing with quarantine and isolation? Because some kids come, as soon as they come back from their isolation, they get isolated again. You still have to deal with those, even if those families did not choose to go home themselves, they were part of the quarantine. So, if you go and you look at-
Mr. Roller, isn't there, and maybe I'm ahead of the game, or I misunderstood your first piece of legislation. Is there not one about which I heard yesterday that, that for those kidlets that did not get the kindergarten in early childhood, that they must complete those requirements before they can be admitted to first grade? Is that the one?
Yes, that's the one I mentioned.
So, I heard about it a little bit in greater detail.
Yes.
So, they're trying to fill that gap.
Yes, ma'am, we can get you a copy of that, and we can get an update and a brief from Jessica Sanders too, if you'd like.
Right, and it's from the, the-
The Senate, not the House bill, that was House Bill 208.
208.
Mr. Roller, is it a one-year bill? Is it just for COVID? Is it just for one year, or is it for the foreseeable future?
I think it's foreseeable.
It's to change the, it's to change COVID. It's Pebble and Warren, she's, I mean, she's filed that bill many years. Yes, ma'am. But it, but it is a little different this year. She's, she's made some changes, and I know, I walked in on a conversation yesterday where she was asking, she had called and asked Jessica for language and questions, and so, they've been talking, I think, pretty much every day. But, but she has, she filed it, she's amended it a couple of times, not officially, because it's not gone through the process, but probably when you see the most recent, you know, what actually comes to committee, it'll look a little different, but the, the, essentially, now what it says is that students have, they're entitled to enroll in school, public school in Alabama at age six. So long as they have completed kindergarten, or have demonstrated through some sort of assessment chosen by the district that they are ready to move on, that they're ready for, for first grade. So, you know, that's, the holdup for many years on that bill has been that private kindergartners have opposed it, and then some parents just like to keep their children home to age six. So, so it says, either they've gone to kindergarten, or they demonstrate on an assessment that they are ready for first grade, which seems to have really made it much easier on everybody to, to feel good about that. And then, for kindergarten, it is still, they would enroll at five years of age. There's also been, some states enroll kindergartners at four years of age, so long as they turn fives by the end of the fifth month or something. But, but, and so, that is still something they're working through right now. But there's a, I know there's a lot of concern about that. Dr. Stritchik will make, she would, she can stand up and testify. We have some concerns about students starting at four years of age, and getting essentially halfway through their kindergarten year before they're in five.
Right.
So, we're, so we really would like for them to start about at five, September 1st.
Would it be effective this fall?
The way she's written it, it'd be effective this fall.
Okay. Do we have funding for teachers?
Just a minute, Ms. Bell. Do we, would, I mean, if this passes, wouldn't we need more funding for more kindergarten teachers?
No, because we only have, this, it's a very, very, very small group of students that do not go to kindergarten. We would be looking at a matter of hundreds, a few hundreds-
Well, that's a question-
Spread across the whole school. It's a very small percentage, and they, and of course, the 3,000 kindergartners that didn't show up this year, it would affect. So, you asked about, because of the whole harmless that the government proposed, legislature's working through, if they do that, then school districts will still get those kindergarten teachers next year, even though the students were not there in the count this year. But, one more point on it, they would, it will affect those 3,000 students, because when they show up at six years old, what it says is, either they go to kindergarten, if the bill passes, now, it's not even out of House Committee yet, they would either have to go to kindergarten at age six, or demonstrate on an assessment that they were ready for first grade. So, it's not saying that those 3,000 students would all have to go to kindergarten, but they would have to demonstrate they're ready for first grade.
Ms. Bell, go ahead with your question, please.
Well, it's actually, it's sort of a question, and I thought that actually passed out of the House Education Policy Committee yesterday. I would certainly like a clarification on that.
Mr. Dixon says that it did pass out a committee yesterday.
Okay, thank you. I thought that was correct. So, actually, you're wrong about the, it passed out of the House Education Policy Committee. So, thank you for clarifying that, here for correcting it.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, Board, if you turn to Section C2, that I asked you to peruse and-
Which one?
Tell your honors yourselves.
The Word document.
Oh, Word doc? If you look at it, it has basic school demographic type of information at the top, and then it has recovery plan indicators, and then some clarifying details. And the purpose of this is not to assume that every team, every superintendent, instructional leader has all of this already in place, they know exactly how to handle it, they know how to maneuver it, you know, they've made mistakes this past school term, they're ready to go, they fix it all. Because what, we're finding that it is so much, it changes so quickly. You could have a school district where you just lose a feeder pattern and you have to go remote. Well, you're not gonna make a district decision on just a feeder pattern. When you look at Jefferson County or something like that, that's so spread out, and so- And so what we're doing is, and it, it seems like it's a lot, but the way that it's designed by Dr. Davis and Sandy Ledwell is they're checkboxes and then you add your content to it. So if you look down the first column, comparison of your student numbers, grade by grade. Have you analyzed to see what your numbers look like? Significant discrepancy in numbers expected. Have you thought about your kindergartners and what they're doing? What about the ones that decided to go back to K? And what about the ones who want to go forward to grade one? Other large population subgroups and gaps, have you thought about that? And then you can list those subgroups down in the last box there. Total number of in-person days for students, have you looked at that? Because there'll be some students that had very few face-to-face days because of family circumstances, actually being sick, or those instances where students are in the isolation group over and over and over again. And so you take a really small school district and a, a family has three children that go across grade spans, elementary, middle and high, and they had COVID. And they get on the bus and it's, you know, you get them to school how we get them to school. And now you have outbreaks in all three schools. And so you have populations of kids that are constantly out because of this that you couldn't plan for. But have you looked at that data of those groups and those situations that occurred? Days students had limited schedules or instructional time or access to a teacher because they took off days to clean. Have you looked at days without enough substitutes? Because what we started seeing at different times of the year is that students would come in with symptoms. We would note because they asymptomatic, teachers get sick, they have to go home. Now teachers are covering classes and you're having to get subs and then your subs run out. That's significant. Classes and courses where in-person and remote instruction were provided simultaneously. What kind of outcome did that have on the teachers that are doing the work? Have you looked at those teachers that had those circumstances and how are you supporting them along the way? Dr. Davis?
Yeah, and so again, this is what we still are, a lot, a lot of these we've lived through as parents and spouses of educators. So they were, I want to say easy to come up with to start, but as we go deeper, we also are trying to make sure that we don't have any gaps for them to consider. And so again, like Mr. Roller said, if this is my system and you see where we have LEA slash school, we're not going to ask them to turn in one for every school at all. But they have that option depending on their size. Because like he said, the middle school may shut down and the elementary school may stay open or. And so these are things to help them assess before they start their plan, which is the next component. And this is too, while, while she has it pulled up, it is a work in progress. So we are still filling those gaps and changing things. So please don't think by any nature that this is in stone. And then you look at C three, which begins the actual design. Because we understand, we assess, we design. The good news is for this presentation that we haven't built anything for evaluate yet because we're still trying to build the design, so we're almost done. But the design looks at those three pillars, but we spread them out. So for high quality instructional material, and you see the, the spreadsheet, what's nice about this spreadsheet is that it takes it by grade band. And the one that we gave you is ELA math and science. There are two reasons that social studies is not on here, but it can be added. There's another. One is we know that that courses study committee just started meeting, just started that progress of looking at what those standards might be. But again, if there's something high quality out there, we will have a rubric for it, they can add it to this sheet. But we also know that these are the three tested areas. And while nobody likes to hear that, if you're a social studies teacher, that is the reality of our teachers. And if I'm trying to figure out if I don't have enough money, I, I need to do this first, possibly. So the nice thing on the right side is it adds up for you whether, so we'll do ELA, for example. If I want to pay, and this is where we will not put it in the manual, but we will say over and over and over, y'all wanting money to pay your teacher stipends for summer PD, you've got it. That's why sub and or stipend with parentheses, if not contracted, on contract. Because you've got most of them between what's been given at the state level for ELA at the early grades level. But some of this that they're giving, they have that opportunity for science, you know, courses study training this summer, plus the stipends. So it adds it up and it also asks them to consider, what is your budgeting source? Is it local, is it state? You know, because we know we will deal with those, the magnets of effort. Is it, if it's S R two, we have made a tab, we, the very last tab, we have built that, what was an application for S R one. We have it in here and we will pull from what Ms. Martin sends us. Oh, sorry, we have so many tabs. That, we will plug in what federal programs needs so that they will mark those allowable, put that budget amount in here because it adds it up on different budget pages. We don't do that in a Word document, so thank goodness for Dr. Ledwell. So that is how we are covering all gamuts. Because once we look at these sections for the, the design of high quality instructional materials, high quality professional development, we look, we shift and let Mr. Roller and his team look at those unfinished learning, if it's mental health and wellness, all those things. Then we shift and give that last page, shift that last page to federal programs and Mr. Craig because that's what they need to sign off to then pull down their money. The other component that is in here is the facilities. And I think, yes, that's the other sheet that you got. It is a tab because we know with this funding that they can, if it improves and enhances the, the environment that, and we know they've hired additional custodians, they, they're all types of things. But what you will see is other, other, other. Because we, and Dr. Vickers is like, will you please put class size reduction in that plan? And I sent a text back, I said, I'm not putting anything in it, you are, you're going to tell us what you want. And so I think that will, with the guidance, because what they also need to think about are all these remediation type things. Because all the research is telling us, of course, that building it in during the day, of course, before and after, but during the day has to happen. And it's going to take money to train the teachers. Because if I put this in here that I'm going to do whatever, there's several different options in here. We're, we're doing something with vacation academies, learning about it in a few weeks. But I also need, I'm going to have to put in there what high quality instructional material I'm using, which means teachers need training. And so when we get done with this by the end of the month, we will have hopefully chiseled out all of those issues so that when we give them this workbook, they enter it, they use the manual to figure out what it is they need. They use the rubrics if they need them. And then we, we move forward and we process and get them their money. And hopefully they have a robust plan that will help them. That's our goal. We don't, y'all know I'm not about compliance, so.
That's very excellent.
Madam Chairman, that concludes our presentation.
Well, thank you very much. Are, any board members out in cyber world have a question? We'll address you first.
Dr. Davis, excuse me, this is Dr. Richardson. Did you say you would be working on the academic piece? Because I think it's a great idea to have a recovery plan. But I was looking at under learning losses, the fact that we know there will be learning losses perhaps. How would that impact our young people as we go forward with the literacy act's implementation?
Yes, ma'am, that will be very robust, that, that's in this folder. That will be built out over the weekend and early next week. Because what, I wanted to get the framework till first so that we could see if this was going to work. And then we're all built, like Dr. Ledwell and several of the folks are working on the rubric components. And then I'm working on the remediation components. So yes, we will, it will be much more robust with the manual.
Okay, thank you very much for y'all's hard work. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Dr. Chestnut, Ms. Bell? Dr. Reynolds? Okay, oh, yes, ma'am.
My question is just a very practical one. First of all, thank you so much, my head is swimming just a little bit. So, so I have to bring, I have to take a step back and bring it back down so that I can make sense of it. I'm picturing a superintendent in a small district in a rural area that this may feel really big, like it feels to me right now. So do you envision a plan for assistance for those superintendents? And then also, do you feel like this is going to require some support? Maybe, how will we hold ourselves accountable to what these plans will suggest for our students? And I, I include myself in that as a board member, I include everyone in the department and I include all the superintendents as well. How will we, do you envision a quarterly accountability report, monthly accountability report? So that when we're through all of this in twenty twenty-two and twenty-three, Alabama can look back and say, this is how we got from point A to point B. And hopefully other states will reap the benefits of your hard work and our hard work to hold ourselves accountable.
So the first question is, I put myself in the shoes of both Shelby County where there's lots of CO folks.
Right.
Where I work in Yufala, where I had one curriculum director who did K twelve. And so this, this is a robust school improvement plan that is specific to these issues. And so we're, we are, will roll out for those that need it and want it first, and then we'll look at those gaps. But it's a leadership team process. And so we will kind of have a framework that I go back to what Randy Fuller taught me years ago with the CSI process. But it is a framework that a leadership team sits around the table and they work on after they do the needs assessment. And we'll put the, show them this framework for those that, you know, want it and need it. But then they also, and this is where I worked with Sandy last night, because I said, we've got to be specific on these tabs. Because in Shelby County, I'm going to a room with my middle school folks and we're going to work on high quality instruction for middle school. So I've got to know if, but in other districts, it's not that way. And so we know that that format is critical to help and walk through and just give them that setup now. How we push and we're still working on that. But the second component.
Before you go to two, let me add to one.
Yes.
Dr. Davis, please, parking. So we have one hundred and two mental health service coordinators out of one hundred and forty-three. So there's another team person, they've already conducted a needs assessment for mental health and wellness related issues in the districts, as well as, as part of what counselors do. So now that's three team members. So a lot of these things have already occurred. And it's just as simple as checking in the, in the document, it's a checkbox.
Okay.
So that's what those are. So you're just checking that, that was your issue and here's what you're doing to support it. And later what we'd like to do is add something more robust perhaps in a summer program. Because a lot of the investigation out there now says you shouldn't shrink, just shrink the content, do a quick assessment, throw them back in there and just kill and drill for five weeks in the summer. You should maybe do some project-based learning. You should incorporate some physical activity or physical fitness. You should maybe do some of these other things and focus on developing the child for all of the things they lost, which just aren't instructional things. Socialization, how do you get along? How do you be creative in COVID times, right? So include all of those things. So that's the justification and documentation that you're going to do those special activities in the summer. So those things are going on. Your assessments are done in a lot of places. Your, your population is already identified. Again, this is sort of us reminding them, by the way, have you thought about this, Dr. Reynolds? I know you've been doing this a while, but have you thought about this? And you go, you know what, I forgot about that one section of the town where we lost all those students because we had storm damage and we had to relocate all of those students. So we've seen examples of these types of things happening. We just brought them all together in one document and said, let us remind you of these things and here's your justification for spending your money this one time, cares money. Dr. Davis?
The other thing that we are, we've already talked about to put in the manual is we're going to have a virtual office hours that we, at a minimum, two to three times a week, that will be on each of the three pillars. So we'll have an overview where we cut, where we say just general, whatever. But then I want to join in and I'm working on the high quality instructional materials. I'm working on the remediation, I'm working on the high quality PD, I have questions. So that is, I will say, we're going to go all in because that's, if we don't help them and give them kind of a framework for those that, you know, need it and then we will, it, all this work is for nothing. The second part is that evaluation. And that, I will tell you, is what has given me a little bit of a panic attack because this isn't, I mean, we're looking at nine hundred million dollars. And so when we look at the second page three in your manual, it shows you those key components that have been researched that we're really going to look at. Because when we look at evaluation, what does that mean? Do we look at scores? So the reflection part of this, and this is what we're, we're still hammering out, is how the plan is being managed and received by students. And what we also have talked about adding is adults. Because is it, if we don't measure if our adults are about to crash, then, so that, we're building these components in their outcomes. How are the different groups of students progressing? So we still have to build this. And then quarterly, monthly, we haven't gotten that far yet. So that is a, so thank you. We, and that's hopefully in part of the research that we'll find. I don't know the happy answer to that.
It's okay, I just want to put it out there because I know that'll be an important piece as we.
Absolutely.
Have to report to those higher up.
But those two, the, the two things, the examples with the first question will add to this manual. So I'm very glad you asked because I take for granted that most folks know that we're there, we'll help. They call, email, we'll set up things, but letting them know ahead of time will be very helpful.
It will be.
All right, well, thank you kindly. Is every, are there any other questions?
I got one, you know I do. It'll be quick. CTE, what are we doing to help our students who may have taken a career tech class and had to miss a lot because they got COVID, their teacher got COVID, whatever? And maybe some of the credentials that they planned to sit for require X number of hours, right? Or require, and so, but they're due to graduate this spring, but they don't have the hours. Will we consider allowing them to come in the summer and get those necessary hours? Or take the credentials test? Or what can we do to address that need? Because I think it's a real need.
I agree. Thank you.
I'm Jimmy Hall, Assistant Superintendent for Career Technical Education for the new board members. As far as the number of hours requirement, I'm not really aware of one where that's an issue. But there are module-based CRI attempts that have to be. And there's a certain amount of time it takes to complete those modules to get to the end. So we have to work with each testing agency or CRI representative from, you know, the different credentialings that, that go on within business and industry. They're all like almost separate. And so we will be setting up, local systems will be working to set up opportunities for students to come in. If they're on a, like full virtual, for example, we have systems that are working to set up, you know, Monday, this group of kids would come in, on Tuesday, this group of kids would come in, to be able to take it in person. The, some of the issues, and it's the same issues we see with regular assessments, finding ways to do them virtually and it still be reliable can be problematic. And so some areas, those aren't, it's not an option, so they have to come take it in person. Some of the CRI testing, the teacher doesn't even get to put their hands on the test. A representative would come with the test that morning, they pass them out, the kids take it, the representative takes it, the teacher never even, you know, touches it. So they're all kind of individual situations. But, but the local systems are supposed to be working within, you know, their credentialing setup with the test providers to provide opportunities either during the school year or if it needs to go over into summer, that can be done. Because we're dependent on the test providers anyway. We don't really control the test. As far as the module-based type performances, those can still be done virtually. So even if the student is not able to come to school for a period of time due to a positive test or the teacher is home due to a positive test, as long as they're well enough to continue to work, they should still be able to continue to work.
And so like the internships, it seems like some of the health sciences, they're expected to go into the field and I don't know how all that's.
It's problematic because we're limited on where we can send students.
Right.
And so, you know, those are, it's, it's a problem.
Maybe this summer, could they get internships?
Maybe, but we're, again, we're kind of at the mercy of, of a hospital or pharmacy or wherever the kids may be going to work, you know, and that's not just in health science. It would be in any kind of co-op internship. We're seeing those issues pop up where we have to really work hard and look to find creative ways for students to be able to do those things. Most of those, there's not a CRI tied to the actual work experience. It's really more. It's really more of a, you know, coursework and a test or modules and then a test. And so the work experience is just an added piece with more value for the student to be able to go out and say, I've proven this by passing this credential and I can go out into work and show you that I can actually do the work. So, but it's, it's problematic to get the students out into some workspaces or work environments in some cases, but, but we're working through it the best that we can. But certainly, you know, summer opportunities for work-based learning can keep, that, that was a thing before COVID. So it can continue as we move forward.
I just like the support, especially that-
Ziegler, Wayne, you would like to ask a question?
Oh, are you done? I'm done.
Okay, Dr. Reynolds, no, I think this is for you. Dr. Reynolds, go ahead.
Yes, I appreciate so many of the anecdotal references and the subjective questions. I think if a board member has some specific suggestions, we can suggest them. We've got a long agenda, I'd like us to move the agenda, please.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. I think at this time, we're finished with these components and we're going to break for lunch. We'll reconvene-
I would ask that we discuss the item two before we break for lunch?
That's going to be a long one, that's going to be so long.
Well, I have some requests down here at the board that they want to go ahead and break for lunch before that point comes. So-
It's only 12:40, so-
What did he say? He said it's only 12:40.
Yeah.
I'm not sitting in my ancient chair.
And we were just going to do a 20-minute break. We're not doing the full 30 minutes, we're doing a 20-minute break and we'll come back at 1 o'clock.
It's your rule.
I'm ruling, I'm with each other. But I, obviously, we've delayed it this year because of the COVID. We may have to just continue in the virtual setting of it, but I want to go ahead and get it on the book. So I am respectfully asking with Ms., Ms. Bell, are you on the line yet? No. All right, well, I was going to ask her to be the chairperson. All right, well, we're going to delay this a little bit till we actually have Ms. Bell on the phone, I mean, on the screen.
That's why I wanted to discuss it before we vote.
You want to discuss before we vote?
No, I, never mind.
For some reason, Dr. Reynolds, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I said, it's the absence of members is why I wanted to discuss this item before we have a reach that.
Sorry, again, I, I am not understanding what you are saying to me.
I'm frustrated. He said this is why he wanted to know this.
All right, well, we'll come back to the one about the retreat. Does any other board member have any questions you want to bring forward at this point?
Ms. Ziegler, I just wanted to ask that we receive a copy of the recovery plan presentation that was sent. Those of us virtually did not have it.
Okay. Dr. Richardson, Dr. Boyd is making notation of that and it will be sent to you.
Thank you.
And the other board members, yes?
Yes, you and all the other board members, of course.
Yes, that's what I want.
Dr. Chestnut and everybody else who is not present right now. We will absolutely, they will get that in the mail to you. Thank you for reminding us.
And just please keep in mind it's in draft form at this point. There will be some more modifications forthcoming.
Did you hear that, Dr. Richardson?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Ms. Ziegler, can they also email it, if that's possible?
Yes, absolutely. They will do both. You'll get a, a hard copy in the mail and they will virtually send it to you.
I want to apologize for the technical difficulties. For some reason, my video accessibility went out. I was on, but you all were not able to see me.
Okay, and I have to say, I'm having a hard time hearing you too.
Maybe she turns up her-
No, that's getting worse.
Can you hear me now?
A little bit better. Hit it a little bit more.
I have it to the max, I'll just speak up.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Something's not-
Right. Okay, any other board member questions? Go ahead.
Okay, I've got something that just came in. And they deal with the literacy act. And so I've not even read these, so I don't know exactly what I'm asking here, but they're concerns. What are the statewide K-3% of students below benchmark as of the latest testing window? Do we know?
Elizabeth's right behind you.
Oh, I'm so sorry, let me know, remind me.
I've been a little, luckily, we have Dr. Stritchak who is doing that because I've been a little preoccupied the last few weeks. So, so she has those answers, she could update you with the most current.
Is it the formative data that they're wanting, the most recent benchmark from the fall?
It, I'll just read it one more time. What are the statewide K-3% of students below benchmark as of the latest testing window?
So I guess summative, we would have it from the prior year, but formative, we have it for fall and I can send it to you.
Okay.
And formative from last year is in our report that's on the ARI website. But I can send you the fall data that was self-reported in caveat.
Okay, thank you. And then, when will the LTF revisit the assessment list? Since our list was released a year ago, the law says it needs to be reviewed annually.
So the literacy task force has a meeting Tuesday and that is on their agenda to devise a timeline for that and several other items.
Okay. Schools are looking at purchasing core curriculum prior to adoption, attempting to address needs of so many struggling students.
That's on their list too.
How will it be determined what Alabama can, no, I'm sorry. How soon will it be determined what Alabama considers third grade reading proficiency? Don't we, the board, vote on that?
It's a long process and I wish Dr. Mackey was here because he would weigh in on it. But Dr. Boyd, would you weigh in on that, please?
Sure. In order to determine grade level reading, first, we would have to have the results of the assessment, of the, of the assessment that will be administered. So I, I think it's important to understand the difference between being proficient and being on grade level reading. So proficiency is done from a statistical format. In other words, you get a set of data, you have the data in quartiles. So you have first quartile of first one-fourth, the second fourth, the third fourth, and the fourth fourth. So a student is proficient when they scored in the third and the fourth quartile. That's proficiency. Grade level reading is determined totally different. You have to use the results of the assessment that will be administered, which of course is the DRC, the Interdepartmental Strategic Corporation Assessment, and then use that information there and look at the statistics. And a group of teachers will align the results of that assessment with the core standards. And of course, the, the common, the, the, the course of study standards are the standards that teachers have to convey to the students. So they'll look at the third grade course of study standards, look at the results of the test and come up with a raw score that says, aha, this, this score could be a number such as 350. 350 is grade level proficiency for the third grade.
So we're planning to give the DRC test this spring?
We are planning to give the DRC test this upcoming spring. Keep in mind that federal guidelines require us to have 95% participation rate. With COVID and the way it is now, we're really not sure if we're going to be able to reach that 95% participation rate nor have we received any guidance in terms of a waiver from the federal government regarding that situation. But yes, Dr. McCarthy, our plan is to move forward with the assessment this coming spring and then use that information with our committee, our TAC committee, which is our technical advisory committee that will give us information on, on the process of doing this, bring our teachers in together and decide what that third grade reading level score would be.
This is not asked, but it, part of your answer makes me want to ask this. We give the test and let's say for COVID reasons, other reasons, we do not have 95% participation. What's our plan B? What do we do?
Well, it depends. It depends on whether you look at it from a state perspective or federal perspective. We're in the same situation as the other 49 states.
Right, right.
So I really feel that we'll probably get some guidance from the feds really soon, especially once the administration gets settled in and so forth, you know, give us some information about that. But considering the percentage of students attending schools across the country, we're nowhere near 95%. So I see some relief and some guidance coming in the next few weeks, maybe the next month or so. So until we get further guidance, we'll move forward. But in all likelihood, it would be impossible for you, for us to reach that 95% participation rate. And this is so important because if you don't reach the 95% participation rate, the school districts get penalized in terms of their grading with the federal government. So it's going to be really important for that, which is why that waiver is so, so important. So at a state level, it's important for us for numerous different things. Number one, even though we use the data for the report cards, we use data for a whole lot of other different, a lot of different things. So in the event the accountability piece is not in place, it's still going to be important for us to assess our students because we use the information. They hope our students will want to be able to do longitudinal studies to track students from, let's just say, third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. Look at those criteria and see how significant the slide was due to COVID. In addition to that, that data will allow us to provide prescriptive professional development for our teachers. If we know that fractions, or if we know that reading fluency is a problem at the third grade, the fourth grade, then we could provide that prescriptive professional development to help our teachers become better professionals. And being better professionals, of course, they'll be able to help our students and student achievement will go up, which is our ultimate goal.
No, I mean, I agree that the assessment is important. Of course, I'd like to have 95%. I hope the federal government is reasonable with all that. But I also agree that even if we don't get 95%, it can still be very instructional in helping us realize that, you know, what are, what are the biggest issues? What are, you know, how do we then design professional development that targets those weakest issues? And that sort of thing. So, yeah. So I, I appreciate that. I've got other topics, but if somebody has a question about that, certainly.
Dr. Boyd, I was understanding that the third grade students will get a proficiency score and a grade level score. Is that correct?
At this particular point, I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, I think there was been discussions.
Yeah, there's been some discussions, but I don't know if the final decision was made regarding that particular situation. Dr. Davis, do you know?
I think that's part of what the TAC continues to work through based on what we, what we end up with. You know, if ideally, we end up and we're able to give the assessment and we get those scores, they then will be, there's a technical term that y'all, but with that, though, then becomes, once they validate it, get that valid, validation reliability, then they can give the, both of those. But they don't feel comfortable unless something has changed. Giving those two right now without that time to validate what the first year's test scores say. And that's what they need to then give us both scores. Now, something could have changed, but that was the last discussion.
And it's based, yeah, that's right. But it's based on a premise that you cannot make a broad generalization about students or about anything based on one isolated incident or one assessment, which is why it takes two assessments.
And are we this year beginning second grade testing? It's for growth, I think. We're, it's not understanding.
Right, but we're doing-
But is that starting this year?
Well, what we're doing is we're doing a formative assessment. So there are six different reading companies, our reading testing companies, that have submitted a bid to us and school districts are using one of those particular companies. So with a formative assessment, it allows the teachers and principals to look at the data from different categories such as fluency, phonemic awareness, comprehension, just different categories and so forth. But because it's a formative assessment, not summative, it allows the teachers and central office administrators to provide prescriptive guidance for where changes need to take place. So yes, it's going to be administered in the second grade, it's administered in the first, in the third grade also. But a big test of which will be for our students, not this spring, but the next year when they're in the third grade, whether or not they'll be at reading level, at, at grade level reading level.
Okay. ESSA.
Ms. Ziegler, this is Wayne, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, much better. Thank you, Dr. Reynolds.
I just wanted to, want to clarify because of the way the first item on our agenda was carried out and the question by Dr. Richardson. So we not have discussions as detailed and with as many anecdotal references on reports that we don't have in hand. Those of us who are, who are by WebEx, because I assumed I'd have everything. I want you as, as vice chair to ensure we have documentation, documents before they discuss.
Yes, sir, okay. Did you hear that he was saying that the board members in, in-
Virtual.
Virtual would really want these documents that we were presented in person, that they want them in hand during the discussion.
Correct.
I appreciate Dr. Davis and the other presentations, but it's kind of like, it's confusing when we don't have those things in hand. And I don't think it's conducive to being a board member if I don't have the report before me.
Understood, thank you. We will definitely be stressing that and making sure it does happen. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any more board questions?
I've got another-
Go ahead.
Since we're talking about testing, the ESSA plan.
Sure.
Part of the ESSA plan added in, I thought it was, maybe it wasn't, maybe it was there all along, but the, the pre-ACT and the ACT, and we would use that as a measure of growth. And some of my principals, high school principals, have said that the, that, and they've talked to the company, you know, the ACT company, and said the pre-ACT is on a different scale, that it only goes up to 32. And trying to show a parent, you know, that, that this, this doesn't mean an 18 does not equate with an 18 on the full ACT that you will take your next year. And so the request, my bottom line with this, would be their request is, can we not give the full ACT both years? 10th grade and 11th grade? And then it might be a better measure as far as ESSA and as far as us, right? Are concerned to have, because you're comparing apples to apples. And they also said that it's much shorter, has fewer questions. And so then, you know, some parents get disappointed if they see that their child did really, really well, let's say on one section, when they took the pre-ACT. Then when they take the full-blown ACT, their score might go down. And part of it could just be fatigue, that they're just not used to taking a test that is that long. And that maybe by having the full-blown ACT both years, it gives them a better opportunity to, to learn from their mistakes, to, to sit through the experience of sitting through the full-blown ACT. So anyway, I'm tossing that out as just something for consideration.
Sure, well, let me address the first concern, whether or not pre-ACT was part of the ESSA plan. It always was. So a little bit about ESSA, in order for us to collect information for our students, the federal government has required us to administer summative assessments to certain grade levels. That it's a minimum of grades three to eight and at the high school level. So it's part of, too, our report card, our state report card. So some of the performance standards associated with the state report card includes student achievement, how well students have done, has done, have done on a, a test based on a raw score. And the other one is student growth. Well, in order to, to determine student growth, you have to have a pre-test and a post-test, hence the ACT pre-test. So, so with these particular companies, in order for them to have a contract with the state of Alabama or any state for that matter, they have to show and they have to have a reputation of showing that their test is a good test. And how do we measure good? Good is measured by reliability and validity. So validity is how accurate the test is. So they have to go through pilot studies and go through all this to show that the test is accurate and measures what is supposed to be measured. The reliability of a test deals with its consistency over a period of time. So if a student takes a test one week and takes that same test two or three weeks, the results of the test will be somewhere in line statistically. There would be a statistical significant difference between the two. So DRC, ACT, and some of the other companies we've used in the past, such as Scantron, the Alabama, the APT, and all these different tests, all those tests have to prove that they were statistically reliable and valid. Well, ACT has proven this, not just for Alabama, for other states. So they determine that the best way to do a pre-ACT is to do it this particular way. Maybe it's from zero to 32 and the full ACT is from zero to 36. I will check, contact someone from ACT to determine whether or not it is 32. But I want you to understand that, I mean, this is a very, very lengthy process and it's not just a, a random situation where a company does the research and statistics behind it. It's a valid, reliable system that they use to assure us that if a student makes a 25 on the ACT, it corresponds to a 25. But I'll, I'll, I'll check to see what's the difference between the pre-ACT and the ACT and send it to you on communication.
And it may just be a communication with our counselors and our-
And maybe it is.
And it may just be communication with our counselors and our career pages.
Maybe it is.
That we need to show that they, they're on two different scales, but this equates with this.
Absolutely.
And just, you know, something, just make sure that we're communicating and answering their questions so that when a parent calls up and is, doesn't understand, that they know how to address those issues.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Dr. Boyd, Wayne Reynolds, I have a question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Why are we not just giving the ACT twice? You know, I'm a statistician and I know correlation studies exist. But why are we bothering to give two different tests? Because we can easily ascertain progress if we're using the same instrument. I don't understand why we're not just using the ACT both times and affording our students practice and data, which would apply specifically to this matter. Why are we avoiding giving the ACT twice?
Well, and Dr. Reynolds, we are giving the ACT twice, just one is called a pre-ACT, the other one is called the ACT. So it's Dr. McCarthy.
We're calling a different name and it's a different test. PSAT is not the same as an ACT, as I would interpret what Dr. McCarthy just referenced.
Right. So what I'll do is I'll contact ACT, the company, and find out what the differences are and send the response to you and the other board members as what are the differences. And I'll also ask the question, why not use the exact same one? But keep in mind, in order for them to meet the requirements of the federal government as a summative assessment at the high school level, they have to prove to them that this is how we would calculate or how they would calculate growth and how they would calculate achievement. So it met that particular standard there, but I will find out why it's not the exact same test between the two and share it with you all in writing.
Okay.
I think.
As additional input, we encourage, and in several of my systems, students to take the ACT after even as early as their freshman year to begin getting benchmarks, especially for our gifted students, to move forward. And I think that as responsible state board members, you know, we're talking about FASFA and all these other things, we need to give them data to encourage their progress for educational experiences beyond secondary levels.
You, one of the things I want to throw in, remember that we keep, we're calling it the pre-ACT, but it's no longer, now it's the early high school ACT. And so one thing is it's developmentally designed for students in ninth and 10th grade, whereas the ACT is developmentally designed for students in 11th and 12th grade. And remember that we have to measure high school growth according to ESSA. And so one of the issues is if you, if you give, there's such, there's students, as Dr. Reynolds says, are going to score really well as freshmen. I mean, there's some students who scored really well in seventh grade on it. But most students, it's designed so that the early high school assessment is really for ninth and 10th graders and the regular ACT is for older students. So we, and Dr. Boyd said, we'll, we'll get with them and see what the difference would be, but how you calculate growth would be different since one is calibrated for earlier, younger students than the other. The, and the other thing, I will tell you that cost goes in. I, I think the pre, the early high school test is around $20 a student and the ACT is around $50 a student. So it does change our request. Not saying we couldn't ask.
And many of our students are taking the ACT regularly. The average or above average students are already paying that difference. We could save them money if we offered them the option. And I know that there are correlation studies that would accommodate the difference in the design of the test. I, I don't think that we should say that the ACT is not a test designed or appropriate to interpret for ninth, 10th graders. I don't think that's an accurate statement.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. Before we go on, caller number five is Ms. Bell. So may we get her on the screen, please? Thank you. Okay. Ms. Bell, can you hear us? Ms. Bell?
Can you hear me now?
Now we can. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. We just want to make sure we've got everybody on. Are there any other? I'm sorry.
I just said, I appreciate that.
Okay. You're welcome. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Are there any other, excuse my throat. Are there any other questions from the board members before we go back to item A? Do you have any more questions?
Well, sure. But I don't want to dominate if other people have questions.
Do you have a question?
I'm just listening and learning.
Okay. Listen and learn away. And if anybody else has a question, we'll interrupt Dr. McCarthy.
Please do. Please do.
Okay. A request. I know the, the governor did her budget. We did our budget request. The governor has come out with her budget. Can we have a side-by-side of the two to compare?
Yes. And we, uh, I'll get you one, I will get you one right now. I thought we had already sent that to y'all, but I will.
Did you hear it?
I didn't get one. But thank you, it was on my.
No. So.
Okay.
It's on my desk. There's, I know there's a copy on my desk because Andy gave, got me one, so.
Okay.
I'll go get some.
And he'll be able to send it to the.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
All right. Board members, virtual, it will be coming to you as well. All right, number two.
And then with regards to the budget, I've gotten many phone calls, is Sandy still here? About the absence of funding for TIRs, teachers in residence. That has been very impactful. Every school that I've been into and seeing the data wall and seeing the interaction with the math coaches and the teachers and the success of the students compared with other schools that did not have that. So whatever we can do to support that, it, it hurt my heart that it was zeroed out. So anything we can do to support that effort in support of these TIRs and, of course, the COPS stipends. We, we want to help our, our young readers and to have the very best assistance and expertise that they can possibly have. And, and we hate, right now, we're losing so many to private practice because they just can't make as much money working in a public school. And so whatever we can do to support that, so, um, just.
I'm with you on both, all the way. Having a lot of conversations about them. But I would just say, you know, certainly talk to your legislators and, you know, you, you and Senator Orr have, represent some of the same space and he'll start the budget, so. And we've been having those conversations.
Well, excellent. Well, thank you. And then career tech, Dr. Hall. I don't, I don't want to scare you, but, um, this, this whole, I guess, when I started digging into the Department of Labor and saw their, um, their high demand, high income, high growth jobs and occupations, are, are our career tech offerings aligned with those? Do, do we, like, constantly update what we're offering and providing in alignment with that?
Yes. So the CLNA, which is a document that the local systems do to, you know, to get their Perkins funds allocated to their system, in our state plan, they are supposed to be aligning the local programs with the high-demand, high-wage jobs either in their county, big enough city, could be the city, certainly the workforce region, and potentially the state. And so the way that list works is if the occupation shows up, I believe, on three of the individual workforce regions list, then it's a statewide high-demand, high-wage job. So, yes, we're, we're working hard to do that and that's what the systems are supposed to be doing. And if they don't, then that's when the CLNA goes back to them and they have some work to do and it comes back. So that was, I think we had a couple of situations where we had a delay. We got a question from one of the board members back in the fall, but it was addressed and taken care of.
Now, CLNA, please explain.
Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment.
Okay.
And so that, that, that document has to do with all the CRIs that are pursued, the programs that are pursued, all that stuff has to align with high demand, high wage throughout the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate that you're on it.
Yep.
Okay. Keep going until I stop you.
Keep going.
Okay. This is a, a general question, and I thought about bringing it up in the actual board meeting, but I didn't want to slow down what we did and I didn't want one of the schools that we were voting on to be, um, to be targeted or to feel targeted. So this is a general question. When we, and Jane, you're here.
Yeah.
Dr. Margaret. So, um, when we approve college programs, like we did this morning, do we, is, is part of, when it's a recommendation, is part of the analysis that we do also looking at enrollment numbers? You know what I mean? Is it, is it, like, especially if it's a renewal? Because, and I'll, I'll give you an example of why. AIC does systematic reviews all the time. Right now, the economics major at Jacksonville State is under a review, as are many majors across the state. If you can't show that you have at least eight graduates a year over a three-year average, then you are very likely to lose that major. And so I, so what I'm asking about for the enrollment is especially with some of our smaller colleges, when we get specific into a specific area, um, what was it today? Like, alternative elementary? And it, so, so it's not the broad elementary ed, it's a specific one. Do, are we, do we feel confident before we bring that forward that we are going to have at least eight?
No. We do not do any enrollment information. If we did, if we required, we'd talk the fake about this, we set a floor. We'd eliminate most secondary education programs in this state, except at two or three institutions. We would eliminate physics, all of our languages other than English, chemistry, math at some institutions, English language arts at some institutions. Our premise has been, and the boards have been, these are the standards you must meet to prepare teachers of whatever. If your institution can document that you meet the standards, then you have a program available if students choose to enroll. And of course, for the secondary programs and music and art and theater, there's a close relationship between colleges of arts and sciences and the College of Education. We could, if we eliminated the programs that had fewer than eight students enrolled at any time, it would not be a cost savings to the institution, which is one of the things that AIC is looking at in terms of the academic disciplines. So we have talked over time about a formula, a rolling formula and that kind of thing. And we've said if the institution puts the finances into having, for example, three faculty members with earned doctorates to prepare elementary teachers, and if Judson College is willing to do that, or Spring Hill College, or the University of Mobile, or Talladega College, if they will put the financial resources to get the people and the coursework and so on, then if they can graduate two or three a year who are quality teachers and will teach in Alabama, we want them to be able to do so.
But would AIC then review them and shut them down?
I doubt it.
And what, so, so, Dr. Meyer, forgive me for not knowing this, but, but, so when we review a program, like, let's say that, um, University X decides they want to start offering physics. For them to be able to offer secondary ed physics, they would have to have three faculty members.
It's one elementary and early childhood require three faculty members with earned doctorates in the discipline to provide the Class B program. For the secondary programs, um, history, math, et cetera, it is one faculty member with an earned doctorate. But they also have to have the coursework that meets your State Board of Education standards. That has just been changed, remember, with 3219, now it's 30. So they've got to provide the coursework frequently enough that somebody can graduate a reasonable amount of time. But early childhood and elementary are very expensive programs for our institutions to provide because, think of all the subjects that an elementary teacher teaches. It's unlikely that one person, one faculty member, has that breadth of knowledge. But they don't, we don't bring them to you until they've met your standards. And now, some of them are approved with conditions for three years. Some are approved for seven years because they've met all of, all of the standards. But we're very careful in, in the ones we bring to you. And for example, Talladega College is on the agenda later today. We're bringing to your recommendation to approve half the programs they've been providing because the other half didn't meet the board's standards. And so we're very careful about that, but there is no minimum number of students.
Well, thank you. I've just, I've had questions about that for a while.
I know, I say that.
And I feel like I just had a wonderful presentation.
While you're standing there, if you want to meet number three, nobody. Keep going. Keep going.
Okay. CTE, you know, I love the rubrics. We're the Rubric people for math textbooks. They did an awesome job. My hat's off to them. Thank you, everybody that was involved with that. I'm so proud of those rubrics and so happy that they are out to those people who need them and wanted them the most. So thank you so much. But then I looked at the CTE rubrics for textbooks and the, the measurement was different. You know, so for what, like, we said strong for math is 3.5 to four. And then, but, but strong, where it says exceeds expectations, started at a three. And then moderate was a two. And so why the change in the, the grading system?
That's, do you want, do you want me to?
Do you know what you're doing with that? Okay.
Yes. Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Don't fall on your purse.
Just a few names here.
You can come right around here.
Yeah, you can sit at the governor's seat. So just quickly, the, when we started looking at the, the big overall picture, that's something that we will continue to streamline as we continue to move forward. Because remember, in, in the past, this is only the first, second time that CTE has done when they do, they just did all of it at one time. And now we are, like, we'll have, I think, five programs today present. So those are some of the things that as we move forward, we are streamlining. The qualifiers will be the same, the one, two, three, four. So as much as possible, because you, we may run into, um, just STEM, a STEM book, that there's something different that we couldn't, but we would be able to have that in ex. We did look at it and talk about it when we added those additional rubrics for math and what we felt like based on the ones that they had looked at and that they were recommending and approved for approval, that they, there was enough information there that as we move forward, that we will streamline it more. So there's no, I mean, there's no magical answer as to why, because, again, with us both, we are both pretty new to this and so we can't, we don't know why it was done in the past. And we also have to realize that CTE did, did this one time for all of their clusters. So now that we're, we're piecing those things together. So, yes, ma'am, that's just, that's the truth.
I don't know if you heard of, he said, oh, eight.
Oh, eight, okay. So.
That's a lot.
Yeah. So, but we.
Well, thank you. I just, when I looked, it was just, it was under the.
Oh, yes.
It's a different, um, scale.
It was.
Okay. Well, and the last thing, and this is just a request as well, that I appreciate, I know the board asked very much for, for, um, for a voice in improving the textbook law. I think many of us felt like that, um, we did not have a voice, like, with the rubrics, right? That we couldn't submit the rubrics till the bond money came out, um, till, like, 15 signatures had been made, till. And, and that we felt like, or I, I won't speak for everybody else, I'll suddenly speak for me. I felt like it could be much improved over the current textbook law. And so I suppose, um, what I would request is that we have opportunities to talk about what, what are our biggest grievances with the current process? what, what are our biggest grievances with the current process? And then what possible solutions, and they'll have pros and cons, I'm sure, but possible solutions going forward, right? And so, so, you know, what would be, what would we really like to see? And I think one thing overall is more involvement on the front end. And at least that, that's from me, and I can't speak for anybody else.
And I'm going to piggyback on you because we know that, hang on, a brain moment is coming. Representative Garrett, and then there's a companion, Senate, companion bill by Senator Melson. But we should have been involved in what we, because we were sort of the ones that were questioning and wanting to know more, to be absolutely one hundred percent involved in the input to which this would make the new bill revision or whatever, centered around the, the intent that the board had, be it whatever. So I have to say that I, I am, I don't support the bill as it is because it really does not include the board at all in the, in its verbiage. And I think that we are a vital component in this. So that's me speaking.
I will comment Senator Melson is my senator. And I've, I had no input before the legislation was drafted or since, and having input as a state board, as an elected state board of education, in revision of law. Dr. Mackey, did we actually develop some points that we wanted in the legislation to forward to the legislative body or not?
Well, we have taken, I mean, obviously, over the last three months, we've listened to the concerns board members had about their being, and the main concern, I think, are a big part, I would say the main concern, was using more than just the standards to do the comparisons, to do comparisons that were broader than, just compare the textbooks to the standards. And we did take that to, I know Jessica's met with, with Mr. Garrett, I don't know if she's talked to Mr. Melson, but, but to try to get something started. Now, that, that is early in the process. And I know she has started, she has heard from some board members, Jessica has, and would like to talk to all of you over the next several days about input, about how, what you would like to see it look like. I would, I would say it's a good thing that you've got these legislators who are also paying attention to the board's discussion and saying, we want to make the process better. So let's, let's take the opportunity to work with them, I think. But, you know, I know one of the things Dr. McCarty and I have talked about additionally is like the rubrics. When would the rubrics be released? So could they be released upon approval by the board rather than after the governor signs the contract? So, and she brought that up to me, and I've talked to a lot of people in the building and outside about what the issue would be, where that, why that language is in there. Well, I got the history. So that, the legislature has it set up that way so that when the rubrics are done, but before the governor signs the contracts, that the vendors cannot try to renegotiate the price or maybe back out of the deal before the governor signs, ins the deal with them, that they agree they will publish this book as the board's approved it for seven years and not change the price. The concern was that once they saw the rubric and how well they scored or how poorly they scored, that they might not want to do that. Now, that being said, as long as everybody understands that's the concern, if the board says, still says, no, we would like the law to be changed to say the rubrics get released as soon as approved by the board, we're fine with that. We just need, I think, need to know the history and why the law is there and kind of, you know, that, so we have a full discussion about it. But I think if that's, if that's a big consideration, the hard part is, of course, things move so fast over there. Like, things change daily, they change sometimes multiple times a day, and it's very difficult to get, you know, to always stay ahead of that. But I know that, I think Jessica's talked to, I know she's talked to some of you and would, would be glad to talk to everybody. Probably the easiest thing is in one-on-one discussions about, you know, what do you see as the benefits? What would you like to see changed? What's, what's kind of the bigger issue for you than the other? But, but anyway, I think that's where we.
Yeah. Ms. Bell? Ms. Bell, is that you?
Yes, this is Stephanie Bell. I do have some suggestions, and no, Jessica has not contacted me. We all received that group email. But I have some major concerns regarding this legislation, and I've already contacted legislators, and I'd like to encourage Dr. Reynolds to do the same, since one of them actually lives in his district. It's, I think it's important for the board because we can talk about rubrics all day long, but it doesn't, this legislation, the changes that are made, and Jason can take notes to share with Jessica if she's not there, I don't see her in the room. But if she is, this is what I would recommend on page one, where it says this bill would authorize the state superintendent to convene other instructional materials, review committees. Of course, we need to know what that means to review and rate varying, and I'm sure the rating is the rubrics that you're discussing. But it, it says this bill would author, also authorize the state superintendent of education to establish evaluation criteria. This is a mention of the state board of education. The state board of education ultimately is responsible, and the state board of education is not mentioned. On page two, where it says, it says the state textbook committee shall also consider any recommendations made by the state courses of study upon the approval, is not in there, upon the approval of a statewide course of study by the state board of education. It just says, or by the state superintendent of education. Of course, that needs to be brought out. Your, the state superintendent is giving, is being given unprecedented authorities. The state board of education is pretty much left out. On page three, it just says one of these current, these eight members shall be appointed from each of the current, it says seven, United States congressional districts for Alabama. As we know, they changed the law a long time ago. We don't have our districts aligned with the seven U.S. congressional districts. We have our own districts and there are eight of us. So that needs to be changed. And then it says, and, okay, then it goes down on that same page, you need to put in, again, a correction for the, the districts, and it says that this shall be recommended by the state superintendent, these nine additional members shall have educational knowledge. So you're adding people to a committee, you're giving the state superintendent unprecedented right now even more authority than what he has without the board's involvement at all. I mean, it goes on and on and on where we have on page four, no, I wouldn't recommend necessarily any changes there, but it's a continuation of what I've already mentioned. And then it says that you need to put in, it says it shall be a misdemeanor. What kind of a misdemeanor on page five? Class C? And then on page five at the bottom, take, strike the part, anyone found guilty of doing so shall be fined, not speeding. Anyway, according to the maximum fines, change, take out the fines, there's a, the fine may change when the other laws are changed, and that happens all the time when we're dealing with penalties and criminal penalties in particular. But, so that you're not stuck back in the, whatever, now would be the two thousand twenty. But the, then it goes down, it says, again, you need to add, the committee may also be called to meet, instead of just at the request of the superintendent, it needs to be, the committee may also be called to meet at the direction of the state board of education by and through the state superintendent. The state board of education is the authority, the state board of education is the governing body. We need to meet, we're not even mentioned. And I don't know whether this was a law that was written free, primary, but it goes down on that same page six where it needs to be changed, the other necessary meetings shall be held as determined by the state textbook committee or upon the call of the chair. And then it says the state superintendent, you need to add, or the state board of education. Again, on, on page seven, there are changes where it needs to be, the state board of education needs to be included. As a matter of fact, an other criteria as approved, and this is another section, as approved by the state board of education, not the state superintendent of education, but it should be the state board of education. That's one of our, our constitutional responsibilities. On page eight, you know, we need to emphasize higher quality in the educational resources. And then again, the courses of study for which textbooks are being, you know, again, you don't, you align it and it's mentioned, but that's another section on page eight that's underlined, it needs to be reviewed more closely for the content of that new section. And then just completely strike out page parts, most of page 10, because you're, it's an entirely new added section to the code. And it doesn't align with what is there, but it also, and on page 11, it also changes some things without actually being specific as far as the changes. I'd be very careful about validating something that is dedicated, but again, board members should be very concerned that we are really pretty much if not completely cut out of this process, and the additions are pretty much designed, if you read them, to do so. So that, those are my comments. It's on, it's on video now, so if Jessica needs to go back, it's on record publicly, and I stand by them. And I, again, emphasize the state board of education, we can talk about rubrics, but if we're not a part of the changes, and it's all solely given to the state superintendent, whether it's Dr. Mackey or someone in the future, then we cannot, we will be blamed as a board, but we cannot really say that we're ultimately responsible, except for the hiring of that person who's given that authority, which is not the case now. The state board needs to keep that authority. We need to have some more authority given to us, as a matter of fact, in this decision-making process in order to, to be sure that what we vote on has input from our constituency at all levels, parents, teachers, principals, superintendents, and of course, students. But that, that's my position, it needs to be changed drastically. And yes, Dr. Reynolds, I think you need to talk to your legislator.
Yes, Ms. Bell, if you would send me that annotated discussion, I agree with you, both the chairman and the vice chairman, Senator Givhan and Senator Butler, are close friends mine in my proximity. And I would agree with you that these changes seem to be a legislative way to implement what failed with Constitution Amendment One when they attempted to dissolve our state board of education. This is essentially legislating removal of the state board from any of these activities that we've traditionally had leadership roles in. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or, before I go back to, when we wish to discuss the retreat, anybody else?
Ma'am.
Oh, go back. You're allowed to. Okay. As I sort of precluded, but I'm going to repeat myself because I'm not sure Ms. Bell was on, we're bringing up the retreat because we, it is a requirement. We have given it a pause because of COVID, but it's time, especially with our two brand-new members, to bring it back and, and move forward with our retreat. I want to say that, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, I, that Ms. Bell was very forth, I mean, was very positive in, in talking about the retreats and getting them implemented and what good they do for us as far as bringing us together. So I just wanted to bring that up because sometimes things have a tendency to get away from us, and I wanted to bring it back to the front. And so I am going to ask if Ms. Stephanie Bell would take over as the retreat coordinator. Ms. Bell, would you be willing to take that on?
Certainly, I would be honored to, and I appreciate the opportunity. And yes, this was something, when I served a second time as the vice president, I felt like it was extremely important for the board to have this in the administrative code. And certainly Dr. Richardson, who was the interim at the time, agreed, and since we had served together originally when he was the state superintendent, it was a very easy process to go through and think how this needed to be done, because he had experience with, with the board, and it was a very positive experience as well. The point of the retreat was, especially for the new members, and we used to do this, where we had an orientation and the members who, the veterans, I'll call them, had the opportunity to also, and I think it was well attended, if not most of them attended, we, we were able to have an orientation. It was really a retreat, and the whole goal of it should be for us to get to know each other better as far as working together and, and having discussions other than policy discussions at the table. However, one of the things that I would like for us to do is to actually have our own strategic plan, which is a common practice among all state boards across the country. Now, we've heard mention of the department's strategic plan, and that's not a problem, but the board needs to have its own, and we even need to have our own mission statement, which is also done across the country with boards, and it's very helpful. It's a, you know, we have one with the department, they can be cohesive, and they should be, obviously. But the board, as I've seen recently through legislative means and otherwise, has actually had its power diminished. And we, we just have to be the ones to take it back. And as a board, people expect that, and I think that the vote in March was very clear in that our constituents want to have an elected board, and they very much appreciate the representation, and it's important to have, to them especially, to have that voice. It's not the same in all states, some are appointed, some are a combination, and Jessica McCarty has attended the NASC meeting, and she, and that's another thing I'd like to recommend for new members, it's just a, it's, it's a nice way to meet others from across the country. We have not had one this year because of COVID, everything is because of COVID. But I think as we move forward, yes, Dr., Mrs. Ziegler knows that this is an important thing, we need to have one shortly after you all are sworn in, and thankfully, and congratulations, you're here. And we look forward to working with you. I've heard great things about all of you and actually the whole board. So anyway, that, that's where we are, we need a, a place, a time, and as we look to the future, it can be virtually, if you want it sooner rather than later, it can be, we had one of our retreats at a location in Talladega County that was at that time owned by the, and it still is, owned by the two-year colleges in the state of Alabama. But that was early on, and of course, the state board had, had the authority over the two-year colleges at the time. We also had one at First Baptist Church right down the street, and they were very gracious, and it's still open, that invitation for us to meet there. It's best to actually have a meeting away from important persons, not be, not because of any reason except that we can sit on a couch and we can actually talk. We've had one that's been, while Federation made, building near Millbrook, and that was a wonderful opportunity as well. They opened it up, it was a new venture for them, but the facility was very nice and they were very gracious. So there are all sorts of places, all sorts of ways that we can meet, and that's really up to you and your time and what you would prefer. But I recommend, this is for the board, and we can add things to the list, again, not nec, this first one would be more for orientation, and you've probably had a lot of that recently with our department, I understand you've been meeting with Dr. Mackey and others, and I'm sure you have all of your cards that you need to get in the parking deck. But that's, that's really the gist of it, Mrs. Ziegler, is what the board wants to do at this point, any dates that you would recommend and all the board members would suggest, and, and how it works as far as what kind of staff we would need. We can bring in or have available virtually individuals from NASC who can help us with things like strategic planning for free, that's part of our membership, you don't have to pay. So it's all of those things, but it is different serving on a state board versus local boards. There are different things. We don't hire, obviously, teachers and so forth. It, it's a, but we do have a lot of authority that we. It, it's a, but we do have a lot of authority that we're not taking advantage of, and I think that's what we need to hopefully key in on.
Well, thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to pipe in?
Mrs. Wayne, I'd like for us to look at a tentative date. August would be late for me. April, May, June would work for me. I think with the COVID immunizations, not shots, immunizations, it should make it possible for us to meet together. And I'd be liable, I'd like to meet the two new members. I'm planning to come next month and be in person. It's very difficult to be in virtual versus being together. I think it would benefit us, and I agree with Ms. Bell, that we need to do it sooner rather than later, but we need to put it as an agenda item or date. Welcome, Ms. Bell, making some suggestions.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. Anybody else? Dr. Chestnut, Dr. Richardson? We're good? All right. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Chestnut, you're muted. Unmute yourself.
Hear me now.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Is it possible to consider some tentative dates today? Maybe two or three options. It is my intention to be in person next month, but I would love if we had an opportunity to, you know, reserve specific dates.
Okay. Ms. Bell, did you hear them?
Yes, I did. I think that's an excellent suggestion. And we do have, as you know, there, you already mentioned the administrative code. There are certain requirements that are in there that the board has already approved as far as deadlines for meeting for a retreat. And that's where we really, in order to comply with our own requirements, our own administrative code requirements, we need to have something before those dates. Or we can waive it and then have it as close to those requirements. We're supposed to have two, as you mentioned, a year. And one, and they're also helpful, the goal was to make it helpful in addressing potential legislation and to discuss what, if anything, has passed, which of course, there will be, it sounds like a lot to discuss in the second retreat in the legislature. So anyway, that's, that's really spelled out for us to a certain extent.
Yes, I'm also in favor of us getting dates outlined. My immunization should have kicked in by April, so by then I've got my first vaccination yesterday, so I should have full immunization.
Ms. Bell, why don't you, if you don't mind, maybe come up with a few dates and send them out to us, and then we can just sort of come back with a response, if that's okay with you.
Well, this is what I'm going to do as a response. If the board members could, this is Dr. Richardson has done, submit several suggestions as far as what you see, April, because of, for the same reasons, will be probably a good time for me, but let's do that. Let's just, all, all board members submit some dates and we'll see how they align.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I'll go ahead and agree with Ms. Richardson, and April sounds good to me. That's a move ahead.
Well, that's what Stephanie will have to do.
Okay.
Well, we, we can do it together. Just submit some dates that look good for you, and then we'll see how they all work.
Thank you.
Nice meeting, April.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very kindly. I think we've concluded our number two. Not bad. Number three is the resolution to approve educator preparation programs, Talladega. Dr. Meyer, we just, is there anything you need to add? Are we good to go?
No, we've reviewed the programs and determined that these meet standards for conditional group.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you mind? Do you think we can group nine, 10, 11, and 12 together and then go back and do that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Board members, please, I apologize, but if you look at agenda number, numbers nine, 10, 11, and 12, we just want to go ahead and approve those to be moved forward because of, they're just sort of self-explanatory, and then we can just sort of go ahead and focus on number four. Is that all right?
And move, move, we take your suggestion and move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Will they be here next month? Do we know?
They, they'll be here only, so nine, 10, 11, and 12 deal with the art show. Normally, we would have lunch to dine with them, but can't do it. So these two winners will be with us remotely next month.
Okay. Thank you.
And so they'll only be remote, and they'll, and then 11 is a general resolution for everybody else. And then, of course, 12 is because it's Art Education Month. So we would normally have all of those regional winners too, you know, that's really nice, but because we, it would be so difficult to have that many on the Zoom, and we couldn't bring all of them in and do any kind of social distancing in there. So, so what Mr. Meadows worked out is we would have the two of them on the webex.
Okay.
And then the others, it is different this year because they would not even let us display the art in the Capitol. Of course, nobody could have seen it anyway.
Not even in there. So sad.
So they've done some online displays. We will, as we usually do, take the winners and put them up in the hallway on the third floor, and we do some social media with that too, which is good for the students. And then we, the, the other thing we're missing, of course, is the music programs that, you know, we normally do in February and March. We have every Thursday a musical program.
That's so sad.
But we're not able to do that this year. So, so it's very pared down, but this is, this will be all we have for this year.
But we will boost it back up for next year.
We'll be back.
Because that is one of my favorite things to do. Okay, moving on, resolution of adoption of ELA courses of study. Who is doing that? Oh, Dr. Boyd, carry on.
Dr. Boyd, you're going to do the introduction, and then we have guests who are with us here to do those presentations.
Are they here in person or on Zoom?
Here in person.
In person.
Do y'all want a restroom break? He probably wanted a break.
No, 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 we're going to keep on going. And anybody who needs to do a restroom break, just get up and move, because it's going to be a long day.
As you know, if you let us go, we don't come back.
Caught.
So Dr. Daria, of course, is the superintendent of Tuscaloosa City. Started there back in 1996. Started there as an actual English teacher, then became assistant principal, then a principal, then a director of human resources, and then assistant superintendent, and now he's the superintendent. He's been a very active superintendent worker through our courses of study. We're fortunate to have him here. Introducing you, Dr. Michael Daria.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Dr. Mackey, board members, good afternoon. Thank you for having us here today. I'm here with the English Language Arts Courses Study Committee, and a couple of them are here in person and a couple are virtually. Our hope is to walk through the course of study at the concept level so that you can get, get a sense of standards and the vision and the sort of philosophism in this. And I'll, I'll say this in my opening remarks, but you will see, as you know, we have amazing educators in our schools throughout this entire state. And Dr. Mackey, Dr. Boyd, and everybody at the state put together a really talented team to do this work, and it was just a real privilege to be able to work with them. The ELA Courses Study Committee is comprised of talented and knowledgeable individuals from across our state. We are fortunate on this committee to be represented very well by the members of this committee, which is comprised of teachers, school leaders, and community and business leaders. And that was a really great mix of individuals and representations so that we could really build strong standards. The committee spends countless hours researching, deliberating, and discussing these standards with the goal of making sure we have excellent standards that prepare all students for college and career. This committee also found itself operating during the pandemic, and while we got, the intent was to get started with physical meetings, this committee did all of its work virtually. And that's not just having meetings, it's deliberations and research together and revisions, and they did it extremely well. We are immensely appreciative of the Alabama Learning Exchange, and especially Haley Ridgway for providing all the support and expertise in technology. And a special thanks to the Alabama Reading Initiative staff, who were very instrumental in facilitating grade-level discussions. This course of study is grounded in research and is based on what Alabamians identify as important for all students to succeed in a global economy and society. Our committee leaders will now walk you through the vision and the standards and the conceptual And we will start with Alyssa.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Dietz-Eichner. I am an assistant principal and former English teacher, serving in Monroe County currently, and also a committee member. As the committee met to draft this course of study, we saw the whole world shift. However, what never shifted with us and what never wavered was our commitment to serve the students of Alabama. Early on, the committee discussed the need for a change and placed our focus on the students, and the students at the forefront of education. Our vision in this, in the development of these standards has been to reach the whole child by providing a comprehensive foundation in all forms of communication, including reading, listening, writing, and speaking. By fostering both abstract and critical thinking, students will have the skills necessary to promote lifelong learning. Throughout this process, we stay dedicated to addressing the needs of all students through research-based decision-making, taking into consideration the findings of research, such as the science of reading. We ensure that these standards, beginning in kindergarten and working towards 12th grade, are vertically aligned to prevent any gaps or potential misinstructions. The committee was dedicated to the future lifelong success of our students by designing standards that enhance post-secondary preparation. Students will be ready for any academic or workforce opportunities that may be in their future. As we witness 2020 unfold from our own schools and our own classrooms, efficiency and technology became a major visionary goal of this committee. This document ensures that all students across Alabama are equipped with the skills needed to master new and ever-changing technologies and their related literacy needed to receive and express thoughts and ideas. The layout and evolution of this document ensures skills are scaffolded throughout the grades, using the Alabama Literacy Act to ensure a solid reading foundation is established to foster lifelong learning. With these standards, all children from all backgrounds and ability levels in Alabama schools will gain the necessary communication skills in reading, listening, writing, and speaking to build lifelong learning habits, ensuring the opportunity for success for our students throughout their entire lives.
Hey, so this is our conceptual framework graphic. Oh, and I'm Candace Fires. I teach at Edible Mills School in St. Clair County, and I teach seventh grade English and the class. And so I worked on this part of our committee as well as developing some standards for the middle grades. But our conceptual framework graphic really illustrates the goal of our course of study, which is to make sure that all of our students are, are achieved English eventually received.
A little louder.
Okay. And so we came up with four isolated skill sets, so reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And they're not meant to obviously be separate, they're meant to work together and be fluid and be connected. And within that, we have our communication component, which is the reception and expression. And we really spent a lot of time deciding on what we wanted to call those. We tossed around, you know, a few different words there, but we settled our reception and expression because we felt those really represented what reading and listening and writing and speaking do. And we considered all grade levels when we were looking at this image as well, because we have, you know, from kindergarten with the literacy foundations all the way up until 12th grade. And so the literacy foundations are really important. We did base our standards and align our standards with the Alabama Literacy Act, and this is really the, the foundation and base for that. So included in the early grade bands with the standards and the Alabama Literacy Act, we have the scientifically-based reading instruction, oral language development, phonological awareness, phonics instruction that includes decoding, encoding, fluency, writing vocabulary comprehension. The only thing that was not included was multisensory language, and that's because we felt that was more of a curriculum and not a standard. We also leaned heavily on the science of reading research, and we use the progressions and resources from letters. We did take into account a simple view of reading as well as Scarborough's rate. So for the reception component, the yellow band encompasses reading, which incorporates literacy foundations all the way up into the more intricate skills for interpreting and analyzing written materials. And then the listening, which involves active listening in order for students to collaborate and respond to one another. And then on the expression, the orange band, that encompasses writing and speaking. And so the writing component begins, you know, at the basic level with mechanical skills like handwriting, and then moves to composing more difficult and intricate text for various formats. And then the speaking would include verbal and nonverbal communication for a variety of audiences and purposes. And then looking again at the conceptual framework as a whole, I want to talk about the graphic in the center, which really represents the heart of our course of study and the mission. The books and the tablets represent the multiple medias that literacy is going to be achieved through our courses of study. And then the mortarboard and the state of Alabama represent the goal of English language literacy for all Alabama graduates. We took into account, I'm sorry, my name is Kim Hargett, and I am a regional literacy specialist for Region Two with the Alabama Reading Initiative, and I'm also a call to dyslexia therapist as well. So we took into account lots of research. We, I mean, I feel like we researched and researched and took, used lots of resources for our course of study. So we looked at the Alabama Reading Initiative modules. We also looked at the Alabama Dyslexia Resource Guide, you know, making sure that we were thinking about those children that were dyslexic, special needs children. We looked at Special Education Services and talked with them about how we, our alignment would affect them. We also worked, you know, there were people on our committee that were from the workforce that gave us guidance. And then we used, have, I used a lot, I worked a lot in the K-3 area, and I relied very heavily on my letters training. I went through all of it, and I'm actually a letters facilitator as well. So as you can see, my, my manual is just, you know, tabbed and it's almost worn out. This has so many good resources for scopes and sequences of reading, spelling, everything. It takes into account areas phases. It does, I could go on and on about the letters modules, how they, you know, worked to help me. Also, we took into account expert reviews, and that was instrumental in a lot of the changes that we made. So when we look, we came up with the standards, you know, a draft form, and it was nowhere near ready, you know, really. I mean, we felt like it was a draft form, and we knew it needed revisions. Then we took those expert reviews, and they gave us a lot of good feedback. It was really helpful to take those reviews and make, you know, make it better. And so because when you're doing the work, you know, there's just so much to think about. And, and so we did take into account lots of research and resources.
I am Lacey Holden, and I am a literacy specialist in Hoover, Alabama. Prior to that, I was a first grade, first and second grade teacher. So I've worked a lot with the K-3 as well alongside Kim, and we took in, like she said, we used all the research that we had out there, all the most up-to-date, best teaching strategies. We reviewed, we considered expert reviews of our current standards as well as the standards that we were drafting. We looked at the strengths and weaknesses of what we currently have in place so that we could build upon that in creating our new draft. And then along the way throughout our draft, we considered expert reviews of those things and made changes that we felt were necessary. We also considered the Florida Best Standards, and not only did we find the strengths and things we liked about those, as well as things we didn't like, but we also considered the Fordham Institute's review of those standards and what they found to be in line with the science of reading and how those things could be improved, but also things that were really very foundational and really progressed well in their own standards. And then we also, of course, considered the states, the top 10 states that performed the best on NAEP. We wanted to review their standards. We spent a long time going through these standards and charting what we liked about them, what we didn't like about them, where, what we felt would best meet the needs of our Alabama students. And then finally- And then finally, we made sure that the draft that we put out was in line with the National ELA standards.
My name is Art Culpepper. I'm an English teacher in Mobile. And I've been asked to talk to you a little bit about our organization. And you will hear me say some of the same things that you, that you've heard other people say today. Throughout our entire process, there were really kind of three themes that you'll hear us talk about over and over. And one of them was trying to make sure that we were developing standards that would legitimately meet the needs of all students in the state, regardless of their intended life paths after they get out of school. The second thing was to produce a document that was organized in such a way that it was easy for teachers to process, understand, and implement. And then the third thing is the idea that we wanted to make sure that everything was sequenced well, so that there were no gaps, and so that it moves smoothly from grade to grade and grade level to grade level. So those were sort of our underlying principles that led us through the organization. And again, we also kind of latched onto this idea, which came from some of our cognitive science research, that primarily communication consists of the reception of information and the processing of that information, and then the expression of ideas related to information. And so that, of course, tied naturally into, into listening and to reading and to speaking and writing. And so we tried very hard to integrate all those things so that it is approaching it as all integral parts of the communication process and not individual things that are taught in isolation.
So board members, our next couple of minutes, we're just going to spend a couple, going through each, going through the standards in the grade bands.
Okay, so for kindergarten through grade 3, some of our goals were that the children used those active listening skills in discussions and consideration of using conversations in small groups, whole groups, and teaching them just those skills to prepare them for later presenting orally and communicating with their peers, you know? And so it was real important to us that we had good oral language skills in there. We also wanted them to receive that explicit instruction, like the Literacy Act calls for, in those foundational skills. And so our, it's set up to where you see the literacy foundations are set up, phonological awareness, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary comprehension. We have it set up that way. And writing, which includes the encoding, the spelling part of that in the Literacy Act. And as you know, you know, a lot of those processes are reciprocal, and they need to be done. You know, even in the phonics, there is some of the writing that goes along with that for it to be taught correctly. So some, there's a few places that it looks like they're teaching something in the phonics section, but then it shows up in the writing as well. But it is because there are things that may be developmentally appropriate for reading at a certain time, but not developmentally appropriate to be for a standard for spelling. Now, we want to teach that in the reading component of the phonics, but then you get to where, as a standard itself, you really can't hold that child to that standard of mastery in that grade level because they may read it in this grade level, but then master it for spelling in the next grade level. So if you notice things like that. But we did make sure that we aligned it to the Literacy Act and to help teachers especially, what does it mean, you know, what is a standard that would go along with phonological awareness, phonemic awareness? What, how do those standards fit in those areas? We thought that would be very helpful for the teachers. And then we also made sure that the, there was literary and informational text in there so they would begin to learn that verbal reasoning. And that verbal reasoning, like in Scarborough's Road, is a higher-level skill for a child. If you've ever taught kindergarten and first grade, they're very literal. And so we want to give them all that background knowledge and everything so they can have that at some point when they develop, you know, into being able to inference and things. And some kids do develop that early on. And then we made sure that the writing was strong, even at the phoneme level of writing, where they are explicitly taught "b" is "b", you know, and it starts that explicitly in kindergarten. Then it builds upon being able to write, you know, a sound into a word, into composition. And so we made sure that it was so explicit that a teacher knew that they had to make sure they knew all the consonant and vowel phonemes for writing.
We wanted to provide for you throughout our presentation, a couple of standards followed all the way from K to 12 so that you can see the clear alignment and the progression. Especially with K-3, we utilize the progressions and research found in the letters materials that are based on the most recent findings in the science of reading and just really are the best practices for how kids learn, based on the brain research. By using these tools, we made sure the standards were developmentally appropriate for each grade level, that each grade standards built upon the skills in the previous year, and that the rigor was increased as the students progress. So as you can see here, when we start with kindergarten, the standards start with prompting and support. The teacher is giving more modeling, more guidance. Then we move in and we're doing those similar things in first grade without the prompting and support. The kids are doing those things on their own. Then as we move into grade 2, you see those skills get a little more complex and a little more detailed, and a little more is required of the student. And then same in grade 3, as we build on the evidence they're having to provide and the skill, the reading skills they're having to show definitely grow in their rigor.
When looking at our 4th and 5th grade bands, we do recognize that 4th and 5th are transitional years. They're bridging years between lower elementary and those beginning years of middle school. And during this time, students are taking the jump into abstract thought. They are still concrete learners, but they're starting to move into that abstract thought. During this time, it's very critical that student learning work towards the expansion of those foundational skills in accordance with the Alabama Literacy Act. And that promotes and ensures continuous mastery of those appropriate skills for upper-level elementary. Student reading will begin to expand during this time, and it is vital that student development, it's vital to that student development that students are intentionally reading from an array of diverse texts in order to build background knowledge and make connections during that time. As student writing, stamina improves as they, as they move into this branch. Rigor at which those works are produced also needs to increase as well. During this time, students are going to become active participants in that classroom. And that, that will be done through collaboration, discussion, and reporting with both peers and instructors. And we do want to make sure that we are utilizing technology to enhance communication during this time. They are going into a section where that's going to be needed to express and receive information, thoughts, and ideas.
I'm Ginger Wagan. I'm the curriculum coordinator, the elementary curriculum coordinator for Opelika City Schools. I've taught kindergarten, first, and third, and I've been an instructional coach in the past. As Lacey and Alyssa have talked about, really what our vision was, first with the K-3, as Lacey stated, it began with the support and the, and the child's guided by 3rd grade. They're doing a lot of the work independently. As Alyssa stated, 4th and 5th grade were a little bit different because you have all the intensity with the Literacy Act, K-3, but yet in two years, they are in middle school. So what we tried to do was with the same standard that you looked at with K-3, we tried to make sure we upped the rigor some, and yet we pushed more toward abstract and also giving the child the opportunity to cite text evidence. So really, 4th and 5th grade, we're just, we've connected that primary to the middle school.
Hello, my name is Jane Kepke, and I am a teacher here in Madison City, way up there. And I've been a grade English teacher for 12 years now at this middle level, which I think is one of the most important levels because we are the bridge between an elementary and high school. So our goals are just kind of expanding off of what 4th and 5th did because they're a bridge as well. We want to make sure that students were able to reinforce and really refine the skills and concepts that they pretty much started in the earlier grades and especially by 5th grade. And that refinement is key in middle school and really trying to learn how to fine-tune things. In middle school with these, with adolescence and puberty, collaboration is key in making sure that we get these social skills for working together really practiced and hammered out. And we wanted to make sure, especially in these times, that they work collaboratively in traditional environments as well as digital environments as we are now. Another very important thing that we thought about in the middle-level grades is making sure that we read across diverse texts and media. The book is almost, a traditional novel is almost a dinosaur at this point. They're getting all their information from digital sources, so we're making sure to include those digital sources as much as we can. And then we want to make sure that they critically analyze and evaluate expressive and receptive forms of communication, not just what they output, but also what they take in. And we wanted them to become self-directed learners in expanding their social and academic horizons. Again, middle school level, we want to make sure that social aspect is really, really intact. And like I said, we're that bridge between elementary and high school. So here we've got three standards and how they span across 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, and how they're kind of like all the same core. However, we stepped up the rigor in every single one of those standards. So essentially, we're still, we're looking at authors' choices of like point of view, figurative language, connotative and denotative meanings. Except in 6th grade, it's more like identification and being able to find it. Then in 7th grade, they're more evaluating it, like what it does for the text, what it might mean for the text, what it might mean for the author. And then in 8th grade, we're, we're deepening that analysis and making it include other things, such as the graphics that were included, or looking at it as a whole study rather than just an independent passage.
At the high school level, we're very concerned about students
Being lifetime learners.
Being lifetime learners.
Even after that graduation.
Even after that graduation from school.
And we want to make sure that they have the
And we want to make sure that they have the skills
Workplaces, whether it's college, university.
Well, as a college, a university.
The kind of training that I want to do. And so we very much thought about reading in terms of practicality and employment and
Practicality and employment and technicality.
But we also very much thought about
We also very much thought about
The cultural significance of literature and trying to get students so that they are aware of the richness that's out there in different literatures and different cultures of the world so that they can just improve their quality of life. And all of this is directed to try to make them lifelong learners, to help them to become critical thinkers, and to help them be successful in whatever it is they want to do with their lives. We also, like our counterparts in middle school grades, really tried to emphasize different media, different ways that information is presented, and what that means as a reader and what that means as a writer for, again, for the reception and for the expression of those ideas in a way that goes with the media. And that's a very 21st century idea, and it's something that we very much wanted to bring in into this course of study. If you look at these standards going across 9th, 10th, and 11th, 12th grade, you will see that they're very, very similar. And you will also see that they're pretty high-level abstract kind of thinking. And if I could give a plug to all the other people in the committee who worked in the lower grades, they did a fantastic job of sequencing and developing skills and developing critical thinking and reading skills so that at the high school level, we felt comfortable making these kinds of standards. You will see that they're very similar. They're primarily distinguished in what geographic region and our time period that they focus on, which is sort of consistent with what is in the current course of study, although it has changed somewhat. In the current course of study, 9th grade is world literature. 10th is half of American literature. 11th grade is the second half of American literature. And 12th grade is British literature. 9th and 12th have essentially stayed the same, but we have added a second year of emphasis on world literature in the 10th grade and combined all of the American literature into the 11th grade. We have done that largely to try to give teachers more latitude. And while I want to call attention to the fact that this is not required exclusively to that time period or that, that part of literature, it's just, that is the part that we are going to emphasize in that particular grade so that students do get this vast array of different perspectives and different presentations of ideas. Also, I've been asked to mention that there is a B, or an A rather, a substandard in each of these that will require the study of a Shakespeare play in each of the four high school grades.
So board members, as we, as we walked through those standards in the previous slides, they, they kind of give you this, this image, if you will, of this progression of the standards from kindergarten all the way, all the way through 12th grade. And as Art just mentioned, the committee worked really well together so that we have this seamless continuum all the way from kindergarten through 12th grade, with the standards progressing across the grade levels. So board members, that's our outcome, is to provide you with this draft set of standards that must be the foundation for our students' abilities to thrive inside and outside of Alabama. These standards are clear, relatable to the lives of our students, and designed to be rigorous and are based on research. And the committee that you all assembled, as you can see, that's a group of content specialists, committed teachers and business leaders. And we're really proud to provide these set of draft standards to you all for your review. Thank you, Dr. Boyd and Dr. Mackey.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere, I'm sure there's going to be some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. McCarty, do you have questions?
Sure. He would feel disappointed if I didn't.
All right, then, you, hold on a minute, let me ask the Yes. Are any of my other board members have any questions?
Are any of my other board members have any?
Yes, I'd just like to make a comment.
Hold on just a minute, Dr. Richardson, let's see.
We're having a feedback issue.
Somebody's got the muted, it's, we're hearing it through somebody else's computer. Give him a minute.
Yeah, he's muting everybody. Let me wait for the thumbs, all right, thumbs up. Okay, go ahead, Dr. Richardson.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank Dr. Daria and his committee for working on this course of study.
Thank you.
I'm going to call back in on my phone, so let me make my comment later. Am I still?
You're fine now.
Okay, well, first of all, in line with the work you all have done, I want to thank you for having the vertical alignment because it's so important for teachers to see the continuity from one grade level to another. And as I saw how 1st grade connected to 2nd, and 2nd to 3rd, and then on through the middle grades and high schools, I know that's something that our teachers would appreciate. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you.
I just had a comment.
Did you take a little way around?
Wait, but there's Dr. Richardson. I mean, Dr. Reynolds, was that you speaking?
I was trying to, I'm sorry, it's part of being virtual.
What did you say?
The only, I, I would compliment the committees, particularly on the point of the continuity. But I've had, the main, the one comment that I've had, which is unusual coming to me, was they made reference to the bald-headed white man reference, and I had to get him to explain it. And they were talking about the four plays of Shakespeare at a high school level and the need for more diversity in our language arts presentations throughout the curriculum. And I'd like for the committee members, and I appreciate my colleagues that's from Liberty Middle School, because I live very near there, commenting on that, the middle school and the high school level. But comment on the concept of diversity in language arts versus having four plays of Shakespeare in the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you want to address that?
We, thank you, sir. Art, do you want to address the part about the Shakespeare play?
Sure, I'll be happy to talk about that. And these are actually both things that we discussed a great deal in committee. And there was a great deal of research, a great deal of thinking, a great deal of shared information. And that's one of the reasons that we've suggested the change in the focus of literatures for the four grades. And allowing ninth and 10th grade to focus on world literature, which gives the teachers a richer, a larger pool to choose from to try to incorporate different voices and try to incorporate some of these voices that have been neglected. To use a paraphrase of your phrase, to try to get away from simply dealing with dead white men and trying to get voices of different people and different cultures and different perspectives. And so we thought very, very hard about that. And that's one of the goals of changing the literary alignments in each of the grades. As far as Shakespeare is concerned, this was a topic of great debate. And as I'm sure many people in the room are aware, if not everyone, Shakespeare occupied as a unique place. He is unlike any other writer who has ever lived. And as a cultural icon and as a touchstone for cultural references and the ability to understand references and allusions that people make in the real world. Shakespeare is almost as quoted and almost as misquoted as the Bible. And so we thought that it was very important to emphasize his unique place in the world. And we had originally suggested maintaining a requirement for a Shakespeare play in each grade. And then at one point, the committee decided to make that a suggestion rather than a requirement. And then, most recently, the decision was made again to put it back in as a substandard because there was some concern from some committee members that if it were not required, it would not be done.
Okay, thank you.
And just a clarification was that it's only a substandard in the.
Did you hear that, Dr. Reynolds? Okay, and I'm so sorry, I did not catch your name.
Kim Hargit.
Kim Hargit, okay. Maybe you might need to explain in maybe greater depth about how these standards are going to support students with dyslexia and of course, going along with that language-based, you know, student disability. I mean, learning disabilities, SLD kids.
Yes, okay, so for instance, there's some standards that talk about differentiating the sounds of the phonemes in the lower grades. I felt, we felt strongly that we wanted to make sure that it was so explicit and that it reached our lowest readers, you know. And by doing that, you're reaching all children, you know. And when they're, those, the kids that have those speech and language issues, that's, you know, one of the red flags for dyslexia, they have the speech issues. And so one of the standards is very specific about differentiating cognate sounds, sounds that are, that children mix up like the, and the same. They're made the same in the mouth, but one's voice, one's unvoiced. And we've referenced that in there. And they have to differentiate vowel sounds, differentiate certain consonant sounds. And so by doing that, we feel like it will not only help all children, but especially those with language-based reading disorders.
Okay, I have one more question, then I'll boot it over to you. But my question is, in anything, you know, communication, be it written, oral, whatever, if the understanding of this organization is not fully understood by those who are reading it, meaning the administrators, the teachers, the parents who are now, the grandparents are now becoming administrators, how is it going to be that they can understand this concept that you just presented to us? What, you know, they don't understand that education ease that we know, we speak in acronyms and all that. So are they going to be able to pick this up from the way it's presented? And like, how are you going to roll this out so that those that are in the field and are going to be impacted by this will have a clear and concise understanding? What is that? Did I make myself?
Yes, ma'am, yes. So these are the standards and you're hitting it exactly right. There's a whole lot of work that has to be done now that we will have standards. I am going to toss it to Dr. Davis because there's a good bit, I believe, the state does anytime we roll these standards out and that they do, but then that we have to do at the local school level as well.
Yes, sorry, I'm just coming here because of the, so y'all can hear. That's our job, to work with them to do that. Again, Course of Study PD, we've been meeting and planning the framework regardless of the standards because we know that if they do pass, then we have to have that ready. So we'll do math year two, math year one. And because we know we're in year two of the new math course of study with full implementation next year and then ELA year one, and it's grade band and it's administrative. And so we've been working for several months, back even in December, meeting to make sure that we have that aligned. And the biggest piece that you hit on, Ms. Ziegler, is the, those family resources and how important those are because as I've said, I now think that, I know my child was probably not taught phonics now that I understand what it is, but he's a fifth grader now. So yes, that's part of what we do, but we do it with them and with our staff because that's, as you mentioned with ARI, you know, we have all of these field staff and I know that I'm as Hargit as one as well, fabulous. So we, that's what we will utilize them for is to make those tools and resources. And I do have this document and you are the expert for sure, but the Dyslexia Advisory Council, as one of the expert review groups, was gracious enough to, they aligned those K through three standards and showed how they align to all of those Science of Reading and the Scarborough's Rope. It's a beautiful alignment. And it, I may be wrong, but when the Dyslexia Advisory Council did this, to me, it tells us that it's doing exactly what you asked. They were that expert review group. So I printed these in case because that was one of the documents, so I'll leave them free if you want them. But yes, that's the next task ahead.
Well, and to continue the conversation with the Literacy Act and the huge focus on the science of reading, it needs to be without a doubt aligned with the science of reading, not that it's in conflict with it or that it's somewhat, it's got to be, you know.
It is. It is definitely aligned with the science of reading. And we specifically use the language of the science of reading and the language in the letters, you know, manuals. They're all going through this letters training and we used the language. And if the teachers, you know, haven't been through the training or they will need PD on some of it possibly, you know. I mean, because they're, we do use the terms phoneme, graphing, that we use science of reading terminology. And so there, you know.
Right. There's no sense of being trained in professional development, you know, utilizing this verbiage and then all of a sudden they're thrown something else and that's just confusing. And then guess who factors, the kids.
So if you, if you looked at any of the science of reading research, it will fully align.
I'm on the literacy task force.
I know those. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Ms. Ziegler, Wayne Reynolds again.
Yes, sir.
I would like to return back to the concept I raised about diversity. And I'm not adverse to extolling the value or the quote of William Shakespeare and comparing him to the Bible. I'm not sure I support that, but that doesn't really matter. But requiring a study of a play of Shakespeare, and I don't understand what subrequirements are, but diversity has risen its head in question to me about this curriculum. Not about the early education, it's primarily in the secondary and the high school level. I'd like some further explanation about why diversity in the education level, English language arts in the secondary is not more inclusive. And I'm not satisfied with the answer of Shakespeare being quoted only second to the Bible.
Mr. Reynolds, Art led that group and certainly can chime in on this, but I think to what Dr. Davis was talking about earlier, our job is to now take these standards and there's still a lot of work we've got to do at the state level and then certainly at the local level as we build a curriculum off these standards. And that's where a lot of those decisions that I think you're asking the question about are made. And I mean, we're in a system that we're asking that very same question of our curriculum now. How can we make sure our curriculum is diverse and that it is inclusive? So those are local decisions that we are certainly working at a local school level. And these standards, we see them as serving as the basis for those future decisions.
And I think that was something that all of the committee had a hard time with in the beginning is realizing we're writing standards, not curriculum. And so when you write standards, then you choose your curriculum and you choose how you implement those standards. And so it, you know, we had to get as explicit and detailed and rigorous as we could without writing a curriculum. And so curriculum is at the school level to choose that.
Ms. Bell.
How is that reflected in?
Uh, Ms. Bell.
How is that reflected in a course of study?
Okay, go ahead, Dr. Reynolds. Okay, go ahead, Dr. Reynolds.
We're talking about a course of study. Talking about a course of study, not the framework.
We have to give him a moment to mute. We have to give him a moment to mute. I have no idea. Ms. Bell, did you have a question or a comment?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I, am I echoing like Dr. Reynolds was echoing or can you hear it clearly?
Is it okay?
We can hear you.
I have several questions and flash comments. It was mentioned that research was used and yes, I saw the list of the states and I did see a couple of other items that, and a mention of course Nate. But what research was used and how does that support the framework? I also am aware that there were concerns expressed from, and it's already been mentioned, from our DAC, our Dyslexia Advisory Council and the grade level committee. And there were, there were concerns and I agreed with what was expressed and what I have, what they've shared with me. I'd like to see how those were addressed specifically and what amendments have been made, perhaps since that time. I assume that the committee actually received those and used some to make some revisions. And as far as alignment, that was just mentioned just a few minutes, maybe seconds ago, as far as the alignment with the Dyslexia Advisory Committee recommendations. And I'd like to know how that was addressed specifically and what perhaps Dr. Davis was referring to. I'd also like to know, in the past, we've had recommended lists of texts, of books and so forth. I'd like to have some examples of what they're referring to in terms of, and of course, the upper grades in particular, the works, and I know that they're described as originating outside the US and the British Isles. As an English major, I'm aware of a lot of different pieces of literature that we had to read even in college, of course. And I enjoy reading, I love to read. But I'd like to know more specifically what you're referring to and examples and sort of connect with what Dr. Reynolds was requesting as far as examples and how they fit in. I've looked at the course of study and of course, now the actual presentation. But that would be very helpful. And there will be a number of people looking at this course of study and I'll accept those revisions and anyone perhaps listening and watching the meeting, I welcome those as well. But I do appreciate your work on this. Questions do not mean that I don't appreciate it. I do very much. And I know it's a lot of time that you probably don't have on top of work that is expected under unusual circumstances. But anyway, those are my questions and my requests at this point.
Okay, can you do that for her, get her those?
Yes.
Books.
And here they are. Here they are. And I'm just sending on to Ms. Nora. Here are all three review, all three expert, four expert reviewers. And I'm shooting them to her right now with the other document.
When you said her, you mean to all the board members?
And she'll forward. Yes, ma'am. Both the one from the Dyslexia Advisory Committee and all of the others. And they are sorted. And they, they're also, you have the link on there that shows you can go in and see, but they're all addressed, but we group them by elementary and secondary. But it shows you where they're either addressed or what the committee said. As of, the dang on the bottom is the chief. I'm sorry, so.
Yes, and I would like to have a list of the text, the recommended text that has been provided in the past. And usually it was not all inclusive, but it included a lot of the ones that were recommended.
Can that be done?
No.
The standard, with the standards, we do not have a list of books or text or novels. That, after the standards are approved, that's the work that will follow from state guidance and then at the local.
Did you hear that, Ms. Bell?
I did, I did. But I would like the research that was used to back up a lot of what is being.
The way I understand it is that Ms. Nora has it or is getting it and she'll be forwarding it to all the virtual board members.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you have more questions?
Yes, of course. Okay, one question I have. And I appreciate that the speech and the listening is emphasized. But one question, I've seen many of our colleges and universities will send back high school reports. And the high school reports then show how their graduating students performed their first year in college and where they were strong, where they were weak by the classes that they took. And to my surprise, I've seen several high school reports and these all happen to come from Auburn, but oral language, speech, oral communication was the weakest class. They did well in chemistry, well in biology, well in math, but that oral communication was not good, you know. So is there in your course of study a speech class? Since we emphasize it so much, do we have a class for it?
The standards themselves don't dictate the class, a speech class per se. But what they do, as when in conceptual framework, it takes that, that part, embeds it throughout each of the grades from K through 12. But it doesn't necessarily, the standards themselves don't necessitate a class be formed, but it is embedded in ELA.
And K three actually has, one of the literacy foundations is an oral language literacy foundation. So we do have oral language skills specific to speaking.
So I guess if a high school wanted to offer it, they could offer dual enrollment. Or would they create their own?
Right.
Okay.
And we, we used the Letters Early Childhood modules also for that oral language component to make sure that they were, there's assessments that you can do that say they need to be able to do these certain things to be successful later. And so we went through that, developed by Carol Tolman and Louisa Moats. So, you know, I feel that they're strong.
Well, thank you. I just, you know, it had so much emphasis on it. I was just curious if that was something that was offered.
In the, in the standards, like we have special, you know, considerations for like just a presentation, how you would, you know, speak for that, but then just like an informal conversation or discussion with a group. So those are kind of woven into, it's not just like one thing you have to check off. It's throughout all of the standards, like presenting for different formats.
And that was one reason for the expression part of it too, to make sure that teachers understood it looked this way for listening, this way for speaking. And things overlap somewhat, but we want them to be able to speak this and present this orderly.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that. And then, this is, this is a different question than what Ms. Bell asked, but she made me think of it with asking about, sometimes we would have in the past recommended books for each grade. Do we, is there an emphasis?
Do we, is there an emphasis on, or is there any sort of, um, notice of this between nonfiction and fiction? And do we stress both types?
Yes.
Of reading?
Yes, most definitely.
Okay, thank you. And so where am I on my list? Okay. Um, again, I got several questions about the conceptual framework and just again, wanting more research. Where did, you know, where did this come from? And some concerns that perhaps recept, that the two, um, reception and expression, that they're more associated with oral language as opposed to phonics, reading comprehension, grammar and writing. And so I think there was some concern that this could be confusing, um, the way it is. And just wanting to know what the research is, what's the background, how do we come, you know, what did, what prompted you to say that this is, this is a, a good design to reflect what we're trying to do?
Art could probably speak to that some. I can speak to thinking about, even thinking about our EL learners and the WEDA standards and thinking about how they have those reading, writing, listening, speaking, and they think about it in that way. This is an expressive type of communication, this is, um, receptively, they can do, they talk a lot and we're working with EL students about how, um, they can understand and be a level this for understanding the English, but to express that, they can't do that. And so when we think about all of our learners, you have to really think that way, receptively and expressively, because, you know, when you, you can understand at a much higher level than we, even the words that you use, you know, if I read these words or read this sentence, I understand it, but that's not in my everyday vocabulary that I'm gonna use. And so I think that's important.
Well, and then this may be more a question for you, Dr. Davis.
My pleasure.
But, but like listening is, is a key standard. Well, um, we treasure what we measure, right? And so how do we put listening on the A-CAP? How do we test it? Are we gonna, will the teacher stand up front and part of the A-CAP will be, she will read something and they will have to write it word for word? I mean, I'm just, I know I'm looking forward, this is beyond your scope, I understand that. But I'm trying to also think, I don't want to get to a hurdle and have you've written standards, we pass them, and then we don't have a way to assess whether the student has mastered that.
Just so that, I just don't know.
Please.
Sorry. I'm taking notes too.
While you're coming up, I will say that schools that have drama problems, their children do much better in speech.
Yes.
That makes sense. Makes sense.
Agree totally.
And so the, the question about the assessment part, and I think that's the, um, the beauty of having a, you know, a vendor with the, like DRC, because they have done these, you know, these type of assessments across the, you know, with other states and, uh, we spend a lot of time on the phone with them, um, working through those kinds of things. And so they have that expertise to be able to look at the standards and look at, um, how to develop when we spent two hours the other day with them on even looking at how to develop passages for, to use, um, if we need them for something or another and looking at other states. So I think that is the beauty of us, not by ourselves trying to do it, but with that vendor, um, who is, you know, writing all of our assessments. So, and with the research that's there, primarily the NAP is that foundation and that's what the beauty of both math and ELA also lends itself to, is that there are so many things already out there. Um, and now, I don't know percentages, like with the blueprint, we would look at and see even currently what they would be assessed now, 'cause I would think currently we have some of those listening thing, um, listening, um, skills and standards, so.
Well, and I know that's to come, but I just, I'd rather address it now and at least plant a seed than have us be maybe surprised in the future. Um, but thank you.
And I think, uh, Ms. West has a question. Were you finished?
Well, I've got one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were, like your hand said.
Sorry. But it's just, it's one more and it's to build on, um, again, a request for research. And I'm gonna get the name wrong. It's the, it's the Alabama Literacy Action Plan for K-12. How does it correlate with that? The work that you did, is it highly correlated, um, your recommendations with what was in that action plan? And, and it's fine if you want to, if it's too complicated of an answer and you would just rather send it to all of us?
Yes.
And show the correlation, I'm fine with that.
I, I was in on some of that and I need to look back through some of it, but I, we did read that and go through it. And I feel like in some ways it might be, there may be some wording that's different on that. And the only reason I say that is because the wording on the standards, we tried to follow exactly science of reading wording. And for the Action Plan for Literacy, um, you know, that is a document that maybe parents are, are reading too and they're written for different, a little bit different purposes.
And that's not, like I said, if you would, if you don't mind sending to all of us?
Okay.
That, that would be fabulous.
All right. Ms. Zico Wayne Reynolds?
Yes, sir.
While we're prevailing on Dr. Davis to prepare something, I'd like for you to review the, uh, requirements for, or the intent of diversity in our language arts curriculum, one, and two, to focus on, uh, the, the expressive position portion of the curriculum for nine through 12. I know that we're not gonna, we're, we're talking about people who have drama programs or people who actually require speech, but that's not part of this curriculum. And I'd like for you, Dr. Davis, or members of the committee, to respond to those two cons, concerns, diversity and expression, expression in the nine through 12 curriculum.
Okay. Dr. Davis, are you going to send that to him or, or?
Yes, and I may have to follow up with the specific, but yes, nine through 12 diversity expression.
And all, yeah, and all board members, what Dr., uh, Reynolds was requesting, Dr. Davis will send to all of us. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mine will be very simple. Um, on pay, on your page that is grades nine through 12, standard vertical alignment example, I believe you stated that in the 11th grade, you would be moving to all American literature and in the past that has been split, I believe, into two grade levels, is that correct? And you, you gave a short explanation and I, I couldn't write fast enough, but I tend to think very concretely about our local school districts and whenever new standards are adopted and we have to shift classes or, or move courses around, it often can pose difficulty, particularly for our large schools that are in block schedules and all those sorts of things. But I want to go back to why this was. I don't think he is.
No, I don't think so.
And Art might have done that.
I'm so sorry.
We'll check on that now. There's a, there's severe storms coming into town. We're in the basement, so we're safe, but, uh, that's probably knocked out. I've heard the AC went off too, so probably the whole building, like a storm.
Well, hopefully the thing, I'm gonna, in the parking deck, like I'm, it's so good.
Oh, yeah. Cause they're not, we're gonna out pushing up while you're driving.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
At least we got light, at least.
Yeah.
Should we call the, yeah, I mean, it was.
Well, I don't have phone service down here.
Extensively, and you explained it to us.
Oh, wait, we're back. Good. All right. Okay. We might have lost Ms. Bell.
Art there?
For those of you. Who is that, Art?
I'm here.
Oh, good, thank you.
Yes, we need you.
I'll, I'll try my best to, to simultaneously, um, answer that question and maybe shed a little bit more light on, um, what Dr. Reynolds asked earlier. Um, the way the current course of study is, uh, of, the study of American literature was split into two parts, primarily to correspond to the division in social studies of U.S. history. So that the two aligned. Um, one of the problems that that creates or one of the issues that that created for teachers and for students is that the early part of American literature, uh, is difficult. It's, a lot of that material are very difficult texts, has very difficult vocabulary. And with 10th grade students, you're still dealing with students who are, who are fairly young and, uh, still don't have some of the vocabulary and some of the historical and contextual knowledge they need to really understand that literature. So one of the goals we had was to move that to 11th grade so that our students have a little bit more of those skills in place. And also so that the teacher has a little more latitude to, to choose particular works to read. Um, and of course, if you do that, then you create a, a change necessarily in 10th grade if you have moved what was in 10th grade into 11. And so our idea there, and this does go back to some of what, uh, Dr. Reynolds is concerned about, we saw an opportunity there to, in ninth grade and 10th grade, to emphasize world literature and in that way to bring in diversity, to bring people who are not necessarily that included in the curriculum today. And to try to bring sources from, say, from Latin America, try to bring sources from Asia, try to bring sources from Africa, try to bring materials from different cultures and different times around the world. Again, giving teachers more latitude to pick works that are developmentally appropriate and contextually appropriate for their particular students and at the same time, um, a, a, allowing for greater diversity. Um, and I don't feel like I, I satisfactorily answered, uh, Dr. Reynolds at all about Shakespeare and I may have, um, not said that very well. I don't want to belabor the point and it may just be that this is a point on which he, he and I do not agree. Um, but what I'm trying to put forward, what I, what I meant to say is that it was the position of the committee that Shakespeare occupies a unique place, both linguistically and culturally. And a lot of members of the committee, myself included, felt that, and you're not talking about a tremendous amount of time, you're talking about a week or two, um, in each grade level to spend some time with Shakespeare. We thought the cultural and literary contributions of Shakespeare warrant that.
Okay, thank you very kindly. We appreciate that. Okay. Thank you. We really want to say thank you for all of the hard work and dedication y'all put into it. I know saying a thank you usually isn't enough, but we really do mean it from the bottom of our hearts. And that's for all of your committee members, so if you would be so kind to share that with everybody who worked on the committee, we would be so very grateful to you.
Give them a round of applause.
Safe travels.
Yeah. I would not be walking up right now. Okay. All right, I'm assuming it's.
All right, Dr. Boyd, so Dr., um.
Ms. West.
We've got three, four, we have four CTE courses of study now, and so Dr. Boyd will introduce Super Junior West. Let me make sure they get out of the building safely and what they need, and then we'll be, um.
Doctor backing?
Okay. You got, yeah, we just, we may need to drive them somewhere. I'll let, I'll, I'll let you do that.
Dr. Boyd, are you ready?
We're getting Ms. West and we can start it.
Okay.
Ms. West, that is.
The other West.
The other West. AASB with a car. We will find him.
Well, probably by the time we quit talking, he'll bypass. I don't know, there's a lot of work. Well, better be heading.
This girl's going.
Not, not south of mine or something. I'll go there. I'm gonna go. I'm gonna go. That's tomorrow morning. Oh, boy, do we. That's right. I can tell she's making a face. I could tell. It's time for you to get up, you know, the bathroom.
I guess, I guess by 5:30 for oysters is all.
You're, yeah, you wouldn't want to walk out in it right now, but.
No.
Would y'all like some coffee?
Is it made?
Some tea? There's coffee, fresh coffee right there.
Yeah, I think I'll take some coffee.
And there's some, uh, hot water for tea too, if anybody's.
I'm gonna go for the coffee.
Prefer that.
I'm so sorry. It's disgusting. I'm so sorry, you guys, I swear to you, I'm sorry about that.
I thought I was late.
Well, I have another cookie. They were a little worried about doing Subway, 'cause we've never done Subway before, but I think they were pretty good.
I just took off the tops, like bread, you know, 'cause I try not to. But it was good. It's good to have change now.
Well, maybe we will be able to go back to something more. Or we can go back to having a hot meal delivered. I think that's part of, I know that, you know, we're talking about the retreat, but just that getting to sit in your own room and have lunch around the table again would be helpful.
Sounds like a luxury.
It does.
So.
Oh, no.
And we could do that now, just for the four of y'all that are coming, but, but it takes, you know, by the time you get up there, you really had to take an hour break and I'm afraid that.
And did you hear Dr. Chestnut said she was coming, Wednesday of coming in?
Next month, yeah.
That's our assignment, moving forward. Okay, is Dr. West here?
She is, yes.
There you go.
We're just missing, missing the crate now. Oh, no, she's right here behind me, so.
Okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Dr. Um.
You stand if you want to. I like to stand a while.
Okay. All right.
We have our team.
We have our team, so we're going to get started.
Let's go. Let's go.
So let me introduce our superintendent, Mrs. Ann West, is from Marion County, which is coincidentally where our new board member, Ms. McCray, is from. So we have. That's right. That's right. So she's going to go ahead and present her team, and they'll present information regarding Career Tech. Well, I want to say that Ms. West has been a really, really big supporter of this whole process. We appreciate her working with the Course of Study Committee. She has 34 years of experience in education. And in Marion County, they're able to change student lives one day at a time. So we truly appreciate her serving on this committee and the team.
And I'm very happy to. And let me get my. I'm going to sign my part.
Oh, yeah?
Yes. State Board Member, Dr. Mackey. It's been a little over a year since Dr. Mackey called and asked me to be the Superintendent Representative on the Career Tech Course of Study Revision Committee. My career in education began as a family and consumer science teacher. And then I was the Career Tech Director in Marion County Schools for some of my years at the central office. I was honored to ask to be a part of this group because I love career and technical education. On January 27, 2020, Kathy Jones sent an email to all of the committee members informing us of the dates that we would meet, information about travel, parking, dressing for the climate, and going persons, and other general information that we would need as we traveled to Montgomery for our monthly meetings. We all put the dates in our calendars, having no idea that our world was about to be turned upside down. Our first meeting was on February 11, which ironically was exactly one year ago today. I really didn't even realize that till this morning. And as you can see on the map, now I'm not. Okay, here's the map right there. As you can see on the map, all areas of the state are represented on this committee. We all met and we took, and received our charge. We took an oath to uphold the terms of our work. We would never have imagined that this would be our only face-to-face meeting until we came back together in part today. The next meetings were scheduled for March 17 and 18, and then by the 13th came and our world was shut down. But you know, if you had to pick a bunch of, a committee to work through the challenges that this pandemic has brought us, what better group to navigate this situation than a bunch of career tech educators? The Work-Based Learning Section may have been revised, they revised the curriculum, but the entire committee was certainly putting work-based learning into practice as we moved into virtual formats. We want to thank Haley Ridgeway and the Alabama Learning Exchange for their assistance. Ms. Ridgeway is certainly to be commended for her guidance in moving our committee to virtual formats. All of the work of this committee had to take place through Google and having meetings on Google Meet. We've all learned a lot. The business education teachers are very tech savvy, and they were helpful in moving us into our virtual world. Members of this committee pulled together data from multiple sources. A new law, federal law, Perkins Five, has gone into effect since the last Career Tech Course of Study revisions. And so they had to ensure that the new course of study met the law of Perkins Five. They also looked at Governor Ivey's Success Plus Plan, workforce data, the Alabama Career Pathways Model, Alabama Committee on Credentialing and Career Pathways, other state standards, and other sources, as will be referenced in this presentation. Career and technical education is more vital to our economy and our world than ever before. As manufacturing becomes ever increasingly high-tech, it is a reflection of the direction that our society is moving in. Our students must be prepared to face a job market that requires technical skills. There is no other branch of education where a student can graduate from high school with a credential that will enable them to go straight into the workforce or into further training in that field. Board members, I encourage you to continue to emphasize career tech education. I lived through the days of the four-by-four when it almost killed career tech education. We must not ever allow that to happen again. Our students deserve the opportunities that career tech programs offer them. Not only the actual coursework, but the importance that career tech places on student organizations that provide students opportunities to grow their leadership skills. In the spring of 1979, I was a senior at Hamilton High School, and my business office education teacher asked me to compete in job interviews in the FBLA competition. So I won the district competition and I came to Montgomery for the state competition, which I did not win. But just the experience of that has certainly definitely shaped my future. I learned how to interview, and that was a crucial skill for a young 22-year-old when I started interviewing for jobs. And I believe that it has led to the trajectory that ended up with me being the Superintendent of Marion County Schools through all the years of using those skills. You know, history is history, a noun is a noun, and a verb is a verb. And we are still looking for what X equals, and I probably always will be. But career and technical education is a living and continually changing part of the education of our students as we prepare them to become a part of the workforce. Our world is constantly evolving, and as you are about to see, career and technical education is changing to meet the demands of the world of work. Virginia Thomas Shelby County Schools will present courses and career tech organizations, student organizations for the Business Middle School Course of Study. And I bet I am a little behind as we look at the committee. Okay. Okay. Keep going?
Yep.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Virginia Thomas. I teach business education at Oak Mountain Middle in Shelby County and truly believe high school and overall career success begins in middle school. Our students, these are the years when our students are trying to figure out who they are. Employees entering the workforce are desperately lacking in soft skill application with basic communication skills at the top of the list. This year, our students are missing their normal social interaction, which makes these basic skills all the more essential. What better time than to begin in middle school when students are still eager to learn and teachers can most successfully provide a solid foundation? With focus on the prepared courses listed on the slide, our committee is certain our students will be able to bridge the gap to their own success, the knowledge to overcome failure, and ability to adjust that plan as needed. 10 courses were written specifically for middle school and are available to all students in grades 6 through 8 for BMA Finance and Marketing. Schools may choose between a six- or eight, six- or nine-week rotation, semester, or four-year duration to meet the needs of their students and programs. They may choose, all standards must be introduced regardless of the chosen duration. My why, I have a huge passion for career and technical education with focus on programs. Programs are so much more than standards and courses. Programs take the proposed courses to the next level through real-life application and self-exploration. My students are my why. They are funny, smart, encouraging, enthusiastic, and they are the reason I have become the leader I am today. How do we encourage our students to develop leadership and workplace skills and take accountability of their own learning? By bringing business and middle school together through CTSOs. Moving on to my next slide, career technical student organizations are co-curricular and provide opportunities both in and outside of the classroom. Teachers may choose to advise their students in either DECA for FBLA for BMA Finance and Marketing. DECA offers middle school options where members participate in national recognition programs and in competitive events that are designed for first-year members. FBLA offers a middle-level chapter option that includes a middle-level national recognition and competitive event component that is separate from the high school competitive events. Alabama DECA and Alabama FBLA have been widely successful in their support of their national service partners, the Musqueo or District Association and March of Dimes, respectively. A strong middle school CTSO provides a framework for students to be prepared for high school and gain success after graduation. If we have learned anything this year, it is simplify, get back to the basics. You know my why, the proposed courses are the how in conjunction with CTSOs. How do we prepare our students' career and technical education programs? The sooner the better. I will now turn it over to Don Bone, Anne Monique Lawrence, so she's virtual, and they will talk about high school business management administration.
Thank you, Virginia. Hey, good afternoon. My name is Don Bone. I'm the Career Tech Resource Specialist for Shelby County Schools. Prior to that, I was a business education classroom teacher for 18 years before transitioning into my current position five years ago. Now, I currently help all of our career and technical education teachers in our county with resources, instruction, or whatever those random needs arise. As you know, things change every day. And my partner is Monique Lawrence. She's virtually, so I'll let her introduce herself.
Hello, I am Monique Lawrence. I am a high school teacher at Jasper High School. I've been teaching business and marketing education for about 23 years now. And I even taught travel and tourism in the beautiful Savannah, Georgia, where I grew up and I began my education career. Okay, next slide. This graphic represents our conceptual framework for the business management and administration cluster. The gear encompasses each of the three pathways in the cluster: administrative services, business information technology, and management. The inner ring of the gear reflects the progression of middle school students toward career exploration and guides high school students towards career preparation. The innermost ring represents our guiding concepts, which are innovate, collaborate, strategize, and lead. These concepts include aspects of overseeing business operations, mostly from the viewpoint of leadership. Next slide. Throughout this process, we considered what businesses would look for in our students. Our students also want to know what 2019, 2020 most in-demand occupations for our cluster from the research conducted by the ACP and the Alabama Workforce Council. Each region has selected their top jobs. With this information, we knew we needed to focus on critical thinking, problem-solving, and analytical skills. Next slide.
I like that in numbers, so I created this graphic to give you a snapshot of numbers across our state. I know I'm biased, but business and marketing teachers probably have the biggest impact on the most of our students. We currently offer 17 different BMA courses. In the 2019, 2020 school year, we taught over 67,000 students, and those courses were taught over 1,100 BMA teachers. By taking these classes, over 100,000 students have earned a credential in Microsoft Office since 2013. As Virginia mentioned, FBLA and DECA is a career tech student organization for business management and administration. This co-curricular CTSO provides students with opportunities for networking and professional growth. We normally have over 2,200 students compete in FBLA and DECA state competitions yearly, and usually 500 students compete nationally. In 1920, in the 1920 school year, even in a pandemic and schools closing three weeks before state competition, over 1,000 students still competed virtually. And 310 of those students competed nationally on a virtual platform. I have no doubt that we're going to continue with that success.
I think that deserves.
Yes. We have three pathways for our business management administration cluster: business administration services, business information technology, and management. This cluster will prepare learners for careers in planning, organizing, managing, and evaluating business functions essential to productive business operations. We recommend that a student take a foundational course in their pathway and then continue to take more rigorous and upper-level courses in that same pathway. These courses will ensure that our students are college and career-ready.
Okay, so here is the flow of our pathway courses. Students start with the same foundation courses for each pathway. Then, as they become concentrators and completers, they dive deeper into the specific topics. For example, in management, they can choose from several courses to strengthen their leadership and management skills.
One thing I want to point out is the courses with the star next to them would meet the state computer science mandate that schools offer computer science classes. Some of these courses will require teachers to complete high-quality professional development and additional certification, but they would be in our pathway, in the business information and technology pathway.
Knowing that our students will rise to the challenges set before them, this slide shows examples of content standards from two different courses within the Business Administrative Services pathway: Business and Legal Concepts and International Business Concepts, both moving students beyond gathering information but evaluating and applying what they've learned. Next slide.
In the Business Information Technology pathway, one sample course is Digital Media Design. In this course, students will apply the design process using the elements of design, the principles of color, and they'll create professional-looking documents. This is a current class, but we've updated it to be more, I guess, more current. I have to say, this is one of the most favorite classes that I've ever taught. In fact, I had several students that wound up going to college to pursue a degree in graphic design and careers in graphic design. And one of my favorite stories is that I had a student that wound up being a designer for Elf on the Shelf. I have to say, she sent me a real elf. That's my kind of thing. In the game design course, students will learn all about game development. And you guys know that that's a high-income career, and so this will definitely prepare our students for a career in that pathway.
This slide shows a sample of content standards for two courses within the management pathway. So it's human resources management, and then we also have project management. All the standards in this pathway and the business management and administration cluster prepare students for those in-demand jobs that the ACP and the Alabama Workforce Council reported in their research, matching supply and demand. And that's one of our main goals. Next slide.
As you can see, we have several CRi opportunities for our students. I mentioned Microsoft Office certifications earlier, but there are also opportunities for credentials in ICP3, ASH Institute, and Adobe, including Photoshop, Illustrator, and Design, and others. Keep in mind that CRi's might change every year. As industry demands change, then the CRi's are likely to change. There's a rigorous approval process for a new CRi's, and they are in line with the high-demand jobs in our state. This pathway provides several possible careers for our students: managers, chief executive officers, entrepreneurs, graphic designers, web builders. I could go on and on and on. I used to tell my students all the time, no matter what your career path is, a business course is going to help you be more prepared. And I truly believe that. Have any questions?
Are there any questions? I guess not. You did an excellent job. Thank you, ladies. All right.
We will leave and let the next group.
All right. Group number two? Thank you for. Thank you, ladies. We appreciate all your hard work. Thank you. All right, next group. Come on. The chairs are warm. Who's in charge of the clicker?
She's got it. She's got it.
Okay.
Introduce yourselves, ladies.
Please.
My name is Fortoya.
Yeah, take your back.
Good afternoon. My name is Fortoya Pugh, and I'm a teacher in high school, Alabama, at Macy Jameson High School. And currently, I teach career prep and accounting. Thank you.
My name is Janet Cavender, and I teach business, marketing, and finance classes at Priceville High School in Morgan County. And I'm also the Work-Based Learning Coordinator. Our finance team would like to thank you for your presence and your support. Our conceptual framework for finance is shown in this gear, which encompasses all of our three paths in the finance cluster: accounting, financial management, and insurance. The orange inner ring of the gear introduces middle school students to a career exploration level and guides them toward high school career preparation in the finance pathway. The innermost green ring represents the five principles of finance: profit, value, security, investments, along with risk and reward. The umbrella in the center represents. The umbrella in the center represents the protection provided by insurance, financial knowledge, and assets, with the seed scape showing how finance encompasses all aspects of this cluster. The upper arrows depict the ever-changing advancement of finance. The background images represent the concepts taught in the finance cluster with icons that represent cryptocurrency, the currency of the future, a bank used for both personal and business finance, a globe which depicts the globalization of our society, and a calculator and chart for accounting procedures with charts to represent statistical data. We also used labor market data to discover the jobs with the highest projected growth rate in the next five years in finance. We considered in-demand occupations in Alabama with consideration of all regions, including accountants, accountants and auditors, insurance sales agents, financial managers, and law and officers. In the finance cluster, we recommend a foundation course: Business Communications, Business Software Applications 1, Career Preparedness, or Personal Finance, before students enter a pathway. Within our standards, we emphasize the importance of sound ethical practices with the goal of preparing students for college and careers. Also, participation in FBLA and DECA will help students gain leadership and other valuable skills.
This graphic demonstrates the increase in rigor through foundation, concentrator, and capstone courses in finance. In the accounting pathway, whether students aspire to be future business owners or work in finance with other companies, accounting skills are fundamental to success and applicable in many different fields. In the financial management pathway, it is a foundational course designed to provide students with an overview of financial and investment planning procedures. Students will use critical thinking skills to analyze and interpret financial data, enabling them to develop short-term and long-term budgetary plans, produce accurate reports, and make informed business decisions. Students will develop product knowledge related to financial and investment planning to distinguish among stocks, bonds, and commodities, and between insurance and equity products. In the insurance pathway, Foundations of Insurance 1: Property and Casualty, it is a half-credit course designed to help students develop skills related to property and casualty insurance as they gain product knowledge of the industry. Students examine characteristics of personal auto policies, personal residential policies, learn insurance terminology used to explain insurance risks and benefits, distinguish between policy types and coverage, explain, I'm sorry, including medical coverage. Students develop effective techniques used to gather client information and serve customers, including providing timely, accurate information to meet customer needs and effectively answer consumer questions. Students will also examine the certification pathway for selling insurance and the role of a state insurance commissioner. Our example for the accounting pathway, Rigger of Standards, includes the foundational course of business communications. In this course, students will learn the basic skills of communicating. Students should know how to communicate effectively in whatever professional role that they are in, how to resolve conflict as a business professional, what does it mean to be a leader, and how can you acquire those skills, the importance of being a team player and developing a well-organized team, gain knowledge on the importance of being a business professional with ethics and integrity. Our concentrator course of accounting, students will learn about the accounting cycle and the role it plays in operating a business. Our example for the financial management pathway, Rigger of Standards, includes the financial, I'm sorry, includes the foundational course of personal finance. This course allows students to look at their finances and what they are spending. I've taught this course for a few years, and it has been my experience that oftentimes, students don't realize how much money they are spending on something. Until they write it out and actually look at it. I had a student that was spending compulsively on Starbucks and buying scrunchies, like she loved scrunchies, she said she had over a hundred.
But she looks lovely.
Yeah. After we did a budgeting class, she saw for the first time how much money she was really spending doing this every day. She saw the value of how much money could be saved or spent on something else that was needed. This course teaches that the decisions that they made can have an impact on your personal financial choices, whether it's a small decision, such as should I buy a red or yellow sweater, or a big decision, such as should I rent or own.
One of our neat courses is global financial markets. Our finance committee realizes that it is imperative for high school students to gain knowledge about global markets and investments, exchange rates, and global trading policies. They may learn how diversity and culture affect global financial markets, the risk involved, and career opportunities in the global marketplace.
Our example for the insurance pathway, Rigger of Standards, insurance agents and insurance clerks are projected to be high-demand occupations. Our foundational course, Foundations of Insurance 1: Property and Casualty, students learn the importance of auto insurance. High school students, who are considered to be young drivers, need to know the importance of having auto insurance. It takes a split second for an accident to happen, and you want to make sure you and the people in your car are covered. There's nothing worse than being hit by a driver with no insurance. Students need to learn the factors that affect your premium. If they have an accident or hurt someone else in an accident, they need to know their rights and responsibilities. As adults, we spend probably hundreds of dollars on different kinds of insurance yearly, but we never really think about the importance of it until we really need it. We also picked Objective 12 because it talks about watercraft insurance. Alabama is full of water recreational activities. From the Tennessee River to the Mobile Bay, tourism on the water is huge in Alabama. Some school districts have begun to teach boat safety as part of driver's education. It is important for students to know about watercraft insurance while enjoying their activities on the water.
On the right side is an example standard for our risk management and commercial insurance course, which is the third of four half-credit insurance courses in the insurance pathway. In my experience, students enjoy learning about things that affect their lives. We talked about zoning one day in class, because we are right at Decatur City in our little town of Priceville. The need for more fire and police protection is growing in Priceville. We have a new fire station being built right beside our high school with very large and numerous subdivisions being built all around. Career readiness indicators are vital to our high school students. I am a big advocate for Microsoft Office certifications for my college and career students. I'm thankful that we are a Microsoft Managed Academy as well, that's a blessing. Since the highest projected growth rate in Alabama includes insurance, we are proposing four half-credit insurance courses that can be taken in two school years.
Students interested in pursuing careers in finance can progress through proposed courses offered within three pathways to become successful in a global economy. Whether their career choice is in becoming a financial manager through courses offered in the accounting pathway, an investment banker through the financial management pathway, or as an insurance sales agent through the insurance pathway. On behalf of the committee members responsible for the finance cluster, we hope that the courses we are proposing will assist teachers with the delivery of curriculum content that will meet the demand of Alabama's workforce. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of my board members have any questions?
I just want to say, I'm so impressed, thrilled beyond words with what you're proposing. I do have one question, one thing that I've noticed with our young people today, whether they're in high school, college, after-college, young professionals, they have very little knowledge about leases and contracts. Leases and contracts intersect every profession, be it construction, which is highly sought-after in the auto, plumbing, electrician. I mean, I don't care what field you go into, you are going to have to deal with leases and contracts at some point. And I think I heard you touch on, do I rent or do I own? But does, will our standards or course of study touch on that in finance? It sounds like it does, but I think there's, you know, the future is that we need to do more discussion with our young people about that, there literally, this has a contract.
Right.
That is so true. I, in my opinion, the way we have divided up insurance in such a different way, and we have it in four different classes, I think that provides more time. When, if you talk about commercial, you know, and then risk management, and then do, we do house and commercial property together.
Right.
And then I didn't write the other one down the way, but it is not the one I wrote. But I hope that that will allow more time.
It's almost more of a legal approach for me.
Yes.
It is what it means as a young person when you commit with your written signature on a lease and on a contract, and the ramifications of that for you long-term. And I'm thrilled with what you are presenting, I want to dig deeper into it, but that was just one question that I had on the finance piece.
Thank you.
And I agree, if it's not, it needs to be, because that is something that touches every single person.
And not hidden in something, I think it needs to be one of those important things.
I think in our, in our course of financial management, it is.
One of those, okay. Our entrepreneurs need to know about.
Zigor, may I make your comment?
Are you done?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Dr. Reynolds, go ahead.
Yes, I don't mean to date myself, but I actually know what DECA means, Distributed Education Clubs of America. And the idea of including finance and integrating that with math curriculum is very important to me, and I agree with Ms. West. As my son is a physician, he needs to know more about his money management. My daughter's a senior manager at Department of Defense, and she handles contracts and high-level negotiations on the level of a one-star general. And we can overlook finance and those aspects, and this integration with math curriculum as well. I applaud the presentations today, they've been very well-done.
Thank you. Okay. Not yet, go ahead.
First of all, thank you all so much. And on your resources that you use, did you have bankers and insurance agents and financial managers, stockbrokers, to help advise you? So, because it's changing so fast, right? Like, my students came in last week, and they were like, game stop! What are we doing about game stop? And what's a short, and how do we do it, and how do we make a lot of money, you know? So trying to explain to them about shorts, and how they can be risky today trade, and that kind of thing. And so, but that's what they are paying attention to, right? And so, so I just wondered, you know, who were your resources? Who did you go to to determine what are the major factors that need to be included? You know, in, that are like essential, and budgets, I know you talked about that, and I know I highlighted that one, because I'm absolutely about budgets. But how did you know, like, which others were absolutely essential? And again, looking at workforce, right, and finding those skills that are essential for our children for the future, so they can get gainful employment, we hope, and what the skills needed, but just making sure that we've got in there what is most critical for them to be successful if they choose to go into a finance field.
Dr. McCarty, we involved the Alabama Industry of Insurance brokers, they were key to this process, as well as the Federal Reserve Bank, we had expert reviewers in the finance cluster as well. So yes, we did have representation from industry.
Well, some, some of the questions that I got about this, you'll not be surprised, but were from the Federal Reserve, and that they wanted some things more emphasized. The difference between saving is a short term, investing is a long term. What are your choices? You know, obviously, we know you need to diversify, you need to start young, you need to, and just making sure, and I've got to do it too, I've got to look more carefully through line by line, and to make sure. And, full disclosure, I'm an economics professor. So unfortunately for you, you know, I could probably pull this apart and put it back together, but, and so, I know, I'm so sorry.
But you're input.
But it's, it's those essentials that I see in college students, they don't even know what a credit score is. And then, if, and there are many jobs in the financial industry, I used to be a banker, you can't get a job offer if your credit score is low, because that is a measure in their minds of your character. And if you go for a bank position and have a low credit score, sorry. You know, my boss at the bank almost didn't get the job offer, because they, they, you know, ran her scores, and they were awful. Two people with the same name. But it was up to her to prove to them that she was not that person. And so, so I just, I know firsthand that having a high credit score is important, but you can't help what they have when they walk in your classroom, right? But then what you can do is show them the steps they can take to improve that credit score, right? The things that are, you know, most highly weighted, like in putting together a credit score and that sort of thing. And I agree with Ms. West that some of those other things with contracts, and things like warranties, you know, is that extra warranty really necessary or not? And to talk with them about the pros and the cons, return on investment on certain things. But yeah, just, you know, there's so many different things that, that are, that this section, like I say, you know, bless you, because I'm, you know, so. But, but yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm very excited about this, and much, much improved, you know? So I thank you so very, very much, but, but yeah, I can't wait to really dig into it. Thank you so much.
We appreciate, and again, all, whoever served with you, please extend our thanks. It was a lot of hard work, and we know it was, so thank you kindly both.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go out and tell them it's not so bad.
We should let them go out crying.
I'm Jason Blackwell.
Please, we can hear you.
I am glad to see y'all, very, very glad. My name is Jason Blackwell, I'm from Bruton, Alabama, South Alabama. I used to teach in Monroe, but now I'm at ECRC in Bruton. We have five schools that we service, and I'm a manufacturing teacher. I've had about twenty years of experience in manufacturing and construction, and this is my eighth year teaching school, so. I will present Ms. Lee Harris, she's in Hartsel City Schools, and she will be starting our presentation off.
I'm Lisa Harris, and I do teach at Hartsel City Schools. I teach manufacturing there, at Hartsel High School. I formerly taught gifted in Hartsel for about fifteen, sixteen years, and was approached to by our superintendent to start this manufacturing academy, and it's a need in our area, Region 1. And so, I've done this, I've started this academy three years ago, and it's been successful so far, and we're continuing to grow this and learn. I'm also adjunct instructor for Calhoun Community College, where my students earn dual honor credit for advanced manufacturing. All right, so we'll begin our presentation, and as you can see here, you see our conceptual framework. And in the gear, we have the blue area. In manufacturing, we have two pathways. It is production and maintenance, installation, and repair. The cogs on the gear, starting at the top, represent the seven programs that are part of manufacturing. The first one, if you'll notice, is split, partially gray, partially black, because it falls into both of our pathways. The activities and the standards that are there meet the criteria for both of those, both production and maintenance. So, that's robotics. So, um, that, that's robotics, automa- and automated manufacturing. Uh, this, moving clockwise, you have industrial maintenance, electrical, and instrumentation. And, um, then we move to the next with, uh, industrial maintenance, mechanical, and then electronics. And then on into the production pathway, we have additive manufacturing, precision machining, and advanced manufacturing. Um, the, one thing about this too, we have the internals, uh, part of our gear. The icons are representative of the Industry 4.0 careers that are associated with manufacturing. Uh, the next slide represents our program grid. And, um, this cor- this, um, offers, shows, it illustrates the courses that we, uh, offer throughout these two pathway programs. Uh, there are forty-eight courses with over five hundred standards that we, uh, wrote for this, uh, cluster. And, uh, we have also gone and added two additional courses. We actually share it into the high school courses as well, but the eighth grade courses, so that we can get some more vertical alignment and work on that pipeline with K through twelve. Um, so, in eighth grade, we're offering it, uh, credit for introduction to manufacturing, as well as introduction to engineering design. And I'm actually teaching an eighth grade course right now, that's an exploratory, and I've got students so they can kind of, uh, decide before they get to high school if they want to go engineering or manufacturing. Our next slide, um, is a sample from the in-demand occupa- occupations. And as you've heard in some of the other, um, clusters, that these in-demand occupations were identified by the Alabama's Committee on Credentials and Career Pathways, the A-triple-C-P. And, um, we have the, we have our standards aligned with, um, and, and grounded in Governor Ivey's statement that, uh, we remain committed to our post-secondary attainment goal of adding five hundred thousand highly skilled employees to the workforce by 2025. So writing these standards with strong start, strong finish in mind, as well as the career competency model, we hope to help achieve the governor's goal and A-triple-C-P's goal of having a pipeline of skilled workers in Alabama. The A-triple-C-P initiative shows the path that students can take to advance their career from junior high to high school to post-secondary and beyond. With these standards, um, secondary education is providing opportunities to earn dual enrollment credit, um, industry credentials, as well as hands-on training prior to graduating high school. Um, these standards, if you'll notice, are representative of all the regions. You can't see it on this one, but there are more pages to the, uh, in-demand careers. And they are representative of all regions in Alabama. And, uh, if you look there, I think it's team assemblers, there's five thousand in Region Four projected, um, need. I'm from Region One, and we have Mazda Toyota coming, and that's why our superintendent had the vision four years ago to come to me and say, hey, we're going to need this because we're going to need skilled workers, we need people trained. We've been successful in our high school at preparing kids for that, uh, for A P courses in college and career-ready, but the career part was not quite there. And so she saw the need and filled that gap, and so we are, we're, we're modifying this every, every year and putting it in place, but it's making a difference with my students. I had a student just a couple of weeks ago come to me and he said, you know, if it had not, I think this is my third year to have him, so the first year we offered these courses, he started, and he's been following me through. He's earned dual enrollment credits, he's earned some industry credentials, and he's earned a Zosia, uh, ten card. And he said, if it had not been for your classes, I would have already dropped out. And he's an eighth grader, in the, a junior in high school. And, and, and these courses are, we're providing opportunities to them, not just those students, a lot of people think are the ones that are weaker or not good students, but I've got, I've got former gifted students in my class as well. And I have two students who just earned the, or were, uh, recipients of the Alabama Automotive Manufacturing Association's scholarship, thirty-six hundred dollars for their first years for a two-year, uh, college degree. And they would have never been aware of that if I had not helped them through that process and made it aware. So we've got students that, uh, this is making a difference in their lives. And, uh, these standards we have written will prepare students to enter the skilled occupations. And they must start at, you know, working, we can't start in high school, we've got to make it a K-12 pipeline in order to achieve Governor Ivey's goal of the fifty thousand workers by 2025. And now Mr. Blackwell is going to share more about the progression of rigor and our C R Is and our C T S O.
A lot of vision and a lot of, um, thought was went into this process, um, just because we was trying to think ahead, because this is a dynamic, manufacturing is very dynamic, constantly changing, so we didn't want it to be outdated tomorrow. So, if you will, these are different classes, and the process of rigor is, if you can, if I could paint a picture to you, manufacturing is itself a picture. So for the students to understand, we have to start a small portion of a picture. And if you'll see in quality, they're starting to describe it. In production, look at, they're starting to set, set it up and verify it. So this is the way this rigor is going in this process, and when you get to maintenance, you have to understand that this, this student, that this person has got a broad understanding of it from where they're describing it, and all the way to they're doing a preventative maintenance on it. So they have to see the picture as a whole versus just seeing one item. And that's what our career tech education does, it takes, it takes academics and then turn around and we can make, uh, allow the student to say, well, they only, not only have a skill, they also are grounding these academics that they're understanding the processes, so we're making a well-rounded student. If you look over here at the next one, it's the same thing. We're applying, so we get in a concept, and then we turn around, we designing and analyzing, and we got to think so far ahead in this next class that we're analyzing in, in electrical and a feedback system, so we're, a preventative maintenance, what could happen? I don't, I can't just understand what it is, I have to think so much and, and such great thought that it is a, um, what could happen to this process? And I, and manufacturing, if you'll notice, to get to this point, took a lot of hands and a lot of machines and a lot of thought and design. And so that's what we trying to do in the high school, and like you said, I also pilot an eighth grade program. And we, we're taking those students and by the time they getting out into the workforce, they're understanding already what their credentials and what they're, what they're supposed to do or what they want to do in life. If you're, next slide, please. And that's what these C R Is are about, these are career readiness indicators, and kind of give you some understanding of what this is. We go to industry and say, what is the current certifications you have? What would you like to see a employee have at some point in their life? And what we doing at the high school level and post-secondary, I also have a dual enrollment program where they, when they leave me, they can have up to thirty-six hours of college credit graduating high school.
That's fantastic.
So what we're doing is, we're very heavy in that pipeline, because we need these students, when they graduate, you know, we need plugging them into places, and these people are like grabbing them ahold. And, so they see our eyes, and they're, again, it's dynamic changing, just like the M S S C. Right now, she spoke about the Toyota Mazda place in North Alabama. They will waive two years of work experience if you just got this certification. So a high school student starting out eighteen years old can go right into the workforce, and that, because I always hear, they can't hire them because they don't have any work experience. And some of these certifications allow that student a leg up from a lot of people. And another thing this does too, it holds the high school accountable, because that's the data that the high school uses to report to the State Department and say, this is how many students got the C R Is. All right, next slide. All right, today I am representing, this is our national colors. Uh, I have the red jacket on, the black tie, white shirt.
Uh, may I ask, why did you tell Ms. West about the red coloring?
I sent that out an email, you know, it's got bad weather up in the, you know, it's ice storm coming in, but this is my heart with this stuff. When you go to industry and you ask the person, if they got a skill, that's cool, but can they do this? Are they nice? Can they get along with their coworkers? So this is some of the main qualities that people from the workforce industries would like to see. So we, we ground in personal skills, this is the things, like when you go, they know how to talk, shake hands, really make an impression on that person, and then that person gets that grasp of like, this person's trainable. Then we go to work skills, workplace skills. You know, they're like, what does it take to be in the workplace? What do we do in this skill, like industrial maintenance, electronics, robotics, what do we do? You know, so then we go into tech, technical skills and grounding in academics. You have to know math, you have to be able to write papers, you have to be able to understand schematics. This is not easy. And this is what the Skills USA allows us, in any C T S O, and all our career tech organizations have C T S O, not just us. And then it allows the student to become that whole employee, that whole person. So, yeah, I'll give you some examples, and this is the reason I really know it works. Um, my students got together, it's like, Mr. Blackwell, we'd like to do something for you. And so they did the paperwork for me, and I was actually advisor of the year last year. So I really appreciate that, shout out to everyone that made that happen, on my students and such. And also, they have the Chapter of Excellence Program. This is where my officers get together and say, what can we do for our community? And they turn around and they say, well, let's do this and this. And one of them come up with a project, I actually found a needy family, eight, had eight kids, mom and dad, and he had a good job, all of a sudden got laid off. No Christmas was fixing to happen. My students got together with some of my advisory committee, I'm very, really big in my advisory committee, and they said, if you can raise at least a thousand dollars of food and presents or whatever, we'll donate a car. So before we knew it, we had over a thousand dollars worth of food and presents, and these students helped this. You know, it, it impacted them so much, like, wow, I didn't think one person can do it. You can, one person starts it. Something recent that we had, uh, we, South Alabama got hit, and a lot of places got hit, I won't just say South Alabama, by Hurricane Sally and Zeta, it tore my place completely apart, but my students, my team was like, hey, Mr. Blackwell, you okay? I'm like, yeah, I'm good. Well, what can we do for the community? I said, I don't know, what's some of your ideas? Because I know I got ideas, but you know, I want them to realize they have ideas too. And that's one of the things that this organization does, is allows them to think for themselves. And, and come out of process, and well, I would come help you, Mr. Blackwell, my chainsaw's messed up. My chainsaw's messed up too. Hey, my chainsaw's messed up too. I was like, I'm saying a trend here, I was like, y'all want to come help, but, all right? So we fixed over a hundred chainsaws for the community in a week's period of time, where these people could get out there and cut up trees, get trees off the roadways. And my students was right out there doing it, not only learning a skill that was applicable to my program, but they was also helping the community, their grandmas, these people they didn't even know. And just to go around and see them helping people just pick up trash and things like that. And it, it impact them so much that they won't ever forget that. And you know, I want them to be able to pay that forward. Um, Chapter Excellence, through this program, our students, uh, in two thousand nineteen won gold. And last year I won silver, and what this is, is you put everything you did as a community service project, and you put it in, you submit it to the state, and they grade it and, and, um, allow you to, to have that competing. And of course, I'm very big into competing and stuff, because I think it's a healthy relationship with going against someone else. You know, you can think you're the best, but you know, if you compete against someone in the state, you know, like, it, it makes you better. So, um, but that's C T S O, and I think next slide, some questions, if you'd like any questions.
Are there any questions from our board members? Y'all did such a good job.
Did you want to take many thank yous?
Both, thank you so much, again. Please be sure to share our thanks to your entire team with whom you work.
Yes, ma'am, I certainly will.
And your kids, um, we're thinking of them.
I try to send y'all some pictures all the time.
Oh, please do. And, uh, next time, send me the email about the red, please.
Y'all have a great day, and thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you. Okay, marketing. Hello, ladies.
Hello.
Thank you for coming, and we're sorry it's late, but we appreciate you being here. Who's the clicker? You won.
Hi, I'm Cody Nichols, business and marketing teacher at Central County Schools Career Academy. This is my third year teaching high school after spending fifteen years working in post-secondary education. Ms. Byrd and I are very honored to be here representing our fellow Marketing Course of Study committee members who worked very hard over the last year drafting a new course of study. I'll now turn the presentation over to Ms. Byrd to get us started.
Hello, I'm Shantae Byrd, and I'm a business and marketing teacher and the Finance Academy Director at Shades Valley High School. I've been teaching in Jackson County for the last twenty-two years, and we are pleased to present the Marketing Course of Study, uh, proposed Marketing Course of Study to you all.
Well, thank you.
Um, this slide reflects the conceptual, conceptual framework, which is a graphic representation of the marketing career cluster in technical education. The gear illustrates each of the three pathways in the marketing cluster, and it includes the marketing, professional sales, and real estate pathways. The blue ring of the gear introduces middle school students to a career exploration level and prepares them for the high school marketing pathway. The orange ring represents four P's, which are the key concepts in marketing, product, place, price, and promotion. And this provides the foundation of all marketing concepts. The background images within the gear represents the ever-changing components of the marketing industry. This illustration shows Alabama's most in-demand occupations within the marketing cluster from the year of twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, with resale, sales supervisors, and sales representatives, and marketing specialists at the top of the list. Occupations in the marketing are projected to grow six percent over the next ten years. This is faster than the average for all occupations, making the marketing cluster both popular and necessary. Knowledge gained in the marketing cluster can be used in several areas of the business industry. Knowledge of advertising, promotions, and marketing concepts is highly desirable, and these skills are often sought by managers and experienced professionals. Students in the marketing cluster will have rigorous courses that will prepare them for college and career readiness. Students will gain skills with help, that will help them to become competitive, both nationally and globally, to understand and meet the needs of the businesses and consumers, and to stay abreast of the ever-changing demands of the business industry. Students will have the opportunity to further their knowledge and enhance their leadership skills by participating in C T S Os such as DECA and F B L A. This slide shows the marketing cluster and the three pathways which are, um, which will guide students to their desired career in the marketing field. The marketing pathway is geared for students who are interested in careers in public relations, communications, and promotion. The professional sales pathway is suitable for students with the art of persuasion and are interested in sales-oriented types of careers. And the real estate sales, uh, curriculum is designed for students with the entrepreneurial mindset and that are interested in learning more about the real estate market. Cody will now provide a more in-depth detail about the marketing curriculum and standards and the rigor of our program.
The marketing pathway offers students a wide selection of marketing courses. Here we see a sample standard for Marketing Principles course compared with a similar standard from the Sports and Entertainment Marketing course. Notice that the Marketing Principles course standard focuses on breadth of knowledge, while our Sports and Entertainment Marketing course standard focuses on depth of knowledge in the subject area. For example, the Marketing Principles course asks students to define and utilize basic marketing terminology, while the Sports and Entertainment Marketing course has students delve deeper into specific marketing functions and terms. Here we see the marketing courses offered under the Professional Sales Pathway noted on the right-hand side, uh, side of the slide there. This pathway was created very specifically to respond to needs in the area of sales according to the projected in-demand marketing occupation list. It includes several courses that have been revised and updated, as well as several new courses such as customer service and sales, and retail and fashion marketing, to help students prepare for a wide variety of sales career paths. These courses are designed to build different but complementary skill sets. The Real Estate Sales Pathway represents another new pathway for marketing. Like our Professional Sales Pathway, this pathway was created in response to projected in-demand occupations in the area of real estate sales. We've taken the two new real estate sales courses, Introduction to Real Estate and Buying and Selling Real Estate, and paired them with some complementary marketing courses such as Entrepreneurship and Digital Marketing for students who wish to pursue this particular career path. The marketing cluster will offer a variety of CRI opportunities for students. These include the Adobe Certified Associate for programs such as Photoshop, Illustrator, InDesign, among others, as well as the Microsoft Office Specialist for Word, PowerPoint, Excel, and Access. Additional certification pathways include the Certified Guest Service Professional, as well as a variety of certifications available from the Ask Institute. These marketing standards, courses, and pathways have been designed to provide students with the knowledge that will carry them into a variety of careers related to marketing. Here's just kind of a little example of a few marketing-related occupations. On behalf of Ms. Byrd and my fellow marketing committee members, we thank you for your time. Do you have any questions on this?
Board members, do you have any questions for these two talented ladies? Well, again, outs, oh, I'm sorry.
Just a suggestion, under the Real Estate Sales Pathway, because I know that's new for us. I think it would be, um, excellent if you took on fair housing, the history of fair housing and the laws in our country that govern the buying and selling of real property. There's a rich history there of diversity. And what our, the United States of America put forward in the buying and selling of real property, where it began, would surprise our students. Especially in today's climate. And then also the ethical standards of anyone who goes to work in the real estate industry. It has a totally separate, uh, set of ethical standards because you are dealing with the buying and selling of real property. And so, because it's new, um, I would just suggest that, that's my profession. And so I, I think that that's important for students to understand.
We'll go back and take a look at, make sure.
Yeah, make sure that's in there. Thank you.
And I would compliment you on the digital marketing. Yes. Because technology in marketing, especially with what we are going through right now, the being able to market using devices is, is a lot different than when, when I was, you know, coming up.
Well, we really tried not to lock in any particular technology, because, you know, the previous course of study was written in 2008. If we were going to talk about social media, then we'd have probably said MySpace.
Right.
And, and you know, kids today have no idea what that is. So we really tried to keep it as broad as we could to talk about whatever's, whatever's existing at the time, because who knows?
It's changing every day.
I'm so glad you had it, like, in all three.
Well, and, and that was one thing, we did, we did have quite some debate over what should be in everything. Like, everyone needs to know digital marketing. That's, that's the way of the world.
I agree. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and we appreciate your hard, hard work. And would you be sure to share with your other coworkers that we are very appreciative, because we know a lot of blood, sweat, and tears went into it. Did anybody else have a question? I heard some background, I'm sorry. Thank you, ladies, and be careful going home.
Thank you.
Oh, are you a loner?
I have a virtual partner.
Alright, um, go ahead and start in. Would you please introduce yourself to us?
Yes, um, good afternoon, I'm Audrey Marshall, I'm the Work-Based Learning Coordinator from Auburn City Schools. And it is a pleasure to be here on behalf of all the Work-Based Learning Coordinators from around the state of Alabama. With me today, virtually, is my cohort Tiffany Stanzifer for Muscle Shoals, uh, City Schools System. And Tiffany, why don't you introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Tiffany Stanzifer with Muscle Shoals City Schools. This is my eleventh year with the Work-Based Learning Program here. It's what we are truly passionate about, and we're so excited to be here with you and share with you all the work that our committee has done for you.
Thank you. Thank you. The CTE conceptual framework pictured here depicts work-based learning as the bridge that connects the educational system to college and the workforce. The sixteen robust Alabama CTE clusters represented by the gears beneath the bridge are connected by the CTE COG, which interlocks our secondary, post-secondary, and workforce stakeholders. The continuum both on and beneath the bridge emphasize that work-based learning consists...
Oh, that's his wife, sorry.
That work-based learning consists of a continuum of activities that promote awareness, exploration, preparation, and training. As a capstone course, taken by juniors and seniors, work-based learning experiences extend learning corporate, excuse me, extend learning opportunities for all CTE pathways. Students completing work-based learning will be well-prepared for other, for further study and employment. And next slide, please, Tiffany?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Ms. Marshall. The courses we reviewed are listed on this slide, providing a progression from sixth through twelfth grades. Courses include career explorations, career preparedness, and workforce readiness. Career explorations, formerly career cluster explorations, enable students to explore career opportunities by becoming aware of the importance of basic technology, work ethics, communication skills, the value of work, leadership skills, and basic employability skills. Career preparedness focuses on three integrated areas of instruction: academic planning and career development, financial literacy, and technology. Workforce readiness, formerly workforce essentials, provides students with higher-level academic and occupational skills that are transferable across jobs and occupational areas. Work-based learning content is provided throughout all courses, which includes middle school. Standards are not given for work-based learning placements because those students follow their individual training plans and is experiential learning at its finest. Next slide, please.
Alright, the Work-Based Learning Manual is the document that guides the implementation of career-ready content for students involved in work-based learning. As previously mentioned, standards were not specifically developed for the work-based learning course. Instead, the training plan that you see here is utilized to address skills acquisitions for specific job tasks. Work-based learning training plans first extend or expand on standards taught in CTE courses. Two, they are not a one-stop shop in that they are individualized for each student. And three, they document experiential learning by addressing the why students are learning and actually what they're learning. Content taught in work-based learning is derived from all CTE areas and focused on employment. Additional resources used to provide guidance to coordinators and to document student learning include, and you'll see the example stated here, that would be the training plan, which you see here. Uh, child labor laws, we look at things there to, to develop that also. Uh, the training agreement, which is the, um, document that, um, the parents, the students, the administrators at each school, and the employer have to sign in order to agree that this training needs to take place. And then the site visits, which are very exciting to us as coordinators, because it allows us to go out there and actually see our children working in the community and, and adding to economic development around our state. And then we have the employer skills evaluations, which are always exciting to me to see, because at the end of the day, you're actually documenting and seeing that that child is learning. Okay? And then work-based learning does complement the processes that are used to instruct students in other CTE areas by allowing the students to apply and extend their knowledge base. This learning is methodically documented by coordinators, and the placement data is shared with local and state agencies to document secondary students' contribution to economic development in the state of Alabama. And that is another exciting thing. And next slide.
Well, that needs applause, that's very, very good.
Thank you. The definition of work-based learning in Perkins-Bob is sustained interactions with industry or community professionals in real workplace settings to the extent practicable or simulated environments at an educational institution that foster in-depth firsthand engagement with the tasks required of a given career field that are aligned to curriculum and instruction. Next slide, please. The continuum consists of awareness, exploration, preparation, and training, which is implemented in middle school CTE courses, high school CTE courses, and work-based learning. The gears represented on this slide show how our courses work together. This leads to our students' future successes in college and career. On behalf of the Work-Based Learning Course of Study Committee, we thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Uh, any questions by my board members? Excellent job, ladies. Thank you so kindly for your hard work.
Please share with your team how appreciative we are.
Definitely. Thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you. Thank you, virtual lady.
Dr. Hall, before you leave...
I'm not leaving.
Well, can I make one request? Several of the presenters with Career Tech mentioned eighth-grade courses in CTE. Is there a way we could get a report on how many are currently done? Because I'm excited about that, introducing that at an earlier age.
Absolutely. And that's, that's an initiative that I'm really pushing, is that I think in Career Tech, we need to do a better job of building from the bottom up.
I do, yes.
And as a former high school principal, you see these large marching bands on Friday nights. Those kids don't get those trumpets in the ninth grade.
No, that's right.
So we've got to do a similar kind of approach in Career Tech. So that's something we're working towards, expanding into middle grades, I think is very important. But we can get you a list of exactly what we've got right now.
And, and where they are, because I'd like to see if there's some holes out there.
Absolutely.
I was thinking of the anti-sty kids that our teachers use. And I've been down on the floor watching children making circuits, electrical circuits. And I thought, you know, if you can connect that lower-grade level...
Some places are, yes.
You know, all the way up, so.
Yeah, we're going to really try to use STEM as the driving force. We have so much going on in the STEM cluster. And you can insert that across the board in middle schools to help expand that concept into all the clusters. Yes.
Thank you. Wait one minute.
Ms. Ziegler.
Dr. Reynolds, are you trying to say something?
Yes, I am. I would like to commend...
A little louder.
I would like to commend this last presentation as being so clear and so easy to understand if the State Board adopts this curriculum compared to others that I've seen presented, which seem to be vague and not prepared to be specific in their answers. And I know with STEM and as an old Career Tech teacher, I appreciate the depth and breadth of this presentation. It's admirable.
Well, look at you.
Thank you.
And would you share that with them, that just left, please?
And look, and I've got to tell you, most of the work was done before I probably got here and got settled in, because this is work that started early last year. So, you know, Dr. Boyd oversaw a good deal.
Will Dr. Boyd be sure to share that with the team?
Well, we will.
Thank you.
And I think we'd be remiss if we didn't recognize...
Uh, Dr. Boyd, are you doing the next one?
Yes, ma'am, I am. And the next one deals, uh, it's number six. It is the resolution to receive recommendations of the State Textbook Committee for adoption of textbooks for career and technical education clusters, which includes agriculture, food, and natural resources, law, public safety, corrections, security, uh, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics STEM. Uh, so as you probably know, this is a four-month-long process. So today's not an official discussion about the material, it's just a standard procedure where we share this information. Uh, during the March eleventh board meeting, uh, the board will vote to officially receive recommendations of State Textbook Committee for adoption, uh, regarding the textbooks for CTE. So in your packet, you should have received information in it, and the information that you receive regarding the textbook should be confidential. Uh, and it's, of course, information you don't want to share.
I don't want hard labor, so thank you.
Okay, good.
You're, you're no fun anymore.
So the day after the board meeting in March, on the twelfth, we'll have the public examination process, which is for thirty days. We'll get comments from the public regarding that. And then on April the eighth, during the work session, the CTE chairperson will present information regarding the CTE textbooks, similar to what we did with mathematics. And on May the thirteenth, at the board meeting, uh, at that point of time, public comments can be made if someone chooses to do so. And the vote, uh, the board will have the opportunity to approve or reject the CTE materials that are recommended by the committee.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
And while we're on this topic also, I'd like to also thank, uh, Dr. Jones for the work that she does with the Textbook Committee. We appreciate it, Dr. Jones.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying the next step.
Alright, our next item is item number seven. It's the resolution in response to components to the Alabama Literacy Act regarding educator assessment requirements. And Dr. Denise Peacock is walking up here, she's here there to be sure a little bit about Dr. Peacock. Uh, truly an awesome lady. She's been here at the State Department for seven years, works closely with Dr. Myers. Uh, they do exceptional work. Uh, she has twenty-one years in education, and she was a former elementary teacher, reading specialist, and also a reading coach and instructional coach. So, uh, it's good to have you here with us today, and good to have you here at the department, Dr. Peacock.
Thank you, thank you. I'm so excited. I'm lucky number seven. I don't know whether to say good afternoon or good evening. When is the pizza coming, or, you know, whatever.
Hey, y'all, come on.
So anyway, thank you for, for your attention. I, I know it's been a long day, and I do appreciate that so very much. Um, I, I kind of laughed when I was listening to the Career Tech introduction, because it was so similar to my introduction in stating that it was a year ago that I sat before you guys, and we began talking about that foundational reading assessment. It was February of 2020. We talked about the, um, importance of making sure that Alabama had the best reading assessment, and we set off with a project of looking and reviewing those assessments. Shortly thereafter, we moved into a global pandemic. So, you know, I, I think everyone's story is the same, and it looks like we're finally getting through some of those things, so it is exciting. Um, I am really glad to share with you what we have been doing for the past year in the midst of this global pandemic. Um, and I want you to know that the focus of our research was to look for the most appropriate foundations of reading tests to be used with our elementary, our early childhood, and our collaborative special education teachers. So even through everything, we remain focused on that task. I would like to recognize Mark Dixon and the Subcommittee of the Literacy Task Force that worked with me on this. They volunteered countless hours and worked tirelessly on this project as we looked to review these assessments. I thoroughly enjoyed getting to know all of those members of the committee and truly look forward to our very frequent Zoom sessions that we attended over the last seven months. So I'm going to miss all of them. So if they're listening, thank you again. Heartfelt thank you to all of you for your time. Um, I will go ahead and begin going through the overview. I know that you guys are tired and your brain is full, so I'll be as brief as I can possibly be. Um, but I'll start with an overview. I have the clicker.
Yes.
Not self-sufficient. Can't trust me with these things. Um, as, as I said before, the foundational reading assessment is a precondition to initial certification for the areas of elementary education, that's our grades K to six, early childhood, which would be our grades P to three, and early childhood special education for grades K to six. When we met in February of 2020, we were discussing moving from the Praxis 5204, which was the teaching reading assessment that went for grades K to twelve, to the new, um, Teaching Reading Elementary, which was specific to grades K to five, to grades K to six. We discussed then that we felt like this test was more closely aligned with what our elementary and early childhood teachers needed to know. And you guys were very gracious, and you did agree to do that, but you also made the request that we begin a review process to make sure that we had the best test. So we did. March 2020, you guys did affirm that 5205 test, and that's when we began looking at appropriate, uh, assessments that we should consider. We narrowed it down to the Praxis 5205, which was the current test, and then the Foundations of Reading Test, which is the test that is, um, the Massachusetts test that is actually administered by, um... the Massachusetts test that is actually administered by Pearson Evaluation System Group, or the Evaluation Systems Group of Pearson, sorry. So we started our evaluation process in July of 2020. There were a few months in there as we were all trying to figure out what we were supposed to do with this pandemic before we got started. But we did jump in in July of 2020. The Subcommittee was formed and they began the process of going through, um, the two different tests. They started with developing a rubric. And there was a lot of good conversation with a lot of experts that were on the committee with that. We had representation from our K-12 area. We had representation from higher education and we also had representation from this board. And so there was a lot of good conversation in developing that rubric. Once the rubric was in place, then they began to look at, um, various sessions with those two vendors. And the vendors were very good about answering questions, providing documentation. And we had several very informative and lengthy Zoom sessions throughout that process. In the beginning, we were looking at sample questions from both vendors. We decided in the end that maybe those sample questions weren't quite enough and that we would really like to have some live test questions. And that was a little bit, uh, more intricate to work out, but they were able to do that for us. We did, um, secure Zoom sessions with both vendors where they actually put up live test questions and the task force members were able to make notes and, uh, score based on those live test questions. So to me, that was a very exciting part of this review process to be looking at real questions. That rubric is in your packet. If you've taken time to look at it, it's fairly lengthy. So I did not put it on these slides here. I just did some bulleted points so that you would know what was, um, covered in there. You know, it, it's Science of Reading, period, textbook definition. We looked at phonological awareness, phonemic awareness. We looked at phonics, both encoding and decoding, fluency vocabulary comprehension. Of course, struggling readers. And then the, the big push now was looking at the standards alignment with the International Dyslexia Association standards. So that was important to the task force group. And of course, it's also important to you guys as a board and to me as I sit in my position with educator assessment. The next slide will show the results of that. And, uh, I know you're another stat, Dr. Boyd, so I know you love this slide. But this is actually the consolidated summary that was prepared after all of the rubrics were scored. There was a total possible of 189 in a perfect world with a perfect score. And you can see here the Foundations of Reading Pearson test versus the ETS 5205. Uh, the two points obviously from this, numbers are numbers and numbers do not lie. But the Foundations of Reading test did score higher overall and on all sections of the rubric. And all committee members also scored the Foundations of Reading test higher on their individual rubrics. So we felt like we had a, you know, a good, strong case for making a change based on the information provided after it was scored. And can think of anything else you're working, jumping, I'm good at talking.
How you doing, Greg?
Okay, um, now, here's the hiccup. The Foundations of Reading 190 is a brand-new test. It's so brand-new that it's not even a test yet. It's not out there. So the test that's currently being used is the Foundations of Reading 90. And I know you guys can't really see that. I'm sorry. But I'm certainly not too excited enough to move anything, so just hang with me. But this is the, the one, the 90 test is the test that's currently used in Massachusetts as well as in several other states. It's owned by Massachusetts. The new 190 test will be the same. It is also a test that's owned by Massachusetts. It is administered by the Evaluation System Group of Pearson. That is the same vendor that we use right now for EDTPA. So we already have a relationship with this vendor. We've worked well with them. We have wonderful representatives that are there to help us with anything that we need. Been very pleased with our relationship with that particular vendor. They are beginning the process now with this new 190 test of making it real and official and all those good things. This past Monday, they started the operational assessment, which is available to candidates in Massachusetts. And that, of course, will be linked to the information that will be viewed during the formal standard-setting study, which will happen on March the 30th. Now, that standard-setting study and the passing, or the establishment of a passing score is a Massachusetts thing. It will be done with Massachusetts educators and it will be looking at data from Massachusetts, um, candidates. As an Alabama girl, I didn't really like that much. We are really used to, with our, uh, relationship with ETS, we are always involved in standard-setting studies. They send out letters when they're getting ready to change a test or change a score. They ask for, um, representatives from states to come and be a part of that. We are always involved in that. We send representatives from our K-12 as well as from our higher education in the various areas. So if we had a new social studies test, we would send social studies experts to that standard-setting study. So Denise needed a little more information on that point. I, I needed to know that we were going to be taking care of in Alabama if we made this change. So I did speak directly with our representatives and I said, okay, what can we do to make this, you know, Alabama, to make it what we need? And they did come up with two points that I think are very reasonable and workable that I do like. The first would be to facilitate a review here based on the recommended score in Massachusetts. So they would go through that process with us. They would talk with us about the establishment of that score. We would look at our standards. And we could make a decision based on that information, on whether we wanted to go with the Massachusetts score, if we wanted to do what some of the other states have done, where we look at going one or two standard deviations below that to start. Maybe look at a tiered, uh, system as far as starting in one place and then slowly moving up. So lots of choices with Bullet 1. The second one I really liked as well, and that would be to collaborate with the State Department here and conduct a formal standard-setting study for Alabama based on our needs. So they made me happy with Bullets 1 and 2 and so I told them we could proceed. Now, if we implement this test, how and what will we be using it for? Um, it's going to be used in the same three areas that we're currently using, the 5205, uh, Teaching Reading Elementary test now. That would be our elementary teachers, our early childhood P3, and our collaborative K6. This would be for initial certification. If they are enrolled in a program, they're completing one of those areas in initial certification now. It would be for individuals unconditionally admitted to an ed prep program beginning September 1, 2022 and thereafter. Likewise, we have other approaches that we also award certification through. And so with those other approaches, we would go with that same date for the purposes of consistency. I answer a lot of emails from parents that are confused and students that are confused. So I've, I've learned in my three years in this role that if we can set definite dates and we can have very black and white rules, it really helps to level the playing field and, and keep people from, from being confused about what they're supposed to do. So likewise, any applications that came into our certification section from September 1, 2022 and thereafter would be required to have this new test. And then finally, anyone who has allowed their certificate to, uh, to lapse and they're seeking reinstatement, that does happen sometimes, they would also be, uh, required to have this new test if the application came in after September 1 of 2022. Um, as far as that implementation goes, and Dr. Mackey and I did speak about this a little bit. Yeah, I, I know this is something we want to move on as soon as we can, but at the same time, we want to make good decisions. We want to be sure that we give time for our colleges and universities to prepare. We are in the middle of working through the Bartstow Study right now and we've got some great, um, data that I think we're going to have based on that review that will also be very beneficial to our colleges as well as to the students that are coming through these programs. And of course, trickling down to our students, uh, as they're learning to read in, in school. So I, I think those two points lend themselves to moving through this carefully and making good slow choices. And then finally, what I don't want to avoid, and this is, is from the role that I sit in, in trying to be sure that I'm, I'm helping people to understand their requirements. When someone starts in a college program, I tend to think of that as their contract date. So if I am starting in a program in elementary education and you admit me today, whatever the rules are that I'm admitted under, we talked about contracts earlier, that's my contract. And so what I don't want to see happen would be those that are already in a program. They've already started. They passed all of the required tests that we had in place now. They spent that money. Or they have studied and prepared to pass that test. And then we change the rules on them in the middle. So that's why I feel like this is a good, solid date. I, I think this will be beneficial and I'm very excited about learning more. I'm excited about working with Pearson and, and getting started on this with you. So I'll take questions, anything that you want to know that I can help with.
Do we have any board questions?
They've gone to sleep.
Don't wake them up. It's like the baby. Don't wake that baby up.
But Dr. Peacock.
Yes.
If, if a student started fall of 2022.
Yes.
Then assuming they graduate in four years, then that would be, so it would be 2026.
They wouldn't be starting to college.
College.
They would be being admitted into the education program. That usually happens around the junior year-ish. So they would start well into their college coursework. They would just not be officially admitted to education.
Okay. And do, do most colleges of education have a, like a time, like, for example, you couldn't be in a college of education program for 10 years. And then, and then. So they usually, I mean, I know with our majors, like, we would say the catalog, if you take past a certain number of years.
Right.
You start over, you know? You may be taking one class a semester, but at a certain point in time.
Dr. Meyer might be able to help.
I was going to say, she is definitely ed prep and I am definitely ed assessment, so I'm going to let her answer that question.
Usually if they're admitted to a program and haven't finished within four years, they need to be reevaluated again. Some of the courses may not count, some may. But there's no such thing as a four-year college degree for more than about 5% of students. But admission usually happens after the sophomore year. If they haven't finished in four years, they do a reevaluation.
That's good. I would just not, I wouldn't want to think that somebody was in there and then 10 years from now, taking the Praxis because they didn't, you know, they started before this date.
Yes, yes. Now, this would just be admission into professional education.
Thank you.
For one of those years. Sure.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay.
Well, I'm very excited to be a part of this. Thank you all for hanging out and listening.
Thank you for all the work that went into that.
It's been a pleasure. And like I said, it was just really a phenomenal group. Mark is a phenomenal guy. I've had a big time learning to know all of them.
They know the other.
And you know, we're also lonely right now. If you look forward to those Zoom sessions.
And that is.
I can't wait to get on and talk to some of them.
Dr. Striget.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Peacock, thanks.
Now, we're not saying the best is last, but we're going to say the best is last.
Whenever, uh, Dr. Peacock says it was fun on the phone for six hours looking at that question.
I know.
I really should have included Dr. Striget in this. She and I go way back. We were Tallahassee County teachers together. I taught her children. I, I can't think of a more phenomenal early childhood teacher than Dr. Striget. She is fantastic.
All right, carry on, Dr. Striget.
All right, well, you just had your introduction. Just 27 years' experience. She's been with us for about eight months. She works with an early childhood, uh, education program for about eight years. So we're fortunate to have her here. So we're on item number nine. Uh, item number eight, which is resolution in response to components of the Alabama Literacy Act regarding summer reading assessment. Dr. Striget.
And I'm just going to give you a quick update of what has been done this year because it has been, um, when I, the first day I walked into ARI, I didn't even really get to meet anyone because Dr. Davis was on a treadmill and everyone else was on their own treadmill. It has been a fun ride and it's been busy and it's been exciting. So. And working with, uh, Dr. Peacock and Mark, who is our chair. I guess that he heard cats on the Literacy Task Force. I'm one of those cats, so.
But he does a really good job with that. He does a really good job with that.
But, um, as many of you know, the Literacy Act specifies certain groups that have to, uh, that work together, one being the superintendent, the school board, uh, the Literacy Task Force, the Committee for Grade Level Reading, the Campaign for Grade Level Reading, uh, Higher Ed, the Alabama Commission on Higher Ed. Anyone else, Mark, that I'm forgetting? Yeah, that is a lot. That is a lot. But, um, so this is our roadmap. This is what ARI put together when they looked at the Literacy Act and they said, we have to make this digestible for LEAs and for the general population. They put together this roadmap. And so anything we do in ARI now is really centered around this roadmap. And it's, it's very, um, true to word because of all of those agencies I just spoke to you about. We have collective leadership. And I think that someone spoke earlier of the Action Plan for Literacy Birth to Grade 12. And that came from the committee from Grade Level Reading. And that is like a live document that's a resource for teachers and educators. Uh, we actually, I think Dr. Davis refers, referred to it last week in her, uh, Midwoods Matters. No, that's Dr. Mackey's Midwoods Matters. But your newsletter to curriculum instruction with, uh, a link to some of our Science of Reading themes. And so ARI refers to this and uses this a lot. Um, the Department of Early Childhood and Governor Ivey came out with the Campaign for Grade Level Reading. And the Campaign for Grade Level Reading is a framework. And in that Campaign for Grade Level Reading, it's got, uh, one of the focuses is school readiness. And in the recommendations, it was a recommendation that the state adopt a kindergarten entry assessment. And so last year, three agencies, meaning the Department of Early Childhood, our agency, Department of Education, and Department of Human Resources, uh, got together to adopt ALOKIDS to assess our kindergarten students on, uh, kindergarten readiness. And they also look at, uh, preventing chronic absenteeism. And they look at increasing summer learning opportunities and childhood health. ARI has put together several family resources. You'll see the Family Guide, uh, for Student Reading Success. Many school systems, as they're having conferences with their families, they're printing these off and giving them to families because it gives, uh, activities that families can do with their child, backpack things that can go for each grade. So if you haven't seen it, check out our website. It's some really good resources. Up until this date, and I'll, look at Mark too, to make sure that I have gotten everything. The Literacy Task Force has recommended early literacy screeners. They have recommended intervention in dyslexia-specific programs. And they've recommended the foundational reading assessment. The State Superintendent, when you go through the Literacy Act, has many duties. And I can tell Dr. Mackey has been very busy this year, uh, convening a standing task, task force. We've hired over 50 ARI regional literacy specialists. Those, those people that go into the schools and work with those LEAs and those, uh, building-based reading coaches. He submitted an annual report that is on our website, if you haven't gone to the website to see it. Determine and improve alternative standardized reading assessment, and more information will be coming about that one. Provided guidelines for administering the, um, Alabama Summer Achievement Program, which is, uh, fully funded for those schools that are at the bottom 5%. Uh, we're currently about to release from ARI a, uh, implementation guide for those summer programs. Develop a dyslexia therapist certification endorsement. I'm not going to read all the way through this because I think that you have most of it. But, um, and develop family resources. In the next few weeks, there'll be a flyer that goes to all families in Alabama with questions and answers about the Literacy Act. The State Board of Education, I believe it was November 2019, uh, approved a dyslexia therapist certification endorsement. And we get kudos. Thank you, Dr. Meyer, for that. That is very exciting news. It happened before I got here. Well, it did happen before I got here. So when I got here, that was the first thing I heard from our Dyslexia Advisory Council, that they were so excited that this had happened. Uh, the Literacy Act also specifies that, uh, you will approve a dyslexia-specific intervention as defined by the rule of the State Board of Education, which says it shall be provided to students who have the characteristic of dyslexia. And there's the administrative code there. Someone in ARI had to remind me the other day that the code is for K-12 and the Literacy Act is for K-3. And I was like, you're right, you're right. Thank you for that reminder.
We also had to require the nine hours of Science of Reading.
That's right. I need to add that. I need to add one of the things to the Literacy Task Force, too. Good. Uh, we, uh, work, we have required our programs to self-enter data within our CAVI On portal. And we use that. CAVI On portal, and we use that data to plan for professional development in the state and to plan for coaching communities. Our educators have been involved in letters. We just started our fourth, I think, cohort with 1,000 educators involved in that. We have our NINE House, which leads to that Calt certification. We also have Shelton that leads to it as well, and I forgot to put that on here. Our Alabama Reading Initiative modules, we're working closely. We had a call today with our regional in-service centers. We're redoing our conceptual framework in, with those reading initiative modules and aligning them with those letters modules in the science of reading. So that's exciting work. It's more of an introduction to the science of reading. We really want our teachers all to be involved in letters. That is that gold standard. But we have a waitlist. And so people are eager. They wanna do something. And so we're pointing them to other things that they can do in articles and participate in our modules. We're also working with our regional in-service centers on dyslexia simulation training. Our administrators are volunteering all the time with Lunch and Learns. Our leaders out in the field, those regional specialists, are providing those to our curriculum instruction and principals within the field. We're going to be releasing at the end of the month, round two of the implementation guide. And in that, we have taken a lot of our suggestions from superintendents and locals and provided some flow charts, some guidance, some suggestions on interpreting the laws. And those are some of our family resources. A family member can't really come to a student reading improvement plan without going, walking away and learning what that child needs at that particular minute. So I think as a mom, when I would get a report card, if my child had a C, I didn't know how to go home and help that child. But now with the Student Reading Improvement Plan, the teacher's saying, your child is struggling in fluency, and then providing activities to that mom or to that father to work with that child at home. So the Student Reading Improvement Plans are really key to help those families. Dr. Peacock just spoke of the Pearson test, the teacher test at the end of the teacher prep program. Many of our educator preparation programs are involved in letters. Their instructors are going through it, and some of the students are going through it. Our Barksdale Reading Institute has just begun. I think they have called every dean in the state, are we right, Dr. Meyer, and introduced themselves. We're gathering information. We had our initial call with them. It was interesting because she was telling us all the credentials of the people that she's hired, and they're from Texas all the way to New York and in-between, retired professionals that have worked at universities and done research on the science of reading. And so I know we're gonna get some really rich information from them. And we're gonna have some really good graduates coming out. Our ARI state staff are not immune to professional learning, so we're involved in several studies, one being from the University of Alabama. They're doing a survey of our K-3 teachers and getting feedback from them on how we can improve things that we're working on. We're working with the Public Affairs Research Council of Alabama, PARCA, and they're doing a study and focus groups in the state. They're actually gonna be making a dashboard after the first year where you can pull up a reading initiative data and retention, I don't know, well, you'll be able to pick up, pull up proficiency rates in different parts of the state. One of the things we ask is that we please have monthly meetings with PARCA as they're building this study and as they're doing the study, because what they're learning can inform what we're doing. And we want to make sure that we're continuously improving. I feel like I'm talking fast. We're also working with the University of Alabama Birmingham. They're gonna, they're looking at matching some of our data to do a study on letters. Several employees at our department are working with the vendors to make sure that we get access to the actual data and we won't have to have it self-reported from LEAs. And many LEAs are very excited about that because it's very time-consuming to go in and enter that data. This is an example of one of the things that'll come out in our implementation guide. We were hearing that many LEAs were given that universal screener and then instantly sending a note home, a student reading improvement plan. And we needed to clarify that there needed to be some instruction in the middle. There needed to be some Tier 1 instruction. There needed to be some Tier 2 instruction. And so, this pathway shows that. And then I put a little arrow because of summer reading camp. That's hot on the list right now, and that's one of the things we're gonna be providing some Zooms and some professional development on is those, those reading camps. According to the Literacy Act, it has to be scientifically-based reading instruction and intervention. It must follow the science of reading. And right here's the role of the State Department of Ed. We will provide funding for ASAP. So ASAP is our bottom 5%, our fully funded schools. We have ARI regional literacy specialists that are now 12-month, and they will be actually in those programs, collecting data, working with the coaches, working with the teachers, providing professional development. And the State Department will provide a template for summer learning plans, and will also provide a spreadsheet for reporting progress monitoring data, because we wanna see if what we're doing works. We wanna have some pre-date at the beginning of the summer, and we wanna have some post-data at the end of the summer. And thinking of that, we wanna try to make it as easy as possible for those LEAs. So we want them to use whatever assessment they're currently using. If they're using Renaissance, let's continue to use that this summer. So we can take that end-of-the-year score and look, and that can be your pre-score. And then we can use Renaissance to do progress monitoring during the summer, and then at the end of the summer, have a post-score, and then we can even look into the following year. So the teachers are familiar with the assessment. They don't have to go through training again. And the students are familiar with it, and the families are familiar with those reports that are going out. Here's just a breakdown. Someone asked the other day, how are you ensuring that they're, they're doing what they have to do with the money? And so, that's important. And so, one of the things that I work with Dr. Davis on is implementing, implementation monitoring, where we were having LEA submit things to us. And so, our second quarter, we will, they will be submitting their summer reading camp plans to us. They work on that now with our reading specialists out in the field. And then quarter three, they'll provide their proposed plan and budget, and then their actual expenditures and data on quarter four. And there's just an example, I won't go over it because you have it, of how we did our full support schools and our limited support schools, and based on the Literacy Act, it had to be based on those students that were deficient from the prior year. And so, that's the data we used. And if we're looking ahead, the Literacy Task Force will provide recommendations for a core reading program. They're gonna be designating community-based summer programs and establishing criteria for minimum essential standards. The superintendent will provide guidelines for the implementation of the reading portfolio, A-CAP, Acceptable Score, established criteria for minimum essential standards. So that's kind of a shared task between the Literacy Task Force and the state superintendent. Develop and approve dyslexia therapist endorsement incentive. Provide Phase 2 of the Alabama Literacy Act Implementation Guide, and provide Alabama's MTSS support. And then, your job as a state board is to approve the foundational reading assessment and approve a reading assessment system administered at the beginning and end of the summer reading camp to measure student progress. So, we're gonna be a year ahead. Any questions?
No. Oh, of course I did.
Well, she asked me, and I said, questions?
One, Campaign for Grade Level Reading, years ago, I can't even remember when it was, but they had UAB analyze the data of summer reading camps. I don't know how they did it. I don't know if that's something we would wanna explore, what they looked at, the, you know, their rubric, their criterion.
I would help see that, so I remember.
But, but I don't, it's just something to consider.
Yes. And, and a lot of what we found in that study is included in our recommendations for summer camp.
Good, because yeah, I remember some of it was disappointing.
We looked at, oh, we looked at a camp that had like a half a day where they just did literacy. I mean, it was, it was very intense literacy, teacher to child. And then we looked at another camp, same population, you know, same socioeconomic of children and everything. It was a full day, and they did intense literacy instruction, but in the afternoon, they did enrichment activities. And what we saw was the same amount of growth, but this one over here was more expensive, but the intensive, and the absentee rate was so high. Whereas over here, it was, the attendance rate was high. The families were involved. And I think there was actually more growth in their skills than it was the drill and skill over here. And this program also included math. So they had literacy math and enrichment, and they showed more growth.
Well, and remember, one was taught by sort of by teachers.
That's right.
One was not, and the one that was not had higher growth. And, but it was, they thought that part, probably a lot of the results came about because there wasn't transportation provided. And so, I hope, you know, that we're offering funding for transportation.
We do.
For these, you know, 5%. But another, yes, we're gonna vote on those tests, the pre-test and the pre-test for, I can't even say, I can't talk now either, but for the summer reading. But, and so that's this year, and we'll continue to use, as I understand it, the six that have already been approved.
For summer?
For summer. So they will be able to use if we approve it.
Yeah, that's right.
One of the six.
Is that what the, is that what it says?
That's right.
Yes.
But those could change because the, because we have to reassess those every couple of years.
It's every year.
Every year, yeah, every year they have to revet them. Every two years, the legislature, and so there's, remember, there's two different things. Those reading assessments are not paid for. But then we have separately, reading assessments that were already, but pre the Alabama Literacy Act, we were getting money for reading and math assessments. That was something we were already working on. So once the Literacy Act passed, what we did at the department is to marry those two together so that districts didn't have one assessment paid for by the legislature and yet have to do another assessment that they would have to pay for on their local funds. And now teachers are managing two different sets of assessments that measure the same thing. So we married those together, which gave the districts then money to pay for the assessment required in the Literacy Act and what the Literacy Task Force was doing. So, but, the original RFP was for two years. So, the Literacy Act says the Literacy Task Force has to review them, revet them annually. Obviously, you don't wanna change, every year you don't want a different assessment. But the RFP, and thus the contract, is only good for two years. So that will have to be redone, I think, in '21 or in '22 also. So, and what we'll do is try to marry all those things up, because if our locals had to manage all this, they would be pulling their hair out crazy. So we've got to marry, within ARI and assessment and our, the state's contact, contract structure, we have to marry those things up so they don't have to deal with that. So, all that's to say, you're right. What the resolution says is, as those change, the six that they're using during the school year, what we use for summer school would change to go with it. Now, so, I think this is right. We actually had some that changed this year, some districts, because districts can move. So some of them chose one that they used for a year, and then they didn't like that one. And so they, when this year, they came back and said, we're gonna use a different one. Still off the list, so that it gets paid for, but we, we wanna use something different. So, but this would mean that when they, so when they shifted and said, we're gonna go from product A to product B, well, then in your summer school, you're also going from A to B, so that they stay married together. Is that?
I just wanted to make it clear that we're approving it for this year, but next year we would have to vote again and approve it for next year because possibly the, the list of assessments that are approved by you and the task force could change. And so, it's an annual approval process.
Now, the way it's written, it would say, when those, as those change, the summer one would automatically change with it. So you would not have to vote again because when, so if we have products A, B, C, D, E, F now, and they change, and next year they were A, B, D, E, F, H, and I, then the way the resolutions were, those would auto, A, B, D.
I'm gonna have to read it again.
Yeah, F, I would automatically become the new.
No, 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 I would never, no, no.
You'd just say, whatever's approved for the school year is also in the summer.
Right, yeah. I wouldn't wanna put a vendor's name, but, yes. But I do wanna follow the law.
Absolutely.
Well, I think that's right.
And help teachers if we had to.
Oh, my God. Yes, that's the whole point of everything, you know, the teachers and the students.
A different assessment in the summer than they have in the school year. They may kill us.
They may anyway.
Okay, any other questions? You sure?
Any other questions? Thank you very kindly.
Pizza's on its way.
A drive is on its way.
Yeah, well, I think, I think so. We're good. We'll.
That will be the end of our meeting. We appreciate everybody staying with us. I'm sorry for our first two board members coming in. That is so long. But we'll do better next week, maybe. But anyhow, good night. And everybody who's driving home, drive home safely. And those that are already at home, God bless. We miss seeing y'all and hope to see you soon. Good night, everybody.
You're safe. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.